Evening, it's 5:05. I called this meeting to order of the Almani Union High School District, Board of Trustees' Special Board Meeting. Today is Wednesday, February 21st, 2024. If you're following along on our agenda, we are on Item A. We open the session. Dr. Edward Zuniga, Superintendent of the Almani Union High School District, can you please give me a roll call?
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to our board meeting. We're going to start off with Member Carlos Sarcedo.
Present.
Member Florencio Bionis.
Present.
Member Estela Torres de Seigres.
Present.
Member Qui Win.
Present.
Member Ricardo Padilla.
Here.
And our student board member is not able to be here with us this evening. That's Sofia Hernandez, who will be absent today.
Thank you, Dr. Edward Zuniga. If I could ask, let me see, Mr. Kirk McGinnis, come up to the lectern and lead us in the flag salute. If you could please do us that honor.
Thank you. Would you all please stand? Put your right hand over your heart. Ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. McGinnis. I appreciate it. For those of you that watch our board meetings regularly, you know that I always have a poem or a little bit of history about our culture, the different cultures that we serve in this district. But today I'm reading a poem. It's a short little poem, little saying. And I always model it after Professor Estela Torres de Seigres. When she was president, it was something that I observed her doing. I really enjoyed it in the way she started all the meetings. And I have a lot of respect for Professor Estela Torres de Seigres. So in her honor, I will continue to do that during the time that I serve as president for the Almani Union High School District. And today's poem reads as follows. Struggle today for a better tomorrow. Hard work pays, you should always know. No matter how tough may seem the climb, keep moving, keep fighting, one win at a time. Perseverance and patience go a long way. Because for the sunrise, even the longest nights make way. And I got that from wishesmessages.com. I went on there and I love a lot of the poems or sayings that are on there. And this particular one spoke to me tonight. So, thank you. And with that being said, can I get a motion to approve the agenda for today, Wednesday, February 21st, 2024?
Motion to approve.
I got a motion to approve by board member, Mr. Qui Win. Can I get a second?
Second.
I have a second by board member, Professor Estela Torres de Seigres. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The agenda for today, Wednesday, February 21st, 2024 is approved. If you're following along, we are on A4. Recognition of Mr. Mike Gorbal, a Royal High School girls' basketball coach on his 500th coaching victory. Dr. Edward Zuniga?
Yes, thank you, Board President Padilla. It is again my honor to recognize a staple at a Royal High School. And two weeks ago, when we were here meeting for our regular board meeting, we actually had posted a recognition for him. Unfortunately, Mr. Gorbal was not able to make it because he was attending to his team. They were right in the middle of the first playoff game and had the practice that evening. So, we wanted to support that. And he also apologized for not being here. But we were fortunate enough to have him here this afternoon. And I want to welcome Mr. Gorbal here. I had the privilege to get to know Mr. Gorbal back when, probably when I started at a Royal High School for that one year, as I mentioned two weeks ago, as assistant principal. And Mike, I had known of him. I coached probably alongside others across sideline when I was coaching too. I know when you think about a Royal High School and coaches that have been there, you think about Mike. You think about the many legends that a Royal High School has had as far as coaching and leadership. And he is actually is part of that list. So, I'm very proud of this evening to feature him, but also speak a little bit about his background. He's been, this is his 34th season as a head coach at the actual basketball program at a Royal High School. I believe just the basketball program with 34 seasons, but head coach came after that. And he is celebrating many milestones and achievements. But just last December, he actually completed a 500th victory celebration with his team as they defeated, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Sure High School, if that's correct. And it wasn't even close, 42 to 20 or something like that. You probably memorize all these numbers. And I'm trying to do my best to actually memorize these too. But that actually, at Sure High School, celebrated his victory there alongside his team. And all the girls that probably reached out to him, that played basketball underneath him and actually congratulated him too. So, I'm hearing a lot of praise that I've seen throughout the media. And not only at a Royal High School or this district, but this is actually a name known in the Sangue Valley, even highlighted in the Tribune and in some of those sports articles that we've seen too. So, we're delighted to hear about that too. According to CIF Southern Section, Southern Section Record Book, Mr. Gorbal became the 12th girls' basketball coach in section history to achieve 500 career wins at the same school. And a Royal High School has been the only school which Mr. Gorbal has coached at. Not only has he been a coach, but he actually is a former Knight himself. So, also a proud Knight. He has competed in football when he was in high school, basketball and track and field, I believe. Graduated from Royal High School in 1981, if you don't mind me saying that. So, at the age of 18, you started coaching at a Royal High School, from what I hear, and became the school's head girls' basketball coach in 1990. So, as you can see that 1990, that's over, what, 24 years now? About 24 years already? 34. 34. Who's counting right? 34 years. Mr. Gorbal is also a staple on the Knights campus. He is one of our campus supervisors, as well as a coach for track and field and also football. So, he's not only a seasoned coach, he's actually a year-round person that you can see on campus from morning to probably evening, late hours. We probably have to kick him out once in a while and have him go home. Because if it was up to him, he probably lived there and stayed there, which is just the dedication that he has and the love that he has for Royal High School too. During Mr. Gorbal's coaching tenure, the Royal High School Girls' Basketball Program has won nine Michigan Valley League titles and reached the CIF Southern Section Division 4AA Quarterfinals in 2018, which is the furthest playoff run for the Aurora High School Knights. On behalf of the Board of Trustees, I want to extend my congratulations to you, Mr. Gorbal, Coach Gorbal, for just exemplifying the dedication, what it takes to not only be a winner, be successful, but also every year, year in, year out, you get up, do it, and do it with passion and with excitement and love for the sport. And really, signifying what we always strive for, for our employees to be mentors, to be not only coaches, but also to encourage our students to just go above and beyond the sport, both academically and also athletically, but also life skills that you probably have provided to our students over the last decades in your career. So, again, on behalf of Board of Trustees, we not only thank you for being here, but praise you for the accomplishment and also express our gratitude for your service to our students at a Royal High School and our entire district. Congratulations.
If I can please ask my colleagues to go down below the dais as we usually do when we recognize people. Thank you. So, Mr. Mike Gorbal, come on up here, the man of the hour of the meeting. Yes, come on up here. Stand right here. This certificate of recognition is presented to Mr. Mike Gorbal in celebration of your 500th coaching victory as coach for the Aurora High School Girls' Basketball Program. This truly admirable accomplishment is a testament to your leadership and dedication to our students. Congratulations from the Almani Union High School District Board of Trustees. You know, just the number 500 is just such a huge number. And we're just talking about the victories there. Just think about how many practices you had, you know, how many of the other games that, you know, where you were not victorious, but those still occupied your time and your dedication and your commitment. And, you know, the hard work and the tears and the sweat and the agony of defeat and that awesome feeling of victory. You know, being a basketball coach myself, I know that you definitely don't do this for the pay. It is definitely, yeah, you can laugh at that one. It is because you care for these young ladies that, and basketball doesn't just teach you, you know, how to play defense or, you know, how to press or how to play offense or layups and all those things that you want your students to learn. You teach them more than that. You teach them about life. You teach them that when you're a part of basketball, you're trying to win a championship. And one person can't do that. You must create synergy and work as a team. And that teaches them that we must work for things that are bigger than that of ourselves. And just not giving up and persevering. And I know, I'm sure there's tears in there when your girls lose and it's such a close game and you want it so bad. You know, you want it for your girls. I'm sure you've seen your girls cry and that hurts you so much as a coach. I've seen that happen to some of the teams that I've coached. But they will remember you for the rest of their lives. You know, I was a coach and then I was also a player at that other school that we won't mention tonight because it's all about Aurora. But I remember all my coaches that they didn't just teach me how to, you know, play defense and rebound. They taught me so much more than that in being a leader. And for you to dedicate that many years to a Royal High School and to the children of our community, I, along with my entire board, will forever be indebted to you in creating, you know, productive citizens that like you've done to so many of our girls in Almani Union High School District. So, we present this award to you. In addition to that, my vice president, Mr. Qui Win, is presenting you with our special pin that every board member wears. It is the symbol of the Almani Union High School District and it's also displayed here. And we give this to special recognitions like tonight. So, thank you so much. And now I'll allow my colleagues to say a few words. My vice president and our secretary.
For me, the numbers speak volume, volume of your dedication, your teamwork, your leadership. Whatever I say is superfluous, you know, it's not needed. So, the numbers speak for itself, you know. Thank you very much for your dedication and your leadership that, you know, give the student the opportunity to become a good athlete and also academically, you know, help them to succeed. Thank you very much and I'm grateful of your dedication. Thank you again.
Well, your dedication was great. I remember seeing you with the girls. My daughter was there with you. The discipline that you had with them, that's the thing that I really like it. Because that discipline that you give them about playing, it takes them for their own life in the future. And believe me that my daughter got it. And she always remembers you and the team and the way that you were playing basketball and doing a wonderful thing. Thank you so much. And especially in the name of my daughter, thank you for everything that you did. Thank you.
Congratulations on your 500th win. I think if anybody deserves to have two board meetings dedicated to themselves for recognition, it's you. So, I'm, it's going to sound weird, but I'm glad that you weren't able to show up last meeting because then you get another recognition today. Wow, that's so impressive, 500 wins. And it's, as Mr. Padilla said, you know, it's people like you that we always remember, students. You know, it's how you make those students feel in that moment, you know, the pride that you show in the program, the dedication, the work, not only as a girls' basketball coach, but as football coach and track and field, as a classified employee. I mean, your dedication to not only Aurora, but the Almani Union High School District really shows. I'm so proud and so excited to have you here. And I'm just so honored to be in your presence, to congratulate you tonight on this well-deserved recognition. And here's to another 500 wins.
You know, Coach, when maybe minutes after you recorded that win, Dr. Zuniga, I don't know if you remember, I shot you over that text because I think it was James Scarsaga or he reported it right away on Twitter, you know. And I was like, started trying to do the math in my head. It was like, how many games in a season? 500? And holy moly, that's a lot of wins. I'll just leave it like that. No, I'll just leave it like that. But in our day and age, we don't get a lot of coaches that are as dedicated as you, that are consistent for many other reasons, right? It could be the pay, it could be personal life, it could be a lot of other things. But to have you be so consistent and dedicated to all of us. But to have you be so consistent and dedicated to all of our students. Dr. Zuniga was right. I mean, I live in the area and, yeah, you see that Toyota, you know, Saturday mornings and just, you know, you're always there, you know? I'm pretty sure, I know in elementary schools, kids think their teachers, you know, sleep there and I wonder sometimes too, is that Coach Gorbal sleep there? But anyway, I'm really happy for you. It couldn't have happened to a better person. Thank you so much. On behalf of all our students who've experienced, you know, your coaching, just for your consistency and your dedication, I mean it from the bottom of my heart. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we'll allow you to have the last word. We're very proud of you and you could be short, you could be long. This is your, that sounds, that sounds fine.
Yeah, I appreciate the fact that, you know, you get recognized in a situation like this. Like I said from the start, all that means is I'm old, I've coached a long time and I've coached a lot of really good kids over the years. So thank you very much.
Thank you again. If we could get a picture with the board and then after that, we could get a picture Thank you again, Coach Mike Gorbal, Girls Varsity Basketball Team, Aurora High School.
Thank you.
Excellent. At this time, if you're following along, we are on item A5. This is public comment. This is a time where the public can address the board on any items on the agenda or any items of their choice. I've been informed that there is no public comment tonight. Is that correct, Alma? Thank you very much. Moving right along, we are on item A6, Communication from Union Representatives of EMUEA and CSEA. These are our two collective bargaining unions in our school district, the El Monte Educators Association. Do we have any representative here tonight? Hearing none, I'll ask for a representative from the California School Employees Association, better known as CSEA. Okay, hearing none, we'll go ahead and move on to item B, B as in Bear, Oral and Written Communications. Number one, Board Superintendent Announcements and Communications. I'll start off with Board Member, Mr. Carlos Alcedo.
Just a big kudos, congratulations and thank you to everyone involved in putting on the Lunar New Year Celebration this past Friday. I know that takes a lot of free time and volunteer hours and cooperation with our SROs, but it was a wonderful event for our community and I just want to thank you for that.
Thank you, Board Member Carlos Alcedo. Board Member, Mr. Florencio Briones.
Just one item. I received an invitation today from the Valley Lindo School District for National Read- aloud Week, which is going to be the week of March, sorry, oh shoot, I had the email here and I closed it. Bear with me one moment while I.
Sure, no problem.
It is March 4th through 8th and they are hosting the Read- aloud at New Temple Elementary School on Wednesday, March 6th, which is in two weeks. Yes, in two weeks. I don't know if anybody else received the invitation?
I'll check.
Okay. I'll forward it to Dr. Zuniga and then, yeah, and then your Friday memo, if you want to sign up so that you can read. And I did want to make a request. We did this last year, if we could get a certificate made for New Temple Elementary School, thanking them for the invitation and congratulating them for participating in National Read- aloud Week. And then the other item I wanted to share, just this past Sunday, had the honor of celebrating the 100th birthday of Ms., sorry, Ms. Helen Thurston. She's a member of the El Monte Historical Society and she is the spouse of former El Monte Councilmember Jack Thurston. She celebrated her 100th birthday on Monday, February 12th. We celebrated with her on Sunday, the 11th. So just wanted to share that and congratulate her again on achieving that milestone. And that's all tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member, Mr. Florencio Briones. Board Member, Mr. Qui Nguyen.
From the last board meeting, I have a few items to report to the board. I went to the side visit in El Monte High School with Dr. Zuniga, Dr. Laura Rivers, Mr. McInnes and Principal, Mr. Eddie Cuevas. So we visited all the IM1 class. One class I specifically interested is the teacher over there is very, very good. You know, she do what she's supposed to do pedagogically and, you know, and I asked Mr. Cuevas, how is her DNF in her classroom? And he say it getting worse. So that, I mean, there are more than a pedagogy, the pedagogy, there is limited limitation in pedagogy. So there are the variable that involve, because what I observe in there is, you know, more than half a student is, you know, again, below grade level. So no matter how good the teacher is, there's so much the teacher can do. And the classroom size is ideal also. So it's not a big classroom size, about 19, 20. So it's very good. So, you know, so we have a good discussion about it, you know? So the need that to work with the feeder school, make sure they well-prepared when they come to our high school is very urgent. And also I make a visit to the Community Day School. The reason I want to visit that school because, you know, the absentee rate is higher than the county. And even though the enrollment only like 33 to 39, but it take a lot of resource to educate these kids and put these kids back to the regular school or become a productive member of a society. And I just interested why so high, but you know, the staff there is wonderful and they, you know, they dedicated and they very caring and it's a hard job for them and kudos to their work. It takes special people like them to, you know, to educate those kids. So, you know, and I also, you know, attended District Lunar New Year Celebration, you know, with President Padilla and Professor De Segres and Mr. Sacedo also. And I would like to thank the district, especially Mrs. Edith Edgavara and her staff for putting together a wonderful event. And, you know, thank you for honoring the Asian tradition and, you know, embracing the diversity. And that's what our district is all about, embracing diversity. And I see people very happy, lion dance, food and everything and it's really, you know, excellent. And after calling out to the school district, the feeder school district superintendent, I finally got a chance to talk to Dr. Raymond Andre, the superintendent of Mountview School District. At the meeting, first of all, I want to thank him so much for, you know, hosting, for having me with him, you know, for almost like two hours. We just, I come over there to present the data that we got from our school and, you know, it's good to know that Dr. Andre come from Mountview School District. He told me he actually grew up over there and all of his family members from Mountview School District. And he understand the situation very well. And he told me, you know, he facing with a lot of challenges, especially to have a high rate of poverty, 50%, 60% of the parents living in the trailer park. And there is no water, no target, you know, and he also operate a pantry for the parent. So, you know, it's have everything to do with the performance of the Mountview School District Elementary, have everything, you know, the demographic speak volume. And, you know, I told him that give me more of reason to educate our kids so they can get out of the pit. So, you know, that's not my why. And he say that his why also, but he facing a lot of challenges. He also share with me what he's doing right now. So he told me from the primary level, he have all the math intervention teacher in place from like second to fifth grade. And this year, the seventh grade have to, all of them have to go to summer school in partnership with the community college. Four hours a day, five days a week for four weeks to get them ready for eighth grade. So, you know, going eighth grade on and it's our job. So they go to our summer school, so we need to give them the deficiency. But what I need to do is, you know, we must have a priority standard ready. So our math TOSA, I also, you know, pave the road for our math TOSA to talk to Mountview School District. And Dr. Andre is very welcome and say, you know, he need to have more meeting, you know, beside a cow meeting. So, you know, so we can pave the road so easy for our math TOSA create a relationship, the bonding and the partnership, a true partnership. So he can work together. So but what we need to do in our school district is a priority standard so we can communicate with the feeder school district so we can align, so what we expect from them, so we can work together, so make, you know, can have better outcome. So, you know, it's a wonderful meeting and I so appreciative of he hosting me after work hours and it's, you know, and, you know, and he's very welcoming and very warm and very transparent, what he told me what about going to do. And I told him, you know, what we're going to do, we had a math TOSA and, you know, we hard at work communicating with you, with your school district and with your school principal so he can, you know, make a connection. Because we cannot do it alone, no matter how good we are, how good a teacher we have with the student below the grade level. I mean, the evidence speak volume. You know, we went to El Monte High School, I am one and the teacher are wonderful, there's no fault, perfect. But when you look at the DNF rate, it getting worse. Because, you know, I witnessed that all the student are way, way below grade level. And I think I have a math guru sitting in the audience, Dr., Mr. Banias. Mr. Banias. So when you were at Rosemead High School, before the kid go coming to Rosemead High School, you always assess them through, at that time you had 360 program. So that's what we need to do. We need to assess them before they come to our high school so we know what the deficiency is so we can try the best we can to, you know, to fix it, whatever, the best way to fix it. And I don't know what happened, but, you know, everything dropped, you know, when you left. So that's what we need to do. We need to assess them and make sure that, you know, they ready to, you know, at what level they are, whatever deficiency they lacking, they have, we need to fill it in. So, you know, I also, just last Sunday, I was invited to Tucci Foundation for Lunar New Year Blessing Ceremony with the elective official from Saramonte, Amonte and Monterey Park. And this is a charity organization. They provide you with medical services, mental health, scholarship, free food distribution, backpack and, you know, and it's a wonderful event, lion dance and, you know, and they promoting, reducing the carbon footprint and vegetarianism. So, you know, it's a great organization so, you know, we can be partner with to help our student because they provide scholarship, they provide services, you know, that, you know, especially in Saramonte. And Mayor almost, you know, also told me, acknowledged that with me. So that's all I want to report to the board since the last meeting.
Thank you, Board Member, Mr. Qui Nguyen, not Nguyen, excuse me, Mr. Qui Nguyen. Professor Stella Torres De Segres.
Yes, Mr. President. El Monte Council PTA is getting really good now. It's getting all of our high schools, the presidents of our high schools are attending and having learning, they have been learning all the procedures that we have to, that we need to keep on going with our PTAs in our own high schools. Of course, we have also representatives of the city school district. The PTAs from, I attended a meeting from the PTA from Aurora High School last week. It was a great success. It's getting, it's getting the time, it's getting, and I knew that it was going to be, to be really strong and keep it up. The president is working really hard with all of us and we are totally open to help her, to help her and help our Aurora High School PTA, PTA. Saturday, February 10th was the selection of our five delegates from American Union Auxiliary Girls State. That was a hard day. The judges had a hard work, but finally we got our five delegates. Immediately we phone, well, we send letters to our principals and assistant principals and giving thanks for all the help that they gave us and also we sent to Dr. Zuniga, did you get all the names of the girls, the delegates, the first and the second alternate? And the girls that, my goodness, they were there very early and they were trying to do their best and I know that they were very well-prepared, but, well, it has to be only one delegate and two alternates. Those girls, they got a certificate from American Union Auxiliary Unit 261 where we congratulate them and we wish the best and they can use that certificate when they ask for a scholarship saying that they were participating in this program. I attended Lunar New Year. It was a wonderful experience, especially for the linguists. I really would like to learn Vietnamese and say Happy New Year. And also there were people from Vietnam, we tried, I tried to use my phone with my husband and tried to tell them in Vietnamese and Chinese and also that we had from Filipino wishing the Happy New Year. And they were very happy, Dr. Zuniga and all your team, they did a great job. We have a really good answers from the parents and, yeah, as Mr. Nguyen said, we are a community now, a new community who embrace everybody. All of us, we work for our children and our goal here are our children to have the best. And this weekend, I attend the Congress of Religious Education in Anaheim. I attend especially to several workshops that they were about the teenagers, about high school. And the most important part that our religious education wants is to help our students to keep studying, to help them in the high school and not to forget that they have to accept the responsibility of being in the future the honest of our country. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you for your report, Professor Stella Torres De Segres. And yes, in terms of my report, I'll keep it short. I just want all of our people watching, the constituents, to know that Dr. Zuniga and I have been hard at work. We've had multiple meetings, multiple meetings that last close to two to three hours just so that we can, you know, get on the same page in terms of where we're moving this district and things that, he's not having to guess what I'm thinking and I'm not having to guess what he's thinking. Initially, the first one we had was like, I think it was like five hours or something that he and I sat down, but as we're meeting more regularly, the meetings are diminishing in time and we talk about different things pertaining. And we talk about different things pertaining to, you know, student safety, meetings regarding our budget. I know next Monday, we will be having a budget study. We've been talking a lot about attendance and how attendance is the strongest predictor for student success. There's been articles, we're really hyping it up in all of our schools. We've got banners, we're giving swag, a lot of incentives to kids. That's something that this board is very interested in. Because if the kids don't come to school, we can have the best practices, the best technology, the best principals, the best teachers. But if the kids aren't here, it doesn't matter. And so we want our students and our parents to come along for the ride and help us out. Get them to school, get them to school on time, and then we will take it from there. We've also talked about, you know, student safety. We've also talked about how do we get the PTA, the Super PAC, the Student Advisory Committee, the School Site Council, the English Language Advisory Committee, the District English Language Advisory Committee, how to cross pollinate so that they all know that each other exists and that they're not all like functioning in isolation. I know Dr. Zuniga is paying a lot of attention to that. And I know that that will help us in, in, in reaching our goal of increasing student achievement, you know, parent advocacy and bringing the parents along as partners. We, we have a ways to go on that, but we continue to have these talks. We also talk about just things in special forms that we board members need to have that then we don't have to call him. But thank you to my colleagues for attending the Lunar New Year Celebration. It was great to see my Vice President, Mr. Qui Huen, my Secretary, Professor Stella Torres de Seigris, Mr. Salsido. It was a very joyous event and it just shows that we value our Asian culture and that it is the Lunar New Year and that it's not just one country that celebrates the Lunar New Year. It's multiple Asian countries that celebrate the Lunar New Year. But it is nice that, you know, we do a big hurrah for the, the posada for the Latino community. It's just as important that we do a big hurrah and acknowledge all of our Asian cultures. So, Edith de Chaverria, thank you. Thank you to all the parents from the Super PAC that were there participating. Thank you to all the volunteers from all, the students from all of our high schools that were there, giving the, the food, giving the drinks, giving the cookies, giving the everything that we were giving out that day. I know the families really appreciate it. So, and thank you to you too, Dr. Zuniga, for your leadership. Because it happens here in your, in your home here of the district and everybody working together. So thank you for that. With that being said, Dr. Zuniga, would you like to report anything?
Yeah, thank you, Board President Padilla. I'll piggyback on that. I want to correct my gratitude and sincere thank you to our team who put this together without them working, you know, throughout the week to prepare for the event. It's not easy, even working during the day and then also preparing for the event. I can't think of a district who does a district wide, continues to do it over the last couple of years, like a Lunar New Year. And Lunar New Year is for everyone. I think we've embraced Lunar New Year, we learned about it. We were sharing zodiac or signs about, not only zodiac signs, but also just the Lunar New Year, actual, what is your animal, right? Which one, which are you represent? We had to go back and look at the years we were born and learn about it. So it was pretty cool learning about it and also understanding the, the actual story behind that and how that has been created. Mr. Huen has spoken a lot about that and taught us some things about that too. So thank you, Mr. Huen, for just informing us about the things that you know within your culture and admiring that from, from the distance. But also just going everywhere, even from, from here in just a local town to now, within the county, within the state, even online and through social media, Lunar New Year wasn't, we didn't see that twenty years ago. We didn't see what that was in high school. And we had a good population of our Asian culture back then as well. So I'm very happy that not only this community, but many of our communities are embracing the diversity and the, the appreciation of a culture and also the celebration of what it is. So I'm just excited that we can continue to do that and supporting that. And I want to thank, as we mentioned, our department here from the Assessment Accountability and Parent Engagement under the direction of Ms. Edith de Chaverria and her entire staff who has prepared and very coordinated, very well versed in preparing, preparing for the event. Our auditoriums crew, I can't forget them. They work throughout the morning, throughout the, the day prior, in the evening, they broke everything down before the rain came. And by the time Tuesday came around, everything was cleaned up and just back to normal too. So thank you to the auditoriums staff for putting that together. They created that dragon, very creative, if you didn't see it. I think we have some pictures that we'll be posting soon. But actually something that was impressive in this overall event as well. Moving on to a couple items, just to, as we look ahead. On Friday, you have a information sheet that I provided, it's an indoor showcase. This is something that the schools have put together and decided to just to put something to showcase some of the groups that don't get highlighted sometimes, including the performing arts, like our percussion, our cheer team, our actual color guard, our drill team, our winter, our winter winds. So if you're available Friday, El Monte High School is hosting this event for anybody who wishes to come. So they reached out, said, you know, we'd like, you know, for the board to be invited. And I want to make sure that you guys had that. I know it's the last minute, but they, they worked hard to put this together and I wanted to make sure you guys were aware of it too. One other event that's important coming up in early March is the accreditation visit for El Monte High School. They're starting their accreditation visit on Sunday, which is going to be March tenth. We'll provide that in your update on Friday. But March tenth is normally the meet and greet. If we are able to get board members there, that would be the ideal time to come in and greet the team on Sunday, March tenth at three PM. If you just want to note that, jot that down, but we'll actually put it on your Friday memo as well. And that goes on through the thirteenth, if you know about the WASC, it takes about three days too. And Mr. Cabezas has been working closely with his chair, his entire school staff. As you know that he, he doesn't create it, it's the work of the entire collective body at South, I'm sorry, El Monte High School with staff, students, parents, and the administration team there too. And so we're looking forward to that visit, a successful visit and the work that they've done to, to really affirm what they have been doing the last couple of years since their last accreditation visit as well. And I think that's all I have for now, Board President. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Dr. Edward Zuniga. Next on the agenda, we have B two, which is Student Board Member Communication. Ms. Sophia Hernandez could not be here today, but she did leave word with Dr. Edward Zuniga that she does want to have preferential voting on regular agenda item two, which is to consider approval of resolution number twenty-one dash twenty-three, twenty-four, addressing challenges faced by students with undocumented non-citizen parents in completing the free application for federal student aid, better known as FAFSA. So Dr. Zuniga will report on her behalf once I get to that part of the agenda.
Sure. She also shared a couple just notes for me to share with you and the public today. If you allow me, I just got to just highlight some of the things that she's been working on. So a couple of things that she said, again, I should apologize for not being here tonight. But she does have a couple of updates regarding what students have been doing across the district. The first, we're starting with our next SAC meeting will be on March eleventh at South El Monte High School. They'll be discussing March resolutions and preparing for our Leadership Development Day in April, amongst other things that we've been discussing. Some of our SAC students took part in the district Lunar New Year Celebration last Friday, as we discussed. So thank you to the board for giving us opportunity to take part. And also currently, schools and their ASPs have been putting on various events for their students. ASPs have been busy planning for spirit days and weeks. For those of you guys who don't know what spirit is, usually your basketball homecoming. And that's the time of celebrating, it's called Spirit Days and Spirit Week, where they actually have similar events to what they do during homecoming in the fall. And also recognizing team dating violence awareness. Obviously, the Lunar New Year, Black History Month. And then across schools, there have been also been pep rallies, senior nights for our winter and spring sports, fundraisers, and also planning, preparing for prom, believe it or not, already. And this is all for, for now, for her communication. And for preferential voting, I'll go ahead and hold off until we get to regular agenda item two.
Thank you, Superintendent Dr. Edward Zuniga. Moving this meeting right along, we're going to move over to item C, C for Charlie, Information and Presentation. C one, update on Parent Teacher Student Association, better known as PTA, provided by our school principals. And I also asked Dr. Zuniga to invite the, the presidents of the PTAs. But before we do that, I, I do want to say that this board is committed to the PTA. This board likes to put its money where it's, where its mouth is. And so tonight, you will see that under regular agenda, item number three, we do have a consider approval of a resolution number twenty-two dash twenty-three, twenty-four in support of Parent Teacher Student Association, better known, known as PTAs, through a monetary donation for enhancement for student and school programs. And that was something that I spoke to Dr. Zuniga about, that this board is committed and knows the, the work that the PTA does and all of the activities and the value that it has and has, has always had in the El Monte Union High School District. And I know that we want to make a contribution of two thousand dollars to each of the PTAs at each of the, of the individual high schools so that they could increase the activities that they do and, and bring about that positive climate in the schools. And I just want you to know that for as long as I sit as president of this board, I will continue to support and advocate PTA. You all know that I respect Professor Stella Torres de Seigris very well. And whenever she speaks, I listen, and this is one of her babies. This is something that I learned quite a bit about the work and advocacy that PTA does in not just the local level, but all the way up in Sacramento. I also know that at one point, they, I got recognized years ago, even before I was on this board, with the Golden Oak Award. I did not know what the Golden Oak Award, but I've always been grateful to the, for the PTA who gave it to me. And it's given to somebody who goes above and beyond the work that they do in their school setting or in their profession. But in addition to all the work they do outside of the board or outside of my profession. And again, I received that award and I, and I'm grateful for that. But I learned so much about the PTA through Professor Stella Torres de Seigris. So I want to give credit where credit is due, whether you've been on the board, whether you lose an election and you're off the board. There's two things that are, are her baby. And that is the girl state and boy state and the PTA. And, you know, Professor Stella Torres de Seigris could be baking cookies and going to soccer games with her grandkids, but she does that and all this too. So that's why when she speaks, I listen. So without further ado, let's go ahead and go in ABC order. Or Dr. Zuniga, I'll turn it over to you. How would you like to do it?
We're going to follow the actual slide deck that we put together. The principals had a task to complete and we want to try to keep it in uniform in providing the board an update about what the progress has been regarding the Parent Teacher Student Associations. And the unique thing about schools is that they're at different levels sometimes because just the, either the parents are starting from scratch again or new, we have newcomers coming in. And we have ongoing, we have a strong PTA at some schools. So that is, that is really the, the neat thing to see the growth of the PTAs and how they flourish. But also through the work of our leaders, amongst our presidents, their team, and the group of parents that are committed to the programs, our principals and our administrators who provide the support onsite, and also our students who have an interest in understanding how to work collectively with our school administration, our staff, and also our parents too. So I'm going to go ahead and stop there and I'm going to ask the first item there. I don't know if we did this by order. I think Mr. Flores just kind of jumped in there. I assume that A was a Royal High School go first. So he was the first one to put his slides in there, actually bumped somebody out. So we're going to have Mr. Flores.
And before you start, before you start, I'm going to piggyback on something, okay? The presidents were not here in the last meeting, the principals were. And if you've never been to a meeting in the El Monte Union High School District, Mr. Padilla does not mince his words. He tells it just like it is and he's real blunt. I told the principals, don't come here and give me a dog and pony show and, and fake it. I don't want you to fake it. If you're at zero, okay? Oh yeah, he knows, he knows, you know? You are where you are. The main thing is we have to start somewhere. If you're at a place right now where you haven't developed your bylaws, or you don't have a president, or you don't have members, I don't care, but I want to know that you guys tell this board and that you're transparent. But let a month go by, two months go by, three months go by. Don't come here again and tell me that you have not made any improvement. Do I want perfection? No. Do I want improvement? Yes. So I just want to put you at ease. Don't be nervous. Just talk to us. We're regular human beings like you, we're parents, students, community members, like, just talk to us. We just want to know where you're at and what can we do to support you? Yeah, we gave you two thousand dollars, but we, we could probably do more than that. And I know that I told Dr. Zuniga, in terms of cross pollination, he and I have been in, in talks about including the Student Advisory Committee to increase the membership for PTA and going and selling all these little cards to their tia, their tio, grandma, grandpa. I don't care, but we need people to come so that this does not die off. It, it has been around for the longest time. It's a great organization. And Mr. Padilla always makes it very long, so I will shut up now and give you guys the spotlight. It's, it's your turn tonight. Go right ahead, Mr. Flores.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, members of the board, district administration, everyone in attendance this evening. My name is Gabriel Flores, proud principal of a Royal High School. I'd like to first of all, welcome our newest president of our PTA at a Royal High School, Ms. Lisa Aldrich. So as Dr. Zuniga mentioned, we were tasked to provide some information. And I know that you'd worked with, worked with President Padilla regarding some questions that you had regarding each of our schools. So I want to share a little bit about what we're taking, what's taking place at a Royal High School. The first question was, are we in fact active? We are an active PTA. We have been active for some time. I do want to share that we, we have had some bumps in the road these, these past few years, primarily after COVID. It was a bit of a struggle and what we've really tried to do is revamp working with our seasoned PTA members that have been with us for several years and, and mesh them along with a new board, a new group of members so that we remain solvent over the course of the next years to come. And that's why I shared that with some of our updates. Again, we revamped our PTS efforts, working with them. We do have a new executive board that was recently elected. We have updated our bylaws, which has been, which were in place, have been in place for several years, but they have been updated. And overall, we've continued to, to reach out to try to get new members throughout the school year. In terms of how and what we've done to, to reach out to our, to our community, we have a nightly, it's called the nightly news, it's a weekly parent update that I provide to our, to our parents. But within our nightly news, we do share information about PTA. We're constantly trying to recruit more and more parents. We, in addition to that, we do have our back to school night as well as our open house. At our last open house, we had our vice president that spoke to our parents and shared the benefits of being a PTA member and trying to promote that as well. Within our morning announcements at our school site, we do promote it as well. We're constantly reminding our students to be active members if they're interested. In addition to that, we do have Parent Square and we use Parent Square to reach out to our parents as a communication tool to, to encourage and explain to them the benefits of being a PTA member. We use social media, we use our website. And the, the newest thing that we've done the past few years is we're using Totem. We understand that a lot of people don't carry money the way they used to, but they do carry cards. And with cards comes the opportunity to use Totem. It is that new, it's a new application or website, if you will, that allows our parents and students to subscribe to become a member electronically.
We also got approval to use Square so that we can take credit card payments at, onsite now.
Thank you. So we're trying to minimize reasons where they can't and provide more opportunities where they can be members to the Royal PTA. Areas of support in terms of how we communicate with one another between PTA and the school site. At every meeting, you'll have at the very minimum at least a principal or assistant principal in attendance at all PTA meetings. In terms of resources, we are trying to increase the, the branding. We do have flags that say PTA on them that reflect PTA as well as a Royal High School. We have tablecloths just to promote it and let everybody know the significance of our PTA at a Royal High School. In terms of our communication, we have an open door policy. Ms. Aldrich is in constant communication with myself or Ms. Witt regarding anything that's PTA related, reaching out, asking us questions, we're responding so that we're in constant communication with one another. In terms of inclusion, generally speaking, again, we've promoted a back to school night and open house. And there's always opportunities at different events that we have for our PTA to be involved at a Royal High School. I know she keeps reminding me and I keep forgetting that too. We did, we really did hit hard at our coffee with the principals. That is where we, we got, we had several members that were, several of our parents that were at a coffee with the principal that subscribed to become members for PTA. So it was a great opportunity. We do average about thirty-five to forty parents. And I think a lot of them came from, from that cohort. In addition to additional outreach, how we communicate, again, emails, social media, newsletters, you know, anything and everything that we can do to try to get more, more of our parents and our students involved and, and make them more aware, more than anything else, with what PTA is all about. And that's how we're outreach with them. And then finally, in terms of our updates, at all of our PTA meetings, we are provided with an opportunity to collaborate with our PTA members and share what's taking place at a Royal High School, whether it be construction, at times data reports regarding what's happening academically at the school. Any, any of the latest and greatest that's happening at a Royal High School, we do share them at our PTA. Royal High School, we do share them at our PTSA mem, uh, PTSA meetings. This is our flyer, one of the flyers that we were using to, to try to support that drive. You can see it's, the date is February 13th, but again, that has been constantly sent out to our community just to help everybody try to continue to promote PTSA. You saw on the first slide earlier that we have 41 members, and obviously, that's not nearly where we want to be. As I mentioned to you earlier, we did have a bit of a hiccup between last year and this year, but as, as Mrs. Stella Torres de Seagris mentioned earlier, we do seem to be riding the ship, and we're moving in the right direction and heading in an upward trend where we're having more and more members become, well, become members of the Royal High School's PTSA. With that, as always, go Knights. Thank you.
Thank you, Principal Gabriel. Can we give them a round of applause? Okay? At this time, are there any board members who have any questions? I'll open it up to anybody.
I have a question about how are you trying to reach more the, the membership? I remember a long time ago, what we used to do, it was that we used to talk with our teachers and ask them, some teachers, they were students in a Royal High School and remember the glorious days of a Royal High School where they have a wonderful PTS, PTA at the beginning, and then later on it became PTSA. I would like to see that promotion with the teachers and, and the, again, some kind of competition, what group, that's what class, that's the best, and the one who does the best to have a pizza, a pizza party with them, something like that. That's the way that we used to do in the old days. I don't know if it's still a good idea, but the most important is to try to get the teachers, and through the teachers, we get to the parents and the students. Also, don't forget that our students in all the PTS, the PTAs, PTSA's in high school, they are candidates to get a scholarship from First District, and it's a lot of money. It's almost $2,000. It was the last time, $2,000, and our students can get it.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Seagris. And one of the things that we have done is at our staff meetings, we have promoted PTSA in meeting with them and sharing with them the importance of it. So that is one avenue that we took to try to get more of our, our teachers involved. I think we need to, we need to nudge a little bit more. Like you mentioned, it's, it's a work in progress, and it's something that we're trying to work on. Did you want to share a little bit more? Just speak into the mic, because people need to hear.
Ms. Witt and I actually talked about me going out and talking to the teachers. We're working out a date when that would be a good, a good day for me to go out and talk to the teachers also. There was another question. Oh, and we did get our executive boards started late, so we didn't get a chance to do the membership pizza party thing for the students like we normally do. So that's why that didn't get done this year.
Awesome. Mr. Salcedo, anything you'd like to ask? No, Mr. Quiwin?
I just have, you know, for the, to clarify the function of the PTSA in your school and for the people who are watching us through streaming, so can you reiterate it, you know, what the function of PTSA so people can, you know, know what, what it's all about?
Yeah, and our PTSA has helped in different ways over the course of several years, whether it's at dances, they've helped out with the coat checks, if you will, they've helped us out at football games, and the money that's being fundraised all goes back to our students. It goes back for student scholarships, 100% of the money goes back to supporting our students with scholarships.
I know, it's very important, you know? I was there once. I just want you to repeat it so everybody can understand the importance of PTSA. And we, I myself fully support the PTSA organization.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Quiwin. Board Member, Mr. Florencio Breones.
Thank you for being here tonight. No questions.
Thank you for being here as well, as the president. I am going to challenge you to one thing though, okay? I've been in education for 31 years. PTSA has always been English only. It attracts a lot of our English-speaking parents. You saw how we're very inclusive, you know? Mr. Qui and the rest of us are very inclusive of our Asian culture. They're 23% in, in our school district. The principals do have a principals fund. There is LCAP for parent participation, just like we're helping all of our students from the ASB. And I know the superintendent met with all your principals on how to access money to support our ASB. We are supporting the PTSA, but again, I know when I was at, and again, I don't mince my words, and I'm not trying to put you on blast, Mr. Flores, but you know that the last year when I went to your back-to-school night, open house, no one spoke in Spanish, and that did not sit well with me because that does not include our Latino population at that school. And you also need to include some of that Asian population that you have. So if you need to get money from LCAP to provide translation services, when I go to PTSA's, I don't want to see an English-only PTSA. Will it be slower? Yeah, but I don't care. Let it be slower if it's going to include more people. Traditionally, what I hear from our Spanish-speaking parents is like, oh, I'd rather go to ELAC than PTSA. Two different things, you know? They have a different function. So we need to make that clear, that you need to bring those parents that speak another language, not just English only. We are not an English-only district, so that is the, just a challenge that I have for you. Is it hard? Yes, it is hard because sometimes our Latino parents and our Asian parents feel like a disconnect, but that's going to be the case in all of our places. Again, if we're at zero with that, so we're at zero, but the next time you come, recruit some people from ELAC, from DLEC, people that are Spanish speakers or only speak in Asian language, but they've got children in our school district so that the parents can be our partners, okay? Thank you very much for your time, a Royal High School.
Thank you.
Okay, if we could switch to the next school, I'm not sure what order you guys put it in, but if we could click please and have the next school come up.
Yes.
Awesome. El Monte High School, PTSA, Parent, Teacher, Student Association. Welcome.
Good evening, Board President Padilla, Board Members, Dr. Zuniga, and Cabinet. Mr. Cuevas could not be with us tonight, so I'm here to update you on El Monte's High School's status as we reactivate our PTSA. Parent involvement is critical to El Monte High.
Can you introduce yourself? I'm not sure if we got your name, so want to introduce yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Sarah McClarty. I am one of the assistant principals at El Monte High School.
Thank you.
Parent involvement is critical to El Monte High School. We have many parents currently involved in parent workshops around our campus. As a result of COVID, our formal PTSA organization was dissolved. We currently have reestablished communication with the First District PTS President Diane Velasco to reestablish our formal relationship with PTSA. We have recruited around 15 parents who are interested in joining and are working to recruit some of our bilingual teaching staff to PTSA to support parents and students. We are also working with our ASB students to help recruit students to PTS. Mr. Cuevas has been actively participating with various parent groups on campus such as ELAC, School Site Council, and Workshop Groups. We also plan to continue the recruitment at our upcoming open house in March. We are awaiting communication from Diane Velasco to further our journey to reestablish the PTS. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate that. Very short, sweet, concise, and you did not give us the dog and pony show. You told us it wasn't active, but you're getting it activated, and that makes me very, very, very proud. Any other board members who'd like to chime in? Go right ahead.
I want to congratulate El Monte High School because, do you know that it was one of the first high schools who started First District PTA back in 1903? And this high school was one of the most wonderful, and they have, Diane Velasco can tell you that they have pictures of our high school, and it was so sad when it had to be dissolved. But I understand the situation was not good, but very happy that you kept it up with a good job. Our first high school is there now.
You could follow us from the ground up, really.
There you go. Any other board member would like to share? Just to thank the principal, Dr., I would say Dr. Cuevas, Mr. Cuevas, tell him thank you. I did get a phone call from him letting me know, and when I learned that from Professor Torres de Seagris about El Monte High School having one of the very first PTSA's, you know, there's a lot of firsts at El Monte High School. Mr. Cuevas is also the first Latino principal ever in the history of El Monte High School. So a lot of firsts there, so looking forward to seeing all your improvement. Thank you very much. Round of applause for El Monte High School. Who's up next? There you go. Sal Del Monte, welcome. Welcome, Dr. Morales.
Happy Wednesday, everybody. Just wanted to make a quick presentation regarding our Parent, Teacher, Student Association. I do have with me joining Ms. Natalia Vazquez. She's our PTS president. For us, PTS established in 2012, and we have a continuation up to today, so we are moving right along with servicing our, our students and our teachers. So the membership that we have here, the breakdown is simple, 35 current parents who have paid their dues to participate in the Cal State PTA Council, and then of course, as a voting member of PTS, that doesn't mean that the rest of our parents, our guardians are not included, right? We also have 35 teachers that are active members as well, who have supported by paying their dues for this year, and 75 current students that are also, have donated their $6 plus the dollar service fee for processing the, the, yeah, the cost of the transaction. So again, the number sign for us is just a paid membership. We do, we are inclusive, all teachers and staff are recipients, and benefit, they benefit from all of the hard work and the, and the resources that the PTS committee provides our school throughout the school year as well, and our students are also all involved, and they're all members to receive the benefits that are offered by them. Purpose, of course, for us for PTS, simple, it's to enhance our ed services at school and to improve the experience for our students. And how do we do that? We support the academic programs, extracurricular activities, and then special projects that we have at school. The effort and interest is community building. That is, of course, to empower our parents to work alongside teachers and students, and then, of course, to organize events. Or as they have in their bylaws, every first Monday of the month, we have the PTS meeting that takes place at 6:00 PM. They do a good job of publicizing that so that all parents are informed to attend, and of course, they have volunteer opportunities throughout their involvement. Advocacy, working with Ms. Vazquez as president and other members, they are critical and key inform, you know, stakeholder participants, right? They do tell us what, what is out there, what's the pulse, what's the beat of the students, the parents, or the community, so that way we can take action to facilitate, of course, improve the facilities, safer environment, better resources. Fundraising is key task number one for them, but again, the monies that are raised, they put in their sweat, their energy, they do support our students and our student clubs with field trips, they purchase equipment for athletic programs or music programs as needed, and of course, they also support a scholarship fund. Communication for us is key. We use all the different forms of communication at the school to support their, their message. Parental involvement is obviously at the, at the foundation of it all. It is to improve the education experience by the students, and Ms. Vazquez has been a key partner with me as I've been principal at the school. She's our former District Parent of the Year as well, so she is completely connected to our, our campus and our interest to support. What's the ongoing reach recruitment involvement practices that we have? We want to stay welcome, right? We want to make a welcoming environment, and that includes being available in the different languages for our parents that do come in. Ms. Vazquez has a strong board, and the board is bilingual, and they do do their part to, again, inform other parents to get involved. Promote the benefits of membership, use our communication channels, host information booths and tables at a different school event, and then implement the online registration drives that we have. You can definitely join our PTS. Go ahead and use your phone, activate that link, and you will be able to donate to our recruitment numbers there, okay? So our big challenge still continues to be recruiting volunteer leaders. We do understand everybody's day and time, and you know, just schedules are tough. So with Ms. Vazquez, we do see that her and her group of parents that are committed, we are going to be in need of recruiting a new cycle of new informed parents to really take over again the work that has already been created since 2012. And then, of course, provide recognition and incentives. For Ms. Vazquez, the best thing I can do is say thank you, right? Thank you. Or again, when we are at a school event, recognize this is on behalf of PTS when they sponsor a teacher luncheon, when they sponsor the return back to first day of school and they give them a teacher toolbox, paper, pen, little things like this, and the teachers appreciate that. But the other things that I can do is maybe give them an extra graduation ticket, right? That's above and beyond some things that once it's, it's time, they can probably get courtesy one more, one more. Or preferred seating at different school events. These are ways that we can, again, recognize all that time that goes unpaid, but they do it because they believe in school, they believe in their children, and they do believe in that partnership of parent, teacher, student, and school board.
Thank you. I really liked the page where you said, Board Member Quiwin asked the question, tell us what the, the why is of PTS. That page, every school should have it, share it with the rest of the schools.
The purpose, they all got that, yes.
Okay, perfect, because that's the, why do we have that? If you have a board, a new board member, turn to that page. That was probably, out of all your pages, that was your best one. Advocacy, scholarships.
I'll turn to a Royal.
That one, right there. Okay? That was the best one right there. Any, again, I'm going to challenge you. I heard you loud and clear that your PTS board is bilingual. That's great. Like, I'm bilingual too, but us being bilingual has nothing to do with our membership being bilingual. I want to see more Asian parents on your, on your PTS. I want to see more Spanish-speaking Latino parents, so you know, you could stand here and tell me one thing, but when I go to a PTS meeting, voy a hablar en español y voy a preguntar, you know, ¿qué hicieron para traerlo aquí para la membresía? Voy a preguntar esas preguntas, so por favor, ese es un desafío que les estoy poniendo. That's the challenge that I give to all the PTSA's that will come before us tonight.
Aceptado, and then we'll let Board Member Witt tell us that same question.
That's right.
I'm kidding, I'm kidding. I do have, just in that last update, Dr. Zuniga has agreed to meet with our board president and her, and her cabinet, so that way we can continue dialogue on these different tasks.
Yeah, make sure you claim your $2,000, and, and I have to tell you, hold us accountable. We do get like, you know, people will stand here sometimes, they say, you guys are, get all the money. I'm the senior board member, I get about $288 for my stipend, but hey, out of those $288, I can afford to become a member at all of the high schools, so hold us accountable, those of you that are at the high schools, even Dr. Rivas, Human Resources, Mr. Elitar, they really make a lot of money, way more than my $288 for my stipend, but it is, it should be within us to support our school districts. If we come here and, you know, get very healthy paychecks, we should be able to give six bucks to six schools, you know, five comprehensives and one continuation, so I'm putting that challenge out there to all of you guys here.
Take out your phones, take out your phones right now. The link is right there. Let's do it now. Challenge accepted.
There you go, there you go. Really quick though, my colleagues, anybody else? Mr. Salcedo?
Those, those extra graduation tickets really carry a lot of currency, so I think that's a, that's an idea that we can share with, with all the schools though. That's a good one though, I like that one.
But I'm going to tell the principal not to be so cheap. One, one ticket? That's it? Come on, man, make it more enticing.
And, and correct me if I'm wrong, and I say that because graduation season's coming around, and board members know, come, come end of May, June, that's the number one phone call. Can I, can you get me an extra ticket? Yep, so good idea.
Totally. Agree, Board Member Carlos Salcedo. Mr. Qui?
No.
Professor Stella Torres de Seagris?
Yes, I really congratulate you because from the beginning, you were excellent, and you increased your membership, you did all the things that they are materialistic. But one of my questions that I want to ask you is, why don't they participate in the programs that we have in education, like the program of Ed100? Ed100 give us the whole, the whole education about the, the program of how educate our children. How many parents are participating in this program, Ed100?
I, I know for sure Mr. Morris was participating in that. If you know, I recruited Mr. Morris personally. So when Mr. Morris retired, I was like, Mr. Morris, I have a perfect job for you. And he became the legislature for our program and our board, and then he is now the District PTS president.
Yeah, he's the, El Monte, El Monte, El Monte president, yes, but.
So he's opened our eyes to a lot of things that we didn't even know existed and brought people into certain things, because every time it gets carried down, carried down, sometimes information gets lost in the carry down. So he's opened our eyes to a lot of things that brought PTSA board members from the district over, from.
The First District, yeah.
Everything, you know? So we've seen a lot of things change with Morris being around, and we just hope that[1784.15] So, we've seen a lot of things changed with Morris being around, and we just hope that continues with the next president that's coming, and we will be joining a lot more stuff.
Also, very important is the participation, the participation in the art program that we have, the competition that we have in the art program. Our high school from, from South El Monte can do a lot of things. You can participate in that, and I don't see that. This is really sad. Another one is that having so many members, you need to participate also in going to Sacramento, to the Legislative Congress, the convention, and talk with our, because that's the thing that we do. I used to do it when I had time. I used to go to talk with our legislators and explain to the importance of the PTA in the education of our children. And we need, we need the participants from your high school, because you are great doing all the work that you are doing, all the members that you have, the way that you're including your teachers. Now, it's time also to start going out and give your name to show the legislators that you are paying attention. And you need your students to get better.
That's something that we don't really toot our horns so much about, because South Almani does so much just with our swap meet and everything that we give back, but we just stay under the radar, and that's something that we need to maybe put ourselves out there more.
I understand you are doing the wonderful thing with the community, but now we have to get, as strong as you are, my goodness, you can go and tell the legislators, "We do a lot of things, we need you to give us also help and give us this and this." You don't know how much we have to fight with them. To, sometimes they kick us out, they don't want to see us, but we still, we are still there.
Sounds good.
Thank you very much for your great job.
Thank you, Professor Stella Torres de Segres. Board Member, Mr. Florencio Breones?
No questions, just to thank you to both of you for presenting to us tonight. Really excited to see how strong the PTSA is at South Almani High School. I hope to see it continue to grow, and I think this is definitely a model for the rest of the campuses to emulate. So, thank you again.
Thank you so much, and I will join. I will put my money where my mouth is, I promise you, I will.
To all the high schools.
On a Sunday, too, you can come anytime.
There it is, there it is. Thank you so much. Rosemead High School, the mighty Panthers. Welcome, mighty Panthers. My alma mater, I must add.
Good evening to everybody. I am Janine Salanichro and also a proud principal of Rosemead High School. I'm happy to say that Rosemead High School has an active and growing PTSA. And I would be remiss not to introduce this fabulous lady here to my left, our president, Ms. Vicky Salterro. The names that we have up here are parents that work full-time jobs, big jobs, you know, with lots of hours and lots of responsibility, and they give of their time to Rosemead High School, and not just, not just to Rosemead, but looking at the school as a whole. I do love the slide from South Almani. I looked at it a lot today. It's a beautiful presentation, but I really feel like that slide really did capture. I think another piece of that too, and we talked about it last week when we had the executive board meeting, that in addition to that, we want to really communicate to our families that PTSA is a resource for them. So, I'll talk a little bit more about that and things that we're thinking about at Rosemead in order to grow our membership. So, those are the fabulous folks that are on our board for the 2324 school year. And as of the 14th on Valentine's Day, when we had our meeting via Google Meets on Valentine's Day, we were all, you know, going yay, right? We currently have 78 total members, and when I came in in November of '22, I gosh, it was very, it was pretty small at that time. So, we talked about Totum, we had used that in my previous district, so we started Totum, that online service, and that has helped. So, of our 78 total memberships, we have 49 from the envelope and 29 from Totum. So, that is, again, another option for folks that don't carry cash like myself, where I can scan a QR code and I'm able to join. So, that has been beneficial to us. Breaking down percentages, approximately 45% of our membership are parents and guardians, 31% are students, and 24% are staff at this moment of time. And so, kind of looking at my support for PTSA, this has been a really fun experience working with Vicky, coming on board, you know, being new as a president. It's been nice to have somebody to partner with that we're learning together. So, that has been a great relationship between the two of us. We talk a lot. She knows that she can just come in and check her mailbox and, you know, and come in and have a seat, and we chat very regularly. We just met on Friday and kind of talked about tonight and some of the things we wanted to highlight. For myself in particular, I felt it, I feel, continue to feel that it's very important to attend their executive board meetings. The group is very flexible. If it works for folks' schedule, we'll meet virtually. If it works, we'll meet in person. So, everyone is really open to having that conversation of when can we get together, how can we do it, and through what capacity can we do it? I've attended the PTA First District events. We have one coming up on Monday, so I'll be there with Vicky, learning a lot about it in general, myself, just growing my professional practice and what I can do as a principal to support this body. I think also that helping generate ideas to grow membership, because one of the things we need to talk about is what's the plan moving forward? And I think we talked about that last week, where really we need to do a better job at growing our membership base. And so, just being creative and thinking outside of the box. One thing that we started to do this year is I asked the board, I said, "What about trying to combine some events we're already having on campus and bringing PTSA with us in order to get the word out?" So, we had a dinner with the administrative team. We typically do coffee with the admin team, but I said, "What about a dinner?", because some of the parents had expressed interest in having a dinner. They wanted to, you know, dress up, they wanted to get together and have it be a little more informal. So, having a dinner and allowing people to sit around and eat together really did create that, that atmosphere. I was really nervous that I ordered a bunch of food and no one would show, but it was a rainy day, the last day of the fall semester, and we had a nice full, I'd say about 50. Fifty people showed up, and we had such a great night. And we did, because then we can combine those efforts, right? If we're doing coffee with admin and we're bringing translation services in to augment our staff that also translate, why not bring this group with us? Right? I got to introduce them, they got to talk to our families, and we had folks there that had never joined anything before, and so it was very exciting. I thought, "We ate all the food." It was all gone, so that was great. So, just thinking outside of the box on how we can bring our school community together. Again, promoting it whenever possible. You know, I said, "Let's, let's get on Totum, let's do a QR code, let's put it on our pamphlets for our school events. Let's see if we can combine forces and start getting the word out." I think we've done a decent job there, again, including PTSA and school events. We talked a lot last week about having an opportunity for open house coming up in March. Well, what can we do to really get, you know, hit the ground running with our incoming ninth grade families? So, I tossed out a few suggestions, and it was kind of, we kind of landed on, well, why don't we have a PTSA representative in the sessions for our incoming families? We're going to run 30-minute sessions, repeating, and how do you feel about having somebody in there to begin to say, "Hey, we're here as a resource for you." You know, "We have our own kids here, we're bringing our kids here too." And they thought that was a great idea. So, we're excited to see how that's going to play out on March 14th. And then, again, Vicky knows, anything she needs to talk about, I'm always available. You know, there's a texting string, a string with the, you know, with the board and myself on there, and so there, you know, there's communication on a regular basis. So, I feel in all those ways, you know, I'm going to continue to support. I always want new, creative, outside-of-the-box thinking. Let's talk about it, if something we can do to promote PTSA, let's talk about it and let's see if we can make it work. And finally, our plan to grow. I think we realized last week, we really need to push the membership drive. That's something we need to work harder on. I think we need to parlay registration and hit them when they come in. They are ready to buy, they are ready to hear things, and so we need to do a much better job, and I will help them absolutely in getting the word out at registration, not just a table, but let's talk about how we can be interactive and get in there and talk to parents while there are on our, on our site. Our staff and students, again, we need to promote it to our staff, do a better job on that. I was very excited to hear that our SAC members will be helping with that. It, again, it is true that, you know, one principal and one PTSA president cannot do it alone. So, I am happy that we're having some resources and really, you know, people kind of putting, putting their, you know, their thoughts and actions, you know, forward for us. Showcase, again, continue to showcase through our events held on campus. I think that's worked well. I'd like to continue to do that and where they can get the most visibility and the most time talking to our families. Also promoting through our existing programs. One thing that we do is I always put it in our weekly bulletin that comes out on Sunday evenings, it's always there, "Please consider joining, click here." You know, it's a one-stop shop for them to be able to do that. And again, promote through groups that already meet on campus. We already have our PEF-SAF. So, I went in there last week and talked to our liaison and said, "Hey, how, let's, let's, let's talk about not just partnering up PTSA, but other groups, let's bring them all together." So, Mr. Bedia, when you were talking about that, it just, for me, like, what's that big picture? And I couldn't agree with you more on that. And then, again, promoting through, you know, through Avid, we have a huge parent base there. You know, what are we doing to utilize that? Our RISE program, and I've really been thinking a lot about those parents and having them a part of what's going on in our campus, throwing some ideas out to folks, so we're going to test that out and see how it goes. And again, through ASB as well, through that student group, through their families, whose students are extremely involved. So, those are just a few of our ideas on our plan for growth, and it really does hinge on us strengthening our membership base. But I'm happy to say that we are trending in the right direction, so any suggestions or comments would be appreciated.
Excellent. Board Member, Mr. Florencio Breones?
No questions, but thank you to both of you for being here and presenting with us, and I'm excited to see your numbers as well and hope to continue to see the growth there in, you know, in any way that we can support, including by joining, happy to do so.
Thank you, Board Member Florencio Breones. Mr. Board Member Carlos Salcedo?
No questions, just a genuine thank you for everything you do and to grow our PTSA. I really appreciate it.
Board Member, Mr. Qui Win?
No, just thank you very much for your presentation.
Board Member, Professor Stella Torres de Segres?
Well, having Vicky with you, PTSA is going to be a great success, I know that. Thank you, Vicky. Have we already put Rosemead High School in our El Monte Union High School district, or they haven't worked yet? This is one of the things that I've been trying to ask, and the president of the First District said that, yes, pretty soon, we have to do that. Rosemead High School belongs to the El Monte Union High School district PTSA. But we have a kind of problem with your, the Rosemead PTA, is that right?
We've been trying to work with Diane to get it done, but it hasn't happened yet. So, unfortunately, Rosemead High School is part of Rosemead District PTSA. So, over there, they have a majority of elementary schools and Muscatal. Since I've partied with you, I'm also part of the council for Almani, so I'm able to meet some of these ladies here at the high schools over here, which has been a blessing because everybody over there is elementary. So, I'm hoping that all of you can advocate that maybe First District can move us over so that we can continue to grow. I myself have only been doing PTA for, this is my third year, my second year as a president. I'm a newbie to it, so I'm learning a lot and I'm in training with First District as well. Just for us to continue to advocate, I think a lot of times, parents don't think that when our kids are in high school, they need us as much. No, they need us even more because they're going into adulthood. So, they need us to teach them these skills. So, for us to advocate for our kids is the best thing we can do. I myself have two daughters, one of them is a junior at Rosemead, and she is a member, but I make sure she's an active member. I have her communicate with the other kids to schedule things with us. Membership is important, but they need to be a participating member, especially if they're going for a scholarship. I want my children to not just say, "Oh, here's my $10, I'm done." No, I want her to put the work in. Maybe not as many hours as I do because she's also in other clubs, but I do want to see if the students put in the work, helping us, doing things with us, coming to our meetings. And that's what we're looking at, too, maybe getting a student next year to be part of our board and moving with that. Dr. Zuniga, he's been to our meetings, we open the doors to anyone. If you'd like to come and see what's going on at Rosemead, we welcome that. So, yeah, if you guys can please advocate that First District transfers.
Dr. Zuniga, can you please look into that, see if that's a possibility of bringing them to our Almani? And maybe we could use a thing that they're all elementary, they want to be with high school and so forth? So, we'll look into that. A great presentation. I know that the Rosemead Way is responsible, resilient, respectful, resourceful, and the last time you guys were here with the presentation, I told you that relationships, it's something that we needed to work on. I can tell that this will definitely help with the relationships and in the relationship between the school community and then the parents and stuff. And, you know, I don't mince my words. I remember I was very critical when I went to Rosemead. The principal and I actually had, and the assistant principal, had a very heavy-duty exchange, but I respect Ms. Salanichro because she kind of told me something that I needed to do to open up and to be able to build that relationship. And I think since we had that little come to Jesus with each other, it's been a thousand times better. And I can see it in how you project and how you come here and your actions speak to, you know, everything that you're doing. So, I want to commend you and the PTSA president. Thank you for your work. I know you do double duty, I know you're with Almani City and Almani Union, and you're all over the place. So, thank you for your time commitment and for everything you do, and thank you for your leadership and your presentation, Principal Salanichro. It's a pleasure to hear this tonight. Round of applause. If we could just click to the next school, and now we have the mighty Vikings, Mountain View High School. Woo-hoo, yeah, we can clap.
Board President Padilla, members of the El Monte Union High School District Board of Education, Superintendent Dr. Edis Zuniga, members of the cabinet, my friends and colleagues in education, good evening. With me tonight is our fearless, outgoing PTSA president. I say outgoing because next month, we are due for election for our new set of board of PTSA, Sonia Hernandez. And also, we have members of PTSA Association at Mountain View High School, we have Marty Pimentel, we have Anna Banuelas and Jessica Castañón. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you for being here, team in the back, we see you.
At Mountain View High School, we value parent involvement, and we believe that they are vital partners of our school. I am honored and happy to share with our, that our PTSA at Mountain View High School is an active entity and productive partners of our school for the past two years. In terms of membership, I'm sharing with you the data that we have. Joining in at Mountain View High School in 2021, '22, we only have six members, a structural, skeletal structure of PTSA, and we're so happy that in 2022, school year '22, '23, we increased that to 17, and it is our great, you know, our goal to increase to 17. This year, we are happy to announce that we have 61 paid active members of the PTSA at Mountain View High School. The breakdown would be there were 21 parents, four teachers are involved, 29 students, and M stands for members. These are administrators and members of the school community or the community that wanted to be part of PTSA, so we included them as part of our numbers. When we say active, we make sure that we comply with our IRS filing taxes and dues, we pay them on a regular basis. We have the executive board members. At the same time, we are in the process of updating our bylaws and in implementing some standard rules, or standing rules when it comes to meetings and, you know, what do you call this? I lost a word. Standing rules would mean the committee engagement when we have meetings and all that. So, we are happy that we have an active 61 members at Mountain View High School currently. How do I support PTSA as a principal? First and foremost, I have to remind my organization, my group, that we have to keep our primary focus be grounded in education. We are here to support our students, that's basically, that's my job, to make sure that we are not, you know, going around that. Also, work with PTSA to solve problems and set goals that would benefit our students. And thirdly, to help PTSA plan activities that would promote social or student well-being from the mental, social, cultural, emotional, and the physical aspects of it. Establish that homeschool cooperations where school safety and communications is being open, and build a better community, build productive members of our global society. And lastly, support PTSA with their fundraising events. For the effort last year, what have we done so far to accomplish these goals and also to increase our membership? I showed some pictures. These are, we started last year by giving out, for the first time, right? Four scholarships to our graduating students, and we hope to increase that this year. They're doing a lot of fundraisers this year. doing a lot of fundraisers this year. And also, we have three major school campaign, which we wanted to see visibility and presence of our parents on campus. They have, first one that they have started was the Red Ribbon, the Drug Free Week, where students have to make a promise, correct? They have to write their promises on a red ribbon, and we put that on the bulletin board. And also, last Christmas, we have the school campaign for My Christmas Wish, where they build a Christmas tree with all the wishes of our students. And if you had, you know, it's really heartwarming to look at this, this, the wishes that some of our kids wishes to have a dollar in their pocket, wishes to have a food to eat, a shelter to, to live, and the clothes to wear. Those are little wishes that they had. Wish to have a cat for Christmas time and all that. It was really a great event for that. And recently, the team had a campaign for Valentine's Gram by making statements, making promises. And they've been really working so hard, and they made those two big hearts in there, if you've seen in the picture. We also have workshops. We attended the workshops from attendance to, a lot of workshops that Matty have been organizing with our members of the staff, attending workshops with the parent engagement. So those are things that we keep on pushing at Mountain View High School. Another means of really increasing our membership is we have the PTSA Thanksgiving. The PTSA hosted two events last year, lunch, luncheon and breakfast, I believe, for our teachers and staff. They made some tamales, I believe, last Christmas. And it was more than, they fed almost the entire school for that. They made huge amount of turnout for that event. Back to school night, open houses, the registration week, we make sure that they are physically present and available, fundraiser events. And this year, we are initiating, we have our WASD accreditation next year, not this year, but we wanted to have their involvement in the process of creating the report. So this coming March 16th, we will have our first parent WASD retreat for them to be aware of what WASD is all about and be involved in the actual writing of the report. And also, we have a parent volunteer for school safety committees that we are starting to push this this year. So those are ways that we can provide and promote membership at Mountain View High School. Again, I can't thank my parents enough for the support that you have given me for the last two years. It's been a wonderful experience, and we'll be missing you. His son is graduating this year, his senior.
Thank you. Thank you for that awesome presentation. Board Member Carlos Alcello?
No questions. Just thank you also for the growth of your PTSA and sharing those wonderful pictures. Appreciate it.
Board Member Florencio Breones?
Thank you to both of you for being here and the rest of your executive team. And thank you for the continued invitations to, to your meetings and participating in your events as well. Very much appreciated. I'm sorry, I was not able to attend the Valentine Gram event. I had put it on my calendar, and then I realized that I had an in-person meeting that day that I had to attend as opposed to just zooming in and listening. But, you know, I'm really excited to see that your numbers continue to grow as well. And again, this is something that, that I hope that you're all collaborating in order to grow your organizations, to their respective schools, see the numbers continue to grow. Really because it's so important that parents stay involved in their students' lives at the high school level. It's so counterintuitive to think that when they get to ninth grade, they don't need parents anymore. They're old enough. It's like, no, that's when they need you the most. They need you to stay involved. They need you to make sure that they stay on the straight and narrow. So I really am grateful for all of you and really excited to see so many great things coming from the PTSA, not only at Mountain View, but the other campuses as well. Thank you again.
Thank you, Board Member Florencio Breones. Board Member Mr. Qui Wynn?
Just quick question, you know, on the tally, I only see four teachers enrolled in the PTSA. So why's the number so low? Only four, four teachers? Your P T, as in the T, only four?
It's, it's a challenge that we will be pushing and invite more teachers in the process. And we're just, we'll take four for now, and we'll continue to recruit more teachers in the process.
When I see a number out of the norm, I always question. So, you know, just forgive me.
It's okay. You don't have to ask for forgiveness. It is what it is. But I could totally tell you're a math teacher, you know, because you had to put it in the little box and everything. I'm like, is this N W E A data? Or like, what are we looking at, you know? We'll get to that. Professor Stella Torres de Seigres?
Well, I'm very, very happy that this wonderful PTA, Matty, do you remember when we started? Oh, my goodness, this lady and Jessica is there and the other ladies that you started really strong the work. And look at that. Look at the fruit and the wonderful president that you have now. Mr. Váñez, you are really lucky to have these three ladies who are helping you in the PTSA. They are on the, on the way of having a strong PTSA that we needed for our students to give in everything. Thank you so much for the great presentation. Thank you, Matty, for being here.
Thank you so much. And yes, Matiana Pimentel, I give that same challenge to you. If there's somebody who understands that we must partner with our parents, and it just can't be with our English-only speaking parents, you must also bring those other, the Spanish-speaking parents. I know the Asian population there is low, but there's still room for improvement there. So I still challenge all of the PTSA's to increase the Latino-speaking membership as well as the Asian-speaking membership. And like Mr. Qui said, at your school, the teachers, okay? Because it is PTSA, teachers, teachers, teachers. And we know that teachers are supportive. You just need to remind them. So thank you for the presentation. We appreciate it. Do we have a round of applause for Mountain View High School?
Mr. President, I want to say something very quickly. Thank you very much to the principals and the presidents. The basic and the success of a PTA is the good relationship between the principals of the schools and the presidents of the PTA. With all the years that I've been in the PTA, they are always in First District, they tell us the same thing. And the president of the PTA, PTSA, and the principal, they have to get along very well. And look at that. This is beautiful to see you, how well you are doing. Thank you so much. I really appreciate this. And, and I pray that you have the great success because you are on the way to have a good PTSA in our Monte Union High School District. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Professor Stella Torres de Seigres. We all appreciate your wise words. And again, if there's somebody that knows about PTSA, it is you. So thank you for closing it in that manner. Principals, you know that this is a special board meeting. You are required to come to the regular board meeting. This is the PTSA, not the PTSA, this is a special board meeting. So you are dismissed. If you want to go, we will not be offended. Go ahead and go home. Presidents, also another round of applause for all of our presidents for coming tonight. Thank you so much. Next, we will go on to the next item on the agenda. It's going to be a very good meeting. There's going to be a lot of questions. So grab some popcorn because there's going to be a lot of questions tonight regarding this next item. And it's number two, update on the district's math plan presented by Educational Services. As you know, before we get the speaker to come up here, go ahead and be there. But as you know, that the Almani Union High School District has made it a point to bring about an initiative. And that initiative is called Making A-plus Adjustments to History. Now, what does that mean? Is that traditionally, we have seen that our Asian students continue to do well, but our Latino kids are being left behind. And we, this board, wants to change that by making some A-plus adjustments. Just to kind of set the stage, some of the things that we wanted to see in making adjustments to history and the initiative were the following things, and I'm going to read them. So that as you present, we will see if you hit the target of some of the things that we have been asking as a board. And I have some notes here. It says that the child welfare and attendance people in our district were supposed to check on the attendance for our IM1 students to see where they were at with their attendance. And the reasoning behind that was that in some of our block-scheduled schools, they don't have math every day. So if the kids' absences are very high there, we're going to have problems. We'll have problems also at the traditional where they have math every day, but more so at the block schedules. We also talked about assessing all of our eighth-grade students coming in from the neighboring school district, whether it's the Mountain View School District, Valladolid School District, Almani City School District. I want to hear what you guys have to say about addressing, assessing those students. We also talked about that in this initiative, we, district-wide, we would use our adoption of the HMH, better known as Hooten-Mifflin Heart Court Curriculum, and use the supplement of IXL. And at times, we've used the other Delta Math. We also talked about hiring a district teacher on special assignment, better known as a TOSA. Did we do that? We also talked about having one district-wide common math assessment. We talked about N W E A. Do we finally have one common math assessment in the Almani Union High School District? We also talked about identifying district-wide power standards so that we don't have the Arroyo Power Standards, the Almani Power Standards. The framework has changed, as our Assistant Superintendent informed us, but the standards have not. So I want to know, this board wants to know, do we now have identified power standards so that when next year comes around, we start, we hit the ground running, and everybody has the standards, and those standards will already be identified. And we're not trying to identify them at the beginning of the school year. In addition, we talked about district-wide professional development in the area of math. We also talked about smaller class sizes, specifically in IM1. Did we do that? We talked about college tutors in IM1 classes because they needed a lot of support there. We also talked about instructional support specialists or teachers assistants in IM1 classes. Did we do that? We also talked about pacing guides because everybody's instruction was all over the place in the school district. Do we have pacing guides now? We also talked about posting of the standards in a classroom. So if a board member walks in, or a parent walks in, or anybody walks in, we can identify what standard this teacher is teaching to. And also, we talked about strengthening the vertical articulation agreements with the feeder districts through what we know as CALS, or the Collaborative Administrative Leadership Series or Seminar, where our administration meets with their administration. So it's a big initiative. It's a lot of, a lot of things. But we did bring a consultant for the professional development, and I'm dying to hear about the needs assessment that she came in and looking at our data. I know that at times, as the president, I get calls from several of my colleagues saying, what is up with the person that we hired to do the professional development? We're not getting anything in our Friday memos. We want to hear about that. We want to know about that. We need you to give us a report. And we've gotten a few reports. So I'm glad that you're here. And we'll hear it directly from the horse's mouth because I am curious to know of what you've done, or since we've hired you, what is the value of bringing you to Almani Union High School District? I want to hear that tonight. So without further ado, I'll go ahead and have Dr. Laura Rivas, who is our Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services. She is new to our district. She's been here several months. And let's give her a warm round of applause. Can't hear the mic. Ted, can you help, please?
I think we're on now.
All right.
Good evening, President, board members, Dr. Zuniga, fellow cabinet members, and our audience, here to report a little bit on the progress of the work that we're doing around math, but also present the big ideas around our math plan, how that's coming together, and looking forward into this big initiative and how we intend to address some of those asks that you enumerated as you started on this item. So with that, I'll go ahead and just give you an idea of what the flow of our conversation tonight or our presentation will be. We'll start with a general update, specifically addressing some of the work around the N W E A, TOSA, articulation, and priority standards. Then I'll go on and share the district plan, what is the overview of the actions that we are planning around for our long-term work in this area. Then I'll kick it over to Catalina Science, who is our math consultant, to talk a little bit about the scope of work and the feedback that's coming through the needs assessment. And then we'll close it off by giving you an idea of how we are anticipating moving forward and articulating this plan for implementation. So starting with the general update, just, you've received some communication with regard to our testings. And I just wanted to kind of put in perspective our year with N W E A. We started this work back in September, where we did our initial training for administrators and for teachers. Then we did start our fall administration window was from August 25th to the Friday of October 13th. And so that was the first round district-wide when we implemented the assessment. Shortly thereafter, we had a very specific-focused training for our teachers following that first administration. From then, we went on to our second administration, which is a winter. And that happened when we came back from winter recess. So we opened up our windows on January the 8th and closed that on January the 19th. We then followed that up with additional training for our staff that was more focused. Now that this was the second administration, we had some data, some more information. And so we wanted to make sure that the training was very specific and targeted in supporting teachers with that, with the results that they had already gotten. And we're looking forward to our spring test administration. Our window will take place between May 6 and May 17. And we're going to be then following that up with another focused professional development for our teachers. We have not yet determined that date because that puts us at the end of the calendar or the school year. And so we're working to see whether we do that at the end of the year or the beginning of next year. Just trying to work through that. We've also had ongoing check-ins and support through the content specialist meetings throughout the year with Mr. McGinnis checking in and working with our content specialist in both the administration of the assessments, providing that support, and also checking in and articulating or at least communicating what that training would be, scheduling those training sessions, and making sure people were in attendance. So by the numbers, students that we tested in IM1, IM2, and IM3, you can see there. I'm also a former math teacher, so you would have to see this in a chart. So you'll see from the fall to the winter, our numbers across each of those courses. That's what we had agreed as a district that we were going to commit to implementing our assessments in the IM sequence of courses. So we have, you'll notice with the IM1s, we have a larger administration. We have more students at that level. And then as we move our way towards IM3, you'll notice that the numbers slightly decline. In terms of the number of teachers trained, you'll notice from the fall to the winter, we had 51 teachers trained. That's 100% of the teachers that are teaching Integrated 1, Integrated 2, and Integrated 3. So we're happy to report that all the teachers that are administering this exam have been trained. Now, a little bit on the overview of the test outcomes, because we did complete our second administration window. So now we're able to have a conversation about what we're seeing with the results of the N W A map growth assessment. And so you saw this already on a Friday memo, but I wanted to just kind of capture a little bit of this and, and maybe talk through a couple of the pieces that you're going to see, and more so in the next set of charts that I'll be showing you. I do want to say that this data was pulled together by Catalina Science through her work and doing the triangulation of data. So this is not data that was pulled directly off of the N W A site. She was able to put this together for us, taking that information from them and putting it together with some other data that she's been working in helping us triangulate. So what you see in this pie, sort of, you'll see the percent of students that were showing growth, no growth, and then regression. So in the green, you'll see that we have 60.5% of the students who took the exam back in the fall and took it again in the winter, who demonstrated growth. That growth, we'll talk a little bit more in the next slide in terms of what that may mean. We also had about 4.5% of the students who didn't show growth, and then 35% of the students who regressed. So we have some overarching questions with regard to this data that we're going to be exploring with the help of Catalina Science, helping us dig into who these students are and how we might leverage our understanding of who they are to be able to address some of the barriers that we're seeing or some of the challenges. To frame it, we had 3,815 students, grades nine through 12, who participated in the administration between fall and winter. This means that these were the number of students that we had comparable results for. So that means they took both the fall and the winter administration in order for us to be able to have a conversation about growth. And so of those 60.5% of the students that showed growth, 52.98% of the students met their growth goals. So with N W So with NWA, when the student takes that initial assessment, there's a projected growth expectation for the students, and then that shows us how many students actually met that growth goal. So even though only 52.98% met their target, 60.5 actually grew. Some of them grew, but didn't quite reach their growth target, but there was still visible growth from the fall to the winter administration. What I'd really like to pay more close attention to, and this is really valuable insight that through the work that Ms. Science did for us, is able to help us start to think about how we might be able to address some of the issues. But before we get there, I wanted to just explain what you're seeing here in this chart. I don't know if it made a lot of sense when you got it on the Friday memo. So you'll notice three bars here, stacked graphs. What this is showing you is growth. But before I get to growth, when the kids take the NWA assessment, they had a particular score, which we're going to say they achieved at a certain level. When the kids took that assessment, we had students that scored very high, so they were high achievers. We had some kids that scored average, and then we had some kids that did not score so well. So when we're taking a look at the distribution of kids on how they scored, what Ms. Science then did is took a deeper or a closer look at the achieving students, those high achieving students, and how much growth they actually showed from the first administration to the second administration. Then she did the same thing by looking at the students that scored on the average scale and then took a closer look at, well, how much did they grow? Are they exhibiting less growth, greater growth? What does that look like? And then she also unpacked what our low achieving students' growth was. So what you'll notice on these graphs, from the red to the blue, is the growth. The top chart is the growth of our high achieving students. So what you'll notice is that we had 38.5 of our high achieving students, based on their RIT score, who demonstrated significant growth. Then we also had 8.6% of those students who achieved high and scored high on the assessment who actually regressed from that first administration, but they still scored high, if that makes sense. If you look at the charts as we go and go to the average achieving student down to the low achieving students, what you'll notice is that the red bar starts to grow. That means that the low achieving students are making less growth, or in this case, regression, from the first administration to the second administration. And you'll notice that the blue is higher with the higher achieving students, which means that those high achieving students are making more growth than our lower achieving students. What we'd ideally like to see is more students or that green and blue bars be wider. That means the kids are making more growth. And then just to describe the colors, that yellow there shows average growth, which is about a one-year worth of growth, which is what we typically expect a student to grow from one year to the next, is we expect them to make one year's worth of growth. Anything above that, the green and the blue, is more than one year's worth of growth. That means we're accelerating learning. Anything below that yellow, we're going to look at that orange, that's no growth, really they're kind of staying stagnant, and then that red is really that they're regressing. So if we're looking at closing the achievement gap for our students, what we need to do is accelerate learning. So we need to be seeing growth beyond a typical growth. Otherwise, they're just growing one year, we're not closing the gap. So in order to close the gap, we're hoping to see more greens and more blues, with the blues really being more in the accelerated range, which is about two years' worth of growth. So if we can get our kids to grow two years, we're going to start to close some of those gaps. So that's how we're interpreting those graphs. So now the interesting part to these graphs is when we saw this, and we're having a conversation, Mr. McGinnis, Ms. Science, Mr. Sanchez and I, we're looking at this, and now we're extremely curious to find out in terms of how do we solve our issues is, first, if we're looking at our high achieving kids, why are we having kids who are regressing? They're high achieving, we should not be seeing that. So we're curious to know, why are they regressing and how do we stop that from happening so that we can see those students that are high achieving continue to grow at significant, at a greater pace? The other question that arose from, if you look at the last chart there, we have the low achieving students. We had 16.69% who actually demonstrated great growth. We also had 12.26% of students who had more than a year's worth of growth. So a question is, what is happening there with those students? How do we find out what's working for them so that we can replicate it for more students? And we're able to then really target very strategically those groups so that we're able to then close the gaps. So those are part of the efforts moving forward that Ms. Science is going to help us with in terms of really looking at understanding the phenomena there. She's going to be looking and working with us and putting together some focus groups with students to really unpack what's happening there. And we're also going to be talking to teachers where we're seeing that growth so that we can try to pick out the things that are working and be more specific and targeted with our So aside from NWA, I did also want to share an update around the status of our math TOSA. So we're happy to report that we did hire our math TOSA, Mr. Alejandro Sanchez from Mountain View High School. So unfortunately, because it is hard to fill a position at this time of the year, he's still teaching and he's also working with us, so we have him doing double duty right now. We are in the process of hiring that math teacher to replace him back in Mountain View. And then once he is, once that's done, then we'll be able to fully release him and have him on our, at our district office, working with us more closely. We've already started the onboarding process with us. He's already met with Mr. McGinnis, he's already met with Ms. Science, myself. So we're moving that forward, but it hasn't been full-time yet. Really thankful that he wanted to stay with his kids and provide that support because it's not easy for our Integrated 1 students on his schedule to have a major disruption where we're at in the year. So he's continuing to support his students in the classroom, but we're doing that double duty right now. We're looking forward to pretty quickly being able to fill that position. They've already interviewed, and they have potentially a candidate that they will be bringing forth. The other piece I wanted to report on is at articulation with our partner districts. We have been doing some work through the CALS meetings. We have taken a focused look at mathematics as our problem of practice. We spent some time looking at data points with all of our feeder districts and the administrators that were in that room. We looked at CAS data, we looked at perception data from Youth Truth Survey, and then the feeder districts did their own survey that emulated those same questions. And then we also looked at our course placement data, and we had some really rich conversations. And so we're looking forward to our next meeting with them to continue this focused look and work around mathematics. I'm also happy to report that we have started working with El Monte City. Mr. McGinnis and Mr. Sanchez met with his counterpart in curriculum and instruction at El Monte City and the coaches, and they had a really productive first meeting where we're having a conversation around what is our math actions, our priorities and our focus, and how do we collaborate and work together on that? So that's already, our first meeting has already taken place, so that's underway as well. And as far as priority standards, initial work has started with introducing our content specialists and instructional coaches to the real criteria, which is coming from Larry Ainsworth's work. And it gives us some really good starting points for how we're going to determine those priority standards and coming together. So at this point, we are introducing that concept. We're training people on how to use that criteria so that we can go more formally into the work of identifying those priority standards. That, however, will be ongoing work through next year because we are, that is not something that we want to do in isolation without the work of our feeder districts and our partner districts. So we are looking forward to continuing that conversation and doing more of that work and solidifying that through the IM1, IM2, and IM3 courses. But we are underway already with that.
When you're talking about the priority standards, you're talking about the priority standards for IM1, IM2, IM3?
Yes.
Okay, so I don't want the whole presentation to go and then we lose our questions.
You got it.
So I'm going to ask my questions here and I'm going to jump in. I was under the impression that we would already have the priority standards identified and done. I mean, to me, I'm not a math expert, but it doesn't take a rocket scientist to, I've heard you loud and clear, the framework has changed, but the standards have not. I myself am not okay with waiting until next year to start the work of identifying the power standards. I know that you said that, you know, long-term work. I don't think that identifying the power standards should be long-time work. I think that you guys need to get the content specialist, you know, sub them out for four, three days. It shouldn't take that long to identify the power standards. If I'm a teacher, okay, and I'm coming off of my summer break and I'm going to start the year, okay? In the perfect world, I would know what the scores are of my eighth graders that are going to be coming in, that are going to be placed into a master schedule of IM1, IM2, IM3. A few at IM2 because some of our kids in the feeder districts are already taking IM1. But if I'm a teacher, you know, I would, I would trust my content specialist to be able to identify the power standards. And we have so much technology in this district that if we want input from the rest of our teachers, put it on a Google Drive on what they think the power standards should be. But I myself, I am tired of not identifying the power standards, you know? I've talked about how I don't want the power standards from Rosemead and the power standards from Arroyo. I'm glad to hear that we, you know, we have one, one assessment, one district-wide assessment. Did this board take some heat from the different schools because we wouldn't approve the supplemental? Yes, we did. But it was okay. We, we, we wanted to take that heat on. I'm glad that we do have the district-wide assessment. I'm glad that we have a TOSA. I've been circling the different things that, that I initially said to you when we started this meeting about what making A-plus adjustments to history and that initiative. I'm glad that we're strengthening the articulation with the feeder districts. I'm glad we have a common assessment. I'm glad that we have the TOSA. But the main thing here is identifying these power standards. You know, I don't, I do not want to wait until next year to do this work. I get it that this is long-time work, but identifying power standards is not long-time work. And I will say it again, get the content specialist, you have content specialists from math from every single school, get them to do a Google Drive and have the teachers, the professionals, the ones that know what should be taught. We can compare it to a model of what other districts have used as their power standards, but we have got to come up with our own power standards for the El Monte Union High School District, and that work should already be done in February, March, April, May. We still have four months of school so that when our teachers come back in August, we give them a document and say, "These are the power standards for the El Monte Union High School District," and I'm going to press on tonight. I've given it this so much thought, but we have got to assess our eighth graders so that when our eighth graders come, we already know where they're at. And if we're going to create a master schedule, if we have some kids who can't do, you know, division, then put all those kids in one class for IM1, the ones who can't do division. If there's some kids that are in IM1 and then they can't do some multiplication, then clump those all together, but start them from the beginning of the, of the school year. I'm not okay with prolonging these low math test scores and, you know, oh, well, we're still fiddle-farting around trying to identify what the power standards are in El Monte Union High School District. That's just my thing. When I see priority standards, those things have got to be done by, you know, this year. I don't want our teachers coming in and, oh, now we're going to, another batch of students in next year's master schedule that again are facing this difficult, you know, problem that we're having in El Monte Union High School District. But again, that's just my two cents, but please continue.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that.
I do. I'm going to be very direct. You know, I am not okay with not identifying the power standards. The content specialists are very intelligent people. They're content specialists because of that, and if there's some people that know curriculum, it's them. And we've got content specialists, we've got curriculum, you know, coaches, instructional coaches, we've got TOSAs. I'll say it again, we have so much personnel, more personnel than we've ever had in the history of education. We, El Monte Union High School District, content specialists and math teachers should be able to identify the power standards in the next few months. If we don't, we, you know, we have a major problem in this district, but that's just my two cents.
Yeah, so what I was going to add is that, yes, we agree that those priority standards are absolutely critical. We do have a couple of things moving in the pipeline, so we did have a conversation about when does it make sense to do some of this work? And our focus really this year was on leveraging the work with that common assessment, which was the NWA.
I know, but the common assessment is already done. We got it. That one's, check it off the list. I'm talking specifically about priority standards. What did the teachers say? By when do they think? I get it all about the input, but the input doesn't mean that we need everybody to be there in person. We can do a document, you know, I'm not the technology expert here. You know, you all know that I can't stand technology, I hate it, but I have learned how to share stuff, you know, through the Google Docs, so not that complicated. We got one of the best guys right here. Where's Eric Steelman at? Eric Steelman, where are you at? Okay, I'm sure he can come up with a document, or the TOSA, or the consultant, or you to share. We have got to identify those standards before this year is over, Dr. Rivas.
And so one of the things that we wanted to make sure that when we're doing the identification of those priority standards is to be done really well, and so balancing around the criteria becomes really critical. And so making sure that we're not going to have to revisit that in the long term, we're being thoughtful about that process. But I'll definitely, I'm hearing you, but we're going to have, continue to have those conversations. I know it may appear as an easy task to do, and I've done this work before, and it isn't quite that simple, but we are going to make some...
Well, I'll disagree with you because I've done my homework too, and I've gone to many districts and I've asked that question, and they told me that it's not that hard to identify power standards. And we're not the only district who needs to identify power standards. There are documents that you could look at and we can disagree and tweak it. We can look to El Monte, to the Whittier Union School District, we can look to Baldwin Park. There's tons of stuff, and I mean, we have a, we have a math person there that went to Harvard. I remember reading her resume. I mean, you're the expert. Jump in here and tell us, how long does it take to identify power standards, Ms. Catalina Science? I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but this is, this is the crux of the problem that we're having in this district, is that we have never identified the standards in this district. So can she answer that question?
Thank you. I do know, I also just want to make sure that we clarify that the work has already started, and I think that the work that I'm doing is really understanding the system and we can leverage. So I, we've had the exact conversations that you're bringing up ourselves and really looking at how we make it happen. I think the thing that, that I can provide is, once I, as you're going to see in the needs assessment, is once I learn more about the system, is where you can leverage. So can it make, yes, we can make it happen. Something else probably has to be deprioritized. And so I think that that's, that's going, you know, maybe in March, I can come back and once I finish that needs assessment, the initial piece, I can give you a more concrete answer that is more respectful and professional, given the full scope of the work that I'm about to finish. But can it be done? Yes, it can be done. Something else then, based on all the pieces that I see happening with the district, needs to then be deprioritized and moved. So I think that's what I see, the district trying to do a lot of things and to do them well. Can it be done? Yes, it can. I still need to look a little bit more in depth into how that gets done and gets unreal because you, what you don't want, and you're going to see that in the part where I said it, your system and the rethinking of systems, if for, for standards to be done, put on your, on everyone's classroom and ignored. So we, that's part of what we need to really think through, grab the information from the focus groups, grab the information from the teachers, you know, give us this, like, next couple of month and a half to do that, because what, we've seen districts using the standards, putting them under, you know, sorry, in the walls, and then ignoring them. And that, the part of the piece of the real criteria is really thinking about this, this time, not just to produce a document, but to train and coach and, and give real professional development while they're creating this thing. So that's a great challenge. I'm glad, I appreciate that challenge, and I hope to come back when I finish the needs assessment and give you more concrete, this is where we're heading. We've spent, we've been tweaking our eyes a lot because we've had very courageous conversations around this topic, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
So moving on to our district plan, this is again just an overview of all of the pieces that we see needing for us to work on, to put into place, to make the, the math program work for, better for our kids. So we did start out with some goals around where do we want to see student achievement go? And we have to, we know we want generally our students to do better in math. And more specifically, we want to close the achievement gap for our Hispanic Latinx students. So in order to do that, we have to identify some very measurable metrics, right? Where are we going to see that growth if we were to stick to our plan? And so here we have four areas that we're hoping we're going to see growth. The first one is on our assessment result from the smarter balance in the math. We also want to see our students more successful in the classes, so reducing our defail rate would be a goal. We're also wanting to see increased student growth on the growth assessment. If you remember back to where we're talking about the data pieces and the students showing growth, we didn't have a lot of students, we didn't have 90% of our students making growth. And then we didn't have that many more students making more than one year's worth of growth. So we want to make sure that we consistently see more growth in that assessment. So that would be another area. Another piece of focus that we want to kind of pay attention to is the experience for our students. How are they seeing themselves as mathematicians? And are they seeing the math in, that they're engaging in is relevant? And are they seeking help when needed? And so that means that there is a safe classroom environment where they feel compelled and as part of the learning process where they can come in and ask the, the questions that they need to when they're not being successful. And we're looking at using the Youth Truth Survey, which already has math mindset questions embedded in there for us to be able to see that growth. So as we're looking at this math plan, this is how we intend to see some growth and where we would hope we would see some of the growth. So I want to just say, the overview for our plan is really across four major areas. We want to talk about curriculum alignment and focus. So that takes us back to our standards, to our instructional materials. Then we do want to see some work around assessment and data to inform our teaching and to measure our learning for students. So we want to have some pieces that really center around how we're using data and how we're assessing students. The other piece is what's happening, happening with instruction. So we want to make sure we're having a focus around instructional vision, driving that. What does it look like? What should it feel like? And with that, what are evidence-based practices that research has shown to have tremendous impact on student learning? So we don't want to just continue to teach the way we've taught. We want to identify and leverage practices that have been shown to have a positive impact on learning.
Yeah, please repeat that sentence again. I loved it. Start again with that sentence.
Oh, no, I don't know if I could ever repeat.
We do not want to continue to teach the way we've been teaching because you know that, I always say, to continue to do what we've always done, we all know is the definition of insanity. And so if we're going to, you know, be making adjustments to history, we cannot continue to do what we've been doing. So you just said that, so that, that to me is very powerful. I don't want to continue to do what we've done in this district because we're going to get the same results. If we, we set everything the same, the same way and the teachers continue to teach the way they've been teaching and we do the same thing, then the DNF rate is still going to be in our face. So we must do something differently.
Yeah, so that's what we're hoping to do is identify and leverage some of those practices that have been shown to have high impact. And so we're being strategic about what we want to focus our professional development on and our training on to make sure that we're leveraging those effective practices.
And I don't mean to interrupt you, but, but I'm going to. You did say something that I was going to tell you. You know that I'm very supportive of Youth Truth. Because ask our students, they will tell us to our face, you know? I know that when they talked about, you know, the, the GATE program, not the GATE program, but the AP classes, I remember that there's some teachers in the district who think they're wonderful, but they can't get their kids to pass the AP exam with the three. And then you tell them in Youth Truth and the kids will tell us to our face, like, yeah, we were not prepared. And the reason that I say that is, talk to the kids, you know? What, I'm going to ask this when she did our needs assessment. It's one thing for me to come in and look at the data, like when you came in, you have to look at the data and all that. But it's not until you, you do LBWEA, when, when you get your administrative credential, and you know this, LBWA is Leadership by Walking Around. You could tell me all you want by looking at your documents, but it's, it's not until you start visiting El Monte High School. And that is very applicable to you because you could look at our data before you interviewed here. I know you did your homework. You're a highly intelligent woman. And before you go somewhere, you want to know where you're going or in the interview questions or they're going to ask you questions about this district. So you could read all that, but it's not until you actually go to Rosemead High School. It's not until you go to El Monte High School that you, you truly get to see it. And why do I say that? Because I know that we get the memos. Dr. Zunigut is a very good writer. You're a very good writer and you articulate exactly what your visits were, what you looked at and so on and so forth. But sometimes, sometimes there is stuff that is missed. And what do I mean by that? When this man right here next to me, my vice president, Mr. Qui Nguyen, goes into those IM classes, it has been astonishing, some of the things that we've been finding in there from some teachers. You know, even when we have really awesome, amazing teachers, we found out that those classrooms were too big, that we need more support. I, Mr. Qui and I talk all the time about this topic and he's educated me. I know there's times where you've been with him, the superintendent, the Assistant Superintendent of Educational Service, Mr. Kirk McGinnis, the principal, in a class about 19 students, and there still isn't enough tutoring and support to help the students. I know that for a fact because this man tells me, not just at Rosemead, not just at El Monte or Mount View. I know that's the issue in, in all of our, in all of our high schools. And so when I heard you say that there's focus groups, I, I am going to ask if part of the needs assessment has been, how many times has that woman, Ms. Sines, been on our campuses? Has she been in some of our classrooms? Has she been in some of the NWA trainings? Has she been involved? And if she hasn't, that is something that we definitely need to start doing. Because if, if she's going to do a needs assessment, please don't tell me that she's only looked at us on paper. It's one thing to look at us in paper and it's a whole other thing visiting our classrooms. And this man showed me that. So I just have to say that, okay? I'm glad you said, I'm glad you said focus groups because yes, when I, I have a small focus group. When I go to the student, uh, the SAC, the Student Advisory Committee, they have told me to my face and to his face, we want our teachers teaching us. We've, in a lot of our classrooms, they're putting me on Delta Math and they're putting me on IXL and we don't want that. So when I see that so many of our high achieving students in the reports that you've sent us, I don't know if it was 40%, are stagnant or regressed, yeah, that's alarming to me. But I also want to know for that little 16% that showed me hope, I want to hear from the mouths of babes, what did it for you? I want to hear, you know, I want to hear from them. So I'm glad that we're going to use Ms. Catalina Sines to do those focus groups. I'm glad that you said that.
And that's part of the plan and she'll share a little bit about our next steps with that. Then the last piece here is a culture of learning, making sure that we're providing the support for us to continue to learn and to grow as a system. And so I'll just walk you through each of those areas, what some of those action steps actually are. So when we're talking about curriculum alignment, one of the priorities is prioritizing those content standards, but not just the content standards, we're also talking about the practice standards for mathematics and really leveraging a few consistently across the board to build our students' skillset in mathematics. And that's going to be for IM1, IM2, IM3. And this is really across the district in order to drive the assessment because those priority standards will tell us what we need to assess because those are our priorities. And then how and where and when we will be providing some supports for students. The other piece is aligning and identifying those instructional materials. So you mentioned earlier, you know, we do have an adoption. So as we prioritize the standards, we're going to look for how we leverage, best leverage our existing adopted materials and where we need to make sure that we provide some supplemental support if it's not the, the best material for that particular set of priorities. Um, and so we're going to do that in alignment with that revised curriculum and pacing guide. So what we should see at the end of our journey would be those priority standards articulated in a sequence that is a curriculum pacing guide, that's also aligned with the instructional resources that would support that particular delivery or the learning for those particular standards and skills. Then the last piece is articulating with our partner districts. We cannot continue to do curriculum work in isolation. And so we do have to work with our, our partner districts. Happy to report that there is a commitment from our feeder districts to do some curriculum alignment. And so that does take time as well to be able to, to build there. We don't want to build in isolation without talking to our, our partner districts. So that's part of our plan moving forward is building in that work. With regard to assessment and data for teaching and learning, our intent is to develop and implement a robust system of assessment that includes formative and benchmark assessments. One of these pieces is the NWA, which is well on our way already in terms of we're in the second administration of that assessment, making that more of a culture and a routine is still to be set. We've only had two administrations. By no means have we made it part of our culture, but that is our work. But we're also having a conversation around how are we going to assess those priority standards? Where are we going to be assessing them? And how about the interims that will inform us for the CASP and other assessments? So we're not talking about just NWA. We're talking about bringing in other assessment pieces in, in terms of informing our, our classroom instruction and overall our learning system. Another piece of assessment and data is having those regular ongoing student feedback cycles and using our focus groups and survey data to really examine the student experience. What are the students saying? They can also be great at articulating what works for us and like going back to the data. We have some students that things are working for. We need to find out what's working for them. And we're only going to, we're not going to guess at what's working for them. We're going to ask them what is working for them. So part of our plan, consistent including and conducting these regular and ongoing feedback cycles with our students. Also for assessment, we're talking about articulating with our partner districts to gather that screener data. Uh, and you mentioned eighth grade and how do we do assessment there? So that is part of our conversation with our feeder districts. Do we test them while they're still at the feeder district? Do we test them when they arrive?
I can answer that. I'm going to push. I've given this a lot of thought. I'm going to push. I'm going to push and I'm going to see if my colleagues will support me. I want those eighth graders tested before they get to us, but that's only me speaking. So we'll get to that discussion so that we can give some marching orders.
And part of the conversation, I know Mr. McGinnis and I have been talking about that assessment piece.
I don't need the, I don't need the elementary district to answer that question for me. They're going to be our eighth graders, so I want to assess them. And I'm being very critical because I know we want them to get as much instruction in the eighth grade before we assess them, right? But when I'm having Qui tell me that some of the kids can't divide and some kids can't multiply, like I'm going to know that right away and so that we can clump those kids on the master schedule. For that, I don't need Mount View, El Monte City, Violindo, I don't need any of them to determine that for me. Uh, because I, I know I heard you say here, you know, the NWA, that's a norm reference test. I get that. But I'm glad to hear that we're going to have some benchmarks because that is checking the oil to see if you've done all this instruction, then has my kid learned the stuff? So I'm glad that we're going to come up with our own benchmarks or we're going to adopt a different type of test. Or we could even use, you know, when we create that benchmark, that could be, a benchmark is a teacher-created document to see if the, the kids learned what they taught. So we could even use that as like a final grade or a final grade in the semester or as a final grade. Uh, so I'm glad that we're talking about that too because again, NWA is a norm reference test. Okay, I want to be clear on that. The benchmark will tell teachers like, are your kids getting it or not? So I'm glad that we're distinguishing between that.
And, and to clarify with regard to how we're going to be gathering that data, part of the conversation too, and I know Mr. McGinnis and I had a, a really deep conversation earlier today around the purpose for assessing our eighth grade students, whether it's going to be for placement, whether it's going to be for providing supports. And that question becomes critically important for us in determining how we're going to assess and how we're going to use that data.
I know that. We, we can tell you what it's going to be for. It's not going to be for placement. Where do you prep, where do you place all eighth graders for math? Tell me where you place them.
The bulk will be at IM1.
You got it. So then the bulk is going to be in IM1.
Or how do we provide supports?
If you don't put them in IM1, where are you going to put them?
Some kids might be in IM2, but we might assign like a math lab if we decide.
But our problem is still IM1. So when you do the test of, if we use the NWA, because you know, I'll be honest, I'll be blunt. Was I happy that our district only went with IM1, IM2, IM3 assessment? No, I was not. You know why? Because I knew that when our kids took that test as freshmen, I already know the answer that they're low. You know that too. You know that and the superintendent does, that they're going to score low, okay? The majority of our kids have been scoring low. This is why this is such a big issue in our district. What I want to know is, where are their holes? If you guys made the decision to, to adopt Integrated Math 1, Integrated Math 2, Integrated Math 3 assessment, okay, we assessed it, the kids are low. We piloted one school, right? Mount View School, where we also did the Growth 6+ because we wanted to see where the holes were on those kids. That makes sense that we do that for our eighth graders so that when our teachers get their IM1 classes in August, when school starts, that that teacher already knows what are the power standards? Where are my eighth graders and how, how low are they? So that when whoever's creating the, the master schedule at that school, to make it a little bit easier, you can clump your kids with the deficits. Though, the test does that for you and you will know which kids are low in multiplication, which kids are, can't subtract or add or multiply or divide. The test will do that. So when you say, oh, we're having this discussion to determine what we're going to use the assessment for, yes, it's for placement. It's for placement, but in addition to that is, how are we going to remediate these kids that need the remediation? That's the question that we should be asking, is when are we going to do it? In a zero period? Are we going to do it after school? Because I had Mr. Qui here tell me, or you told me, we only have four years to teach these kids. Uh, we can't focus on every single standard. And so therefore that's why I am pressing so hard that we must have those standards identified before this year is over and we must test all of our incoming eighth graders so that we can give them the best education that we can in this district. I don't want them to wait one more year and not know how to subtract and add or, or divide. But the, the pressing question is, where do we do that? Where do we do that? I don't know. That's why, you know, you're the, you're the expert in educational services and we hired a math consultant for Harvard, you know, and, and Mr. McGinnis, you guys got to tell this board, where, where are we going to remediate those kids? But if we don't remediate them or help them, I get it that we can't remediate all, you know, all year. We need to expose them to grade level curriculum. But I am not okay with us not remediating those students. No blame game. I'm not going to blame El Monte City. I'm not going to blame the Mount View. I'm not going to blame Violindo. The data is the data. It is what it is. So let's make decisions based on that data. So when the assessment comes in, wherever they're at, then it is the challenge of the comprehensive schools to work the, to work the master schedule according to the kids we're getting. And that's just what needs to happen from the beginning of the year.
Um, thank you. And then the last piece to this component or this area is really identifying and implementing strategies to prepare and support our students for standardized testing. And how do we do that also for students that are not necessarily enrolled in a math class but are going to take that smarter balance assessment? So that's also part of our plan in identifying and implementing those strategies. The third component...
Really quick, I'm sorry. I'm going to jump in here. I've, I've been doing my homework. I have to tell you this. Off the top of your head, do you know how many kids we have in 11th grade in the El Monte Union High School District?
Not off the top of my head.
So one of the things that I want us to look at is, there is a lot of 11th graders that are not taking a math class. Because in our district, we just expect them to take math, Integrated Math 1, Integrated Math 2. And then when it gets to Integrative Math 3, we have all kinds of creations of these math programs that we have. We have one at Arroyo, what was that called?
Math Resident Reconnection and Auto Math Application.
But my point is this, Dr. Rivas, my point is this. We test 11th graders, right, for, for the mathematics.
Yes.
I want to know in the next memo, how many kids out of the total 11th graders that we have in the El Monte Union High School District, okay? Who took math their freshman year, their sophomore year, but they have no math class right now. But then we're going to test them on the, on the, on the...
11.
11th grade math, right, the CASP, right?
Yes.
Okay, that's a big problem. You know math is use it or lose it. So many of our kids. That's why our test scores, uh, you know, based on the NWA stuff that we have, can we make any predictions of how we're going to be doing in, 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 in the 11th grade math?
Yes.
And here's something that we need to look at in terms of a policy or the graduation requirement in this district. I do, I've done hundreds of A through G presentations, okay? You are supposed to take three years of math, four years are recommended. In order to meet... In order to meet what I call quinceañera, I always tell the parents in Latino culture, we love quinceañeras. You need 15 classes to meet the A through G requirements, right?
Yes.
Okay, our kids are already at a deficit because we're only allowing them or require them to do one year of math, two years of math. So all those kids that are not taking math, guess what, Dr. Rivas? They cannot apply to Cal State, they cannot apply to UC. That is a travesty in this district. So when we look at our graduation rates and it's like 87%, that's the area that we need to improve. But I want that number and I'm gonna harp on that number, McGinnis, Mr. McGinnis. How many 11th graders do we have in this district that have only taken two years of math and then they're not taking their third year of math? So right away, kids in the El Monte Union High School District are already at a deficit when trying to apply for college. Is that not the truth?
Yes, that's the truth. So we do have that number.
I wanna see those numbers.
I have it actually on my desk. We did pull that number up. But part of the, the target or the action with that is not just for the students who are not enrolled in the math class, but we do have some students that are enrolled in a fourth year or third year of math. That's not, that they're, they're potentially high achievers, but they may not have seen that content that's being assessed because they're in a different level of math. And so we're thinking about how do we make sure that we're also preparing those students who haven't seen that math in a while, right? And even though they're high achievers, they might be forgetting some concepts that were reviewed earlier and making those connections. So that was part of that action as well, as we're looking at how do we build strategies to support students testing in 11th grade.
So what was, what was that about that? Are you gonna test prep them? Are you going to?
That's what we're gonna design. We don't have the actual strategies yet, but that is part of our plan is to develop those strategies and identify when and how we do that. The piece around the instructional vision and evidence-based practices, what we're going to do is implement some research-based instructional strategies to increase student success. We've been doing some work with the instructional leadership to, to really come down to identifying an instructional vision for our district. And then once, we're at a point now that we have an instructional vision, the next part of our work is identifying three evidence-based practices that we can all commit across the district to implementing to improve instruction and the, not instruction, but to improve the impact on student learning. And so what we're gonna be doing is implementing those instructional strategies to help our students be more successful in the class. Coupled with that, we need to provide that relevant professional development experiences for our teachers to support that best first instruction and how do they provide the interventions to support our student. And so that professional learning will also develop our teacher capacity. And there were also a prioritizing in class supports with tutors to provide just-in-time assistance with learning and that's part of our long-term action in terms of supporting students within the math classrooms. Our final piece is around that culture piece. And when we're talking about culture, we're talking about how we do business, how we engage as educators. And part of this is really developing an effective collaboration practices. And so there are ways in which we can collaborate or we can meet and how do we collaborate effectively? And that's gonna be ongoing work, not just meeting for the sake of meeting, but really using student achievement growth data to make decisions together and partnership learning from one another. The other piece is really facilitating that learning around the new math framework to support, support future implementation. And then continuing to work with our partner districts and identifying common learning opportunities, establishing some of that common language and that shared understanding. So as, as we're talking about instructional practices coupled with our curriculum, there's more of a seamless program for our students as they're coming from our partner districts. And then the last piece of this culture of learning is gonna be informed by the needs assessment that Ms. Sines is doing for us. That is gonna inform the way in which we build our systems and our structures to support an effective overall math program for, for all of our students. So those are the big pieces of our plan. So what's next? We need to fine tune that, those actions. We are gonna be gathering some feedback from our content specialists, also from our site administrators, and then also fine tuning it through what comes from the needs assessment. So that work that Ms. Sines is doing is to inform us in fine tuning and tightening it up. She has a, I tell her, I told her the other day, is a critical friend's lens of like, hey, here's what you're missing, here's what's not making sense and, you know, one of the things she said is like, your plan has too many actions here, you're all gonna carry them out at the same time. Are you gonna have the capacity to do that and to do that effectively? So she brings in a critical lens and also asking us some questions to help us reflect and to think through this plan that we are trying to finalize and put forth. So with that, I'm gonna pass it over to the needs assessment because that was the last piece we landed on, the needs assessment. And really I'll let Ms. Sines describe some of the work that she's been doing, but more importantly is some of the work that she's intending on, on doing. I also do wanna just share that we don't have Ms. Sines with us on a daily basis. We do have her on some days, she is just working with other districts and it has other commitments as well. So we don't have her on a daily basis, so we try to maximize our time with her and really making sure that our work together is fruitful. So with that, I'll pass it on to her.
Really quick, before you start, welcome, welcome, Ms. Catalina Sines. I know you kind of said it, I know the needs assessment is not finished yet, but what high schools have you visited during this needs assessment? What high schools have you been at?
I've not been to any of the high schools, not yet.
Okay, so you have not been into any of our classrooms in this school district?
No, we're scheduling to do that end of February and March.
Okay. Do you have experience with NWA and the assessment that we have in our school district?
I do.
Have you been a part of any of the trainings that we've had in the school district with El Monte Union High School District?
Not yet.
Okay, all right. Please continue, welcome, welcome. We're glad to have you.
Thank you, Board President and Board members. Thank you. I wanted to just share a little bit about who I am, but I wanna make sure that I also optimize the time for you to ask questions. And so I here have a code where you could just kinda look at my resume and kinda see a little bit of snapshot of who I am and, and my passion for math. But I, my organization or my little company here, Prime Rational Learning, is really focused on being brave and denormalizing low achievement and really looking into working with systems. And so really not systems thinking, but I call it more systems rethinking because, and I focus really on four areas. One is making sure that you as board members, we as educators, consultant, the leaders in the district, the students who are really the protagonists of this whole story and their parents are able to see, are they learning? That's the first question that every parent, every child should really be asking, at what pace and who is proficient? Making sure that they're learning at the pace that they need to learn. So I focus a lot on that, not on teaching, but I focus on learning, both from the adults and the students. A lot of the things I also think with systems rethinking is really thinking about the leading behaviors and focusing on that to the outcomes. A lot of the times as districts, we focus on positive outcomes without really identifying and tracking the leading behaviors that produce that outcome. And the reason that I have focused my, a lot of my life work since 1999, when I started this work, doing that, because I wanna make sure that whatever I do lasts. And a lot of the times, and I know the passion that's here to focus on math, so the right thing for me morally is to make sure that when all of us are gone, the achievement continues, not that there's a change in, in the leadership and then we just see everything going back the way it was. So having a continuous improvement system is something that is really important everywhere I've gone. So I will be evaluating like, what is your current improvement system? And what are the resources the students are having, the resources, how we're setting the teachers, the students, the leadership, everyone for success to do this work? And that is again, talking about the conditions of adult and student learning. I think we need to make sure that the adults are learning, in my experience, as much as the students or more. So I, when thinking about optimizing my role as a consultant, I really look at building capacity is really my main role. And that could be, look at different things. I have, I can do professional development, I do coaching, I do a lot of things, but I start always with the leaders and the leadership because they're setting the tone. And often, especially in a consultant role, when I'm not able to be in every school, the best thing I can do is build a capacity for the leaders to really promote the work. So sometimes I'm in the front of the room like I'm with you, sometimes I'm in the back and I'm coaching and really having the leaders take a lot of that work, like your TOSA, right? I will be working with your TOSA to do some of this work so they could, that TOSA can continue this work, whether I'm here or not. And again, building to last, making sure that the work that you're doing, that you are also leaving a legacy of denormalizing math achievement. It's, it's very easy to say, it's like, it's a problem of everybody, the whole country's having the problem. The kids know that, you know, kids are either math people or they're not math people. And so really pushing for that change is something that, you know, took a long time to get there and I'm hoping it's not gonna take us that long to get out, but it's gonna take some time. And being the courageous second pair of eyes, we've had, I said the twitching because we had a lot of very intense courageous conversations around equity. And we are not shying away from the hard conversations about what we need to do, but that is first, we need to work with all the people that are holding the system together so when the movements are made, they are still holding the system together even when there's the pushback. Because the one thing I can tell you in all this work, if you really wanna increase achievement and make a change, resistance is the first thing you prepare for and you work on. And so again, everything in the name, of course, of reclaiming educational equity. So partners in equity is really what I am to the district, then I will be to the teachers and I will be to the students and I will be to your parents. So thinking about the needs assessment, there were three pieces here, the comprehensive analysis of math achievement, really looking at data from the demographic piece, the grades, the assessment. I started with NWA because it was just so like off the press. It was right there when I first started coming to see it. And then now I'm moving into the evaluation of the systems. So you see, I'm kind of in this first phase still and moving into really looking at focus groups, learning about your curriculum. So let me just give you a little bit more context of like something that I found, there's a lot of good things that we get to discover with an assessment like the MAP. There's a lot of classes where the growth percentile, the growth that was happening in your classes, students were, learnings were accelerated. They were not still proficient because they were coming so behind, but there's a lot of, sometimes those teachers never get to see that their hard work is actually paying off. And there was a lot of good evidence of good places we can start looking at because there are teachers here that are knocking it out of the park and accelerating learning. We wanna leverage those pieces before we make any action steps so we know how we're gonna bring the gifts and the talent that you already have. And again, make sure the, the change lasts. So again, very, great to see a lot of things that are, you do have expertise and good things happening in your, in your district that you can leverage. I think as board members and as leaders and as students and as parents, when you have an assessment like MAP, you wanna make sure that everybody understands the RIT scores and all the metrics that are there. So that every time that we, somebody comes in and gives you results, you're asking the key questions. Are the students learning, period? They should, everybody should. Everybody should grow from the fall to the winter, from the winter to the spring. Fall to spring. Are they growing at a pace that is at least typical? One year worth of learning, which is what we, you know, commit to as a school. And then again, are they accelerating their learning? Are they growing more than one year of typical growth? Because that's what we gotta do, we wanna increase achievement and we wanna get them to be proficient. So percentile rank is something you're gonna see, that's just like where they compare to other kids in the nation in the norm test for, and that's not comparing them to kids like them, that's just like where are they ranking compared to other kids in their grade or their class that they're taking? That's something to look at. The percentile ranks that typically for your 11th graders right now in preliminary link studies, when you said, can you project? Yes, we can project. And right now it's about, if you look at a 72, 73 percentile rank, that's typically the student that's gonna be proficient. Those studies are barely coming in, but you know, you can, you, we can predict. And then there's the conditional growth percentile. I always think about this one, like when the, you go to the doctor and they're, you know, the kids get measured their heights, but then the doctor gives you the growth chart. And in the growth chart, they tell you whether your child is like, you know, growing at a typical rate or not growing fast enough. That's kinda like the growth percentile. So again, back to Dr. Rivas and what she was, you know, highlighting, that growth percentile rate cannot be 50, 50 is one year worth of learning. So if you're a math one student coming in two grade levels behind, you're still gonna be two grade levels behind, but you grow one year. So at least you didn't get further, we didn't create gaps. But we really need growth percentages that are higher than 50. And you have some of that happening in your district, we just need to consistently move everyone towards that. So a little bit of the work in December, I met with district leaders and school leaders. We presented the needs assessment. On January 31st, I joined West Ad Training here with the school leaders and I got to see a little bit of the work around the instructional core. That's really important for me to see. Again, leveraging what's already here is gonna be better. Whatever movements you make, when you leverage what you already have, it's gonna be, it's gonna stick more. I did participate in the KELS and I think it's KELS meeting, I apologize for that, to that group. And I love the conversations, again, various, really great conversations about math achievement. That's when I began also the triangulation, really focusing on MAP. Then again, I came, this is where we were able to get this data. This data in terms of like the whole district is not available on MAP, but I do have, I have been working with MAP assessment for a very long time. So I do think that I am able to provide you with the data to answer the three questions. Is there learning happening, right? Is everyone learning? Are we seeing progress? How much progress? And is it enough progress to reach achievement? And so then, you know, I did, I wanted to make sure for me to be able to give an opportunity to the leaders to ask question before the data was being shared. And so they got to see their own school data as well. There was celebrations of identifying teachers that, you know, really we should look into because they were accelerating learning. And one of the recommendations I would love to make is that we tell our teachers that they need to be acknowledged. This is work that again, they're not, we're not gonna see level threes right now in the ninth grade, but the teachers that are accelerating learning, they, we need to know who they are. And I wanna suggest that, you know, I wanna, you know, propose that all the teachers know that in the spring, if the teachers are making great growth, that we should identify them and celebrate them or acknowledge them somehow. Because those are things that are usually, hardworking teachers that don't always get to see the fruit of their labor in this way. And of course, I'm now starting to look at your systems, thinking about your curriculum, thinking about your, like, what is this learning experience for our teachers? One of the things that I noticed, for example, you start preparing the learning experience for teachers in the fall. So something that I would wanna propose is like now, as you're preparing for the next fall, for the next year, this is where you leverage someone like me to put me in front of the teachers after obviously I finished the needs assessment, once we prioritize and looked at what, you know, what we wanna, our strategic moves. But I think part of the, the challenge that we have, and it's not stopping us, because one of the things that we talked about is me as part of my role as a consultant is building capacity. So that means I can train our TOSA, I can train a team of people to make sure that the focus groups are being led the same way. But I'm definitely gonna be in there and I think I propose that I, you leverage, having, being in your schedule for next year, once we have that strategic plan. Then of course, you know, today I'm here, but on the 28th, I am meeting with your content specialist because the conversation around the prioritization of the standards is going to start. And then looking into, starting February 29th with the focus groups. I know you had some questions with the focus groups, do you wanna ask now?
I don't have questions with the focus groups. I'm glad we're gonna talk to the kids and hear it directly from the kids' mouths. What I wanna know is, when will you be done with your assessment? I mean, I thought that today, we, and again, don't take this personal, same thing for Dr. Rivas. We have to have these compelling conversations and they can't be behind the scenes, it's okay if the public knows. I could care less about neighboring school district that watch our board members, that watch our board meetings. I don't care. I once told the superintendent, the superintendent told me, hey, math is low across the district. I said, I don't care. I don't have any power over the neighboring school districts. I only have power here with our district, with our collaborative board, to make decisions to try to, you know, make adjustments to history with our initiatives. So what I wanna know is, when are you gonna be done? I thought you should already be done by now. I thought today, that's what we were gonna be getting so that we could then make, you you know, informed decisions or data-driven decisions for next steps. Because you've already heard me what I said about identifying power standards. You've already said what I've said about eighth grade assessment. You know, I'm glad that we have the data. I'm dying to know why that 16% did really well from our lowest achiever kids. But I'm really dying to know what the heck happened with our highest achieving kids being 40%, being stagnant, and then not even stagnant, regressing. So I'm dying to find out, you know, when your needs assessment is going to be done. Do I have a problem with you not having gone to our schools? Yes. But again, you're the expert. You're the, you're the, you know, Stanford, not Stanford.
Harvard.
Harvard graduate. So I mean, you're way more knowledgeable than me. And so I will listen, but when are you going to be done? I know I hear all this stuff, but when are you going to be done?
Right. So I think one of the things that I want to, for sure with the data piece, I think we're getting done, you know, by this month. Because I don't think the data, you know, to avoid analysis paralysis, we're done. The data's already telling us enough. I think the focus groups, the challenge is getting into the classroom with my schedule. So the goal is, I think we had talked about spring, 2000, really ideally in the spring for sure, no later than the spring to be done. But I do recommend that if you are having another board meeting and you want a quick report of like the progress that has been made, then invite me to your next board meeting and then I can share like even what we've learned so far from the focus groups.
Yeah.
So that at least you know. But I do, I do want to also acknowledge that the scheduling on my part has been limited. And usually, first comes first served, you know. And I, and I do, I do believe you asked me a question like, what value do I bring? I bring the value of knowing how to work with resistance and making change stick longer. And so I, you know, you may seem a little slow right now, but it's like, you know, slow to go fast, but we're not, I have an urgency, right? I don't work, I want to make sure that I'm also producing value and I will, I check up on that. So I don't, I care about our community and I care about those results not to be what they are. This is what I've made my life work be about. So I do have an urgency, but I also have an urgency for things to stick. And so I do want to say that, acknowledge your urgency, but I also want you to know my urgency in making sure that we're doing this work in a way that's setting everyone for success, including your legacy in this work. So, you know, a couple of things that is coming right now is really, my recommendation is that we're also moving into this community involvement. And that's where we are, we're going to, and when I say challenge, it's not that we're not, we're going to overcome the challenge because we've overcome some challenges even, you know, when we talked about scheduling myself and how we're going to do it when even I'm not there. So I think the engagement of the parents and the students and the teachers hearing from those stakeholders is going to be also as important as hearing from the students. And so even if I'm not able to fit in myself into the conversation and professional development because it would be random for me to do that right now, I'm just going to meet the content specialist. Once we figure that strategically, one way you can optimize me is having me be in front of parents. Like I can do parent workshops, I can do student workshops around equity and mathematics. And they should know why they should care about the MAP assessment and the implications it has. So that, that is an, that's an area of opportunity there.
Can I stop you just one second? The upcoming, you know, you're talking about involvement, the parent involvement, you know, you gave a seminar. So the upcoming Parent Involvement Academy is going to be on the first March. Dr. Zuniga, is it possible that you can put her in the parent involvement session so she can motivate the parents, see how important math is? Because you know, when I had a talk with the superintendent, Mountview, he knows because he tried to, he was a principal and he tried to get his student to be, get an internship with the project labor agreement because math score is too low. And we know that, they cannot get a job as interns because the math score is too low because the trade require the math calculation. So the upcoming Parent Involvement Academy is on March 1st. So can you squeeze her in and have her motivate with her credential as a Harvard graduate and math consultant? Parent will listen to her and she fluent in both Spanish and English so she can get the message across.
And then again, I would just check what time because this is, this is a great example of the challenges that we're having, that March 1st, I have a professional development at a school, but if it's like in an afternoon, then we can make it happen. If it's not March 1st, can I be in the next one?
Usually, it's usually a morning session through early afternoon.
Yeah, so I do have a professional development.
I know it's short notice and I'm sure that the program has already been set, Dr. Zuniga, for that, but.
We could do internal ones though.
And I do like that because you know, one of the things that we do need to work on in this district is to see our parents as partners. I know that sometimes, and I'm guilty of that, I'm not going to lie, sometimes a lot of our families have like a sixth grade, fourth grade education. So we start thinking like, oh, well, they can't be a partner in education with me. But Dr. Zuniga has seen that some of these same parents that come to the, we have something called SUPER PAC, the Superintendent Parent Advisory Committee. And they come and they have some amazing things that they share despite the fact that they don't have degrees like we do. But until we in this district see our parents as equal partners in education and not as, you know, oh, just parents without an education, until we change that mindset that, you know, a lot of people in this district have, you know what I mean? I would love to do a call to action for you to come in to inform the parents of what their rights are, what their rights are as parents, what their rights are is in terms of mathematics and the program that we provide. And why do I say that? You know, and I truly have done a lot of research in this area. When I looked at the book, I'm not sure if you're familiar with this website, like they've got to know, but I went onto a website called Ed.
Ed Report.
Edreport.org. And I looked up, you can look up all of the math books to see in terms of curriculum. In our LCAP, we always say that as a district, we shall provide quality materials with quality instruction in order to close the achievement gap in El Monte Union High School District or all the districts in the, in the state of California. It's in the LCAP, right? But when I look at the Hooten, Mifflin, Heart Court book, it says that that curriculum, and there was teachers that were on a, they were on a, on a team, because I asked Dr. Rivas, give me the list based on the records that you have from past history and kind of compile a list as best you can of when we had an adoption, you know, what teachers were on it, what did we adopt? The book that we have, when I went onto that website, it says that it does not meet expectations. And so a book that does not meet expectations and our instruction that is not, you know, following any pattern, everybody's just marching to their own, to their own beat, that's extremely concerning, you know what I mean? And it's like, I know we can't jump into doing another adoption, we got to do what we can, we're stuck with the book. So what kinds of things can we make, you know, A-plus adjustments to in our initiative, math adjustments, right? What adjustments can we make? I was shocked to see that the Hooten, Mifflin, Heart Court, are you familiar with that website or is that not something that you know?
Yeah, that is the, I'm familiar.
So when I looked in there and Mr. Qui showed me, and it says, our book does not meet expectations. So already in our LCAP, we're, in a way, it's kind of a, it's a lie. We're not providing quality materials when it comes to that, but we're stuck with the book. So we must tweak those other things where you're helping us with that. And so that was just a shocker to me, I have to tell you, when I looked on there and it says red, you know, does not meet expectations or, I even took a picture of it, you know, that, that to me is just like mind boggling.
And I think, you know, this is where.
The heck out.
Yeah, you asked about like the value that I can bring, I can work with, you know, this is part of the conversation we had already had with Artosa, is in really working together to provide, like really looking in that curriculum and really making sure that we're ready with resources that augment to that curriculum so that, that we are bridging the gap on the curriculum. But I can also say, this is also another reason why when we do the work around the prioritization of standards, creating the benchmarks, we need to make sure we use it as a learning opportunity and learning experience for teachers. Because they need to get to know the standards better and they need to know how to identify themselves good curriculum if they're going to be looking elsewhere for the gaps or they want to be able to see if they can use something else that they've seen in the National Council Teachers of Mathematics. So there are places where they can reach and know that they have good quality supplemental resources that are going to, you know, help their kids. The one thing that I wanted to show you here, and I know I mentioned this in my proposal, is that I'm working with the inside out. And because again, I came in, you know, really doing the work in January, a little bit late, we wanted to identify a pilot, and we may, we're still trying this, we're still looking for someone that wants to pilot a goal-setting process for this winter, using the winter MAP data. But part of the, the continuous growth plan and/or improvement process needs to include everyone creating action plan or committing to change. So you just had the winter assessments, right? And so I heard in the conversation with principals, they were already thinking of things they wanted to change next year to address the results that they got. And that's the right mentality that we want to have. Now we want to make sure that the students are looking at the results and the parents understand what it means and they're also making a commitment to their change. And then the teachers are looking at their data and they're making a commitment to the change. I do believe that in the work that I've done in the years, having all the stakeholders involving those commitments and making change and monitoring the things that are working or not, even when they don't work, the ability for teachers to try something else is important. And that's part of like where I'm assessing, like where can we start that? I recommend that we, we definitely start next year implementing, you know, some in the, some of the classrooms. So those are the conversations that we're having. So when, you said, when am I going to be done with the needs assessment? I want to make sure I do a good job. I think that's what you deserve, quality work coming out of the recommendations I'm going to make, concrete. So in March, if you have a meeting, I would love to join you and share my progress. But definitely we want to make sure that by the time the students are taking the next NWA, I have completed this process.
On March 6th, when you say March, what, what do you mean?
Well, it'll be March 6th. Well, we can share maybe like the first pilot school and how that went. It doesn't have to, I don't recommend it to be that long. I recommend it to be short. This is a longer one because you just met me.
Right. So Dr. Zuniga, can you please add that? Would my colleagues be okay with her coming on March 6th?
I'm unhappy to have her here.
Okay. Mr. Salsito?
Yeah, Professor Stellatorzogut.
Mr. Breones?
Unless you want to do April and have more comprehensive report.
No, we agreed March.
March?
We just agreed March.
And it should be really short. It's just at least telling you like how, I'm going to tell you how amazing your kids are, I'm sure.
It's okay if it's not short. I just, I want to know what did you find out our needs were? Because when I say that, okay, if we just hired a teacher on special assignment, what comes out of your mouth is going to be the priority for our teacher on special assignment. Because, you know, I just feel like there's been a lot of like, I always call it weedy, weedy pocaccion, a lot of like talk, talk, talk without any action. I'm going to be honest, as board president, I speak for myself, that's how I've been feeling. And I get it that this is long-term work, but there's some stuff that I think we can speed up and I want to kind of push the urgency in some of these things that need to happen faster than what I'm seeing. And, and yes, I did ask you directly to you, you know, what is the added value that we have with you coming here? And I've liked what I've heard. You want to empower the parents, I've heard that. You want to do focus groups. You both agree that focus groups are good because again, I am dying to find out that 16%, you know, of the low achieving kids, what, what we do to replicate some of that. But I'm also dying to find out what the heck happened with those high achieving kids that are stagnant. That to me is, is the million dollar question right now because we better have answers for that because otherwise it's going to repeat itself again and, and we don't want that. So yeah, please continue.
No, I think, I'm just going to wait for questions, for further questions that you have. I think I've said a lot already.
Sure. But board member Florencio Breones, jump in with all your questions. I know that I have interrupted during the whole presentation and I've asked questions and I still have more, so I'll give everybody whatever time they need. Mr. Florencio Breones?
Thank you, Ms. Sines, for being here tonight. And thank you, Dr. Rivas, for your presentation as well. First question, I think I know the answer, but I just want to be absolutely clear. When you're discussing the model classrooms and identifying, you said two to three classrooms to pilot goal-setting and action planning inquiry process, you mean two, three classes, classrooms throughout the district or per site?
Throughout the district, at least one, yeah. And the idea is that once you have that model, we would have transparency around the resources that are used and make the work of the goal-setting public so that other people can see what we're doing.
So then, okay, thank you, I appreciate that, that answer. The other question that I had is, this is something that's kind of been weighing on me because of the conversation that we've been having as a board here on the DIAS about, you know, having, everything being common across the board. We have five comprehensive high schools and everything needs to be the same across the board, same pacing plan, same pedagogy, same instruction, same everything. And that's just not sitting well with me primarily because we have four feeder school districts. The instructional material and the instructional practices from each of those districts is completely different. Yes, there are standards that they all have to meet, but the way they approach them are all different. And those four districts all feed into five different schools. So you will have, and even within those districts, you may have one school, one middle school that, you know, adopted, you know, one set of standards or focuses on one area. You see what I'm getting at? So your findings, I'm going to assume are going to, are going to come back to us and you're going to say, you know, we need to provide, we need to identify these standards, these priority standards, but you're not going to be able to, to teach to those standards the same way identically across all the campuses. I mean, we do that already through differentiated instruction because that's a need that we need to meet for our students. So my question to you is, hearing from the board about everything needs to be common across the board, which is one-size-fits-all approach is definitely not going to work. It's not something that I will support. What would your proposal then be when the, your, your findings show that we can't have, obviously we can have common assessment to benchmark and, you know, performative assessments as well. But when it comes to instruction to meet the goals that you've set, that you've identified, what's, this might be a little bit premature, but what's your recommendation going to be when it's going to be clear that we can't do the same thing in every single classroom at all five of the comprehensive high schools?
And I'll, and I'll answer it with this even further, that you can't do the same thing in period one and period two when the needs of period one and period two are not the same.
Thank you.
But every child has the right to high-quality curriculum and plan. And so of course, like what we, I usually see, and I don't know because I haven't been in your schools yet, right? And that's part of the thing I'm going to see is that we often see in the schools that have sometimes more privilege or different socioeconomic, where they somehow have access to higher quality, more opportunities that are not in the other districts. And so the idea is to make sure that we are all starting in an even playing field, but that is not limiting, right? That could be the high expectation is not the low expectation for everybody. And from there, everybody gets to grow and flourish. So having priority standards means that everyone's committing to a minimum of these expectations. It doesn't mean that if a, if a class is ready to move on with me and advance, then they advance. And intervention and differentiation is not just for the low achieving students, it's ensuring that all your kids' needs are being met at all levels. So I think what the goal would be from my experience is making sure that everyone has equitable access to this and allow the teachers to collaborate too as well, right? Because when you have one curriculum in one place and another curriculum, and we want to come together and really build those communities of practice, you can't. And so it's just giving us a common language and common tools, but you, it should not be limiting at all.
And I appreciate you, you, and I'll let Dr. Rivas respond really quickly after I make this comment, or sorry, I'll respond very quickly before you respond as well. I appreciate you talking about equity because equity is not the same as equality. Because if we have students that show, you know, certain deficiency, we're going to provide them additional resources, but we don't necessarily have to provide them the same resource, those same resources to another student who doesn't have that same deficiency. You know, obviously, like you said, and I appreciate this, we want to start on, at the same level and even playing field. But once we start to identify or have identified, you know, those deficiencies, then that's when we start differentiating and adding additional resources. And I appreciate that because as I said, a one-size-fits-all approach doesn't work. And I'm really glad that you touched upon even the differences, not just between campuses, but also between individual class periods. And I've, I've seen that firsthand where you literally have teachers who will tell you, you know, my students who are here first or second period are great because they're fresh and they're the first thing, you know, of the day. But the students that are in sixth or seventh period, you know, they have such a difficult time because it's the end of the day, they're, they're burnt out, their, their brains are done for the day, you know, so they have to utilize different strategies. So I do appreciate you sharing that and I look forward to hearing what strategies you're going to be implementing or recommending for implementation. And then I have another question, Dr. Rivas, I think you want to follow up.
Yeah, I just wanted to add to what Ms. Sines shared and I really wanted to clarify, there's always a common misconception when we talk about common priority standards, common assessments, common evidence-based practices, that we're going to be teaching in lockstep and that everything's going to look the same. And that's not really the reality. The, really the onus of having common work is so that we can establish some equitable expectations across the board, also to make sure that we're all very laser-focused and
Also to make sure that we're all very laser focused and clear about what matters and what we're going to collaborate around and what we're going to intervene around. And so those evidence-based practices are intended to be used for teachers to leverage when the need arises. In other words, I have three evidence-based practices in my pocket. I, as a teacher, know when to use them, how to use them when the appropriate situation arises and how to best utilize that strategy, that practice with the students I have in front of me. One of that is using the data that we're gathering to inform how and when to use those things. So we've heard, I think oftentimes we talk about common, this idea that it's lockstep and it really, really isn't. There's still a lot of room for creativity with the teachers.
Flexibility.
Flexibility to use it, being able to respond to students. But we do need to have common anchors to have collaboration, to make sure that we're having equitable expectations for students across the board. And the achievement can be measured across the board so that we're not having different expectations based on socioeconomic status or access to, uh, to different teachers or different curriculum. So um, yes, it, it, I could see how that could be a concern, but I want to assure you that that's not our intent ever to be lockstep. We do want to have flexibility, but we want to use things that are working and we want to be focused about that.
Absolutely. My final question regarding the, the data that you, that you presented about the, the student uh, achievement. Um, one question that I had, the students that, that have shown some level of regression, do you have a breakdown of, you know, what, um, what amount, I guess, or they may have regressed um, within that regression group? Because I'm really curious, you know, you have very high achieving students who, you know, a smaller percentage, obviously, uh, either showed um, a, a small amount of, of achievement or growth, but they, but there may have also been some regression. Do you have a breakdown of how much that change was? Whether it was positive but very small or in fact negative?
So the red part of the pie was negative.
Right, but do you have a breakdown of like how much each?
How many like RIT score points? So that was based on a RIT score. I don't have the breakdown in front of me, but maybe that's something that I can provide more concretely in the next time. But I do believe when I was looking at the data, and actually another piece of data just came into my mind thinking about that data, it was between one to three points. But in some cases, weird cases, and I mostly saw them as outlier data. Some of the kids were like negative 20 points. But I can tell you what I also did see, a lot of rapid guessing on the test. So I was able to extract that data as well, which meant to me like we still needed some work to do around the community, really understanding why they're taking this assessment, including the teachers, really knowing like there's a lot that we, they're going to be, be able to be seen in a way that they haven't been with an assessment like this. And I don't think people really know that yet. And so there's an opportunity to really making sure that everyone across from the student, from the parent, understand the value that this assessment is going to give them. Um, so the data is, I would say, I would consider this data as your baseline. It should never go as low as this, right? And I think, uh, but then I, I'm happy to share with you that breakdown.
Thank you. And my last thing, not a question, but this is just a comment. I'm really glad that you touched on, you know, the, the culture of learning. And you talked about it right now about imparting the importance of understanding to, to parents and other community members or stakeholders, the importance of, of the testing, importance of, um, you know, math instruction. And I think that's a really larger conversation that we should be having, not just here on the DIAS as trustees, but with members of the community, you know, knowing, having grown up here, continued to live here and, you know, for a significant period of my life, worked here and within this district, meeting with parents, knowing how the culture within the community doesn't always prioritize education. And for that matter, sometimes I can't fault individuals for that lack of priority because there's also sometimes a lack of understanding. You know, our community is primarily immigrant, primarily non-English, you know, monolingual speakers. Um, 70% of our community members don't have more than a high school education. And so education may not necessarily be a priority for them because what's a priority is putting food on the table and keeping a roof over their heads. So go straight into the workforce. I've lived that. And so it's, it's very much about a culture change within our community. The three cities that we primarily represent and then the surrounding communities that make up our district, helping individuals and families and students understand, as you said, as you said, why this is so important. Because otherwise, it's just some abstract thought that they can't make that connection with. And I think having ha- having some cultural sensitivity uh, in, in our conversations and, uh, you know, in our messaging to families will definitely help bring about that, that systems change that we're looking for. Um, you know, I, I get the sense of urgency from my colleagues on the board and I totally understand it and I'm there as well. Um, but I also understand that we need to identify where we're at. We need to identify the gaps. We need to identify strengths and then put together a plan, as you said, so that the day that none of us are here, it still continues moving forward, that things don't just dissipate because the five of us are no longer here. You know, or that because the principal is no longer the head of that school or a math department chair is no longer there, or a toast is no longer there, that we put in systems into place that are long-term and impactful. Thank you for your presentation tonight. I look forward to the follow-up next month. Um, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, uh, board member, Mr. Florencio Breones. You know, I love this compelling conversation. Mr. Breones and I never agree on anything, but on this, I agree with everything he's saying. We're on the same page. He gets the urgency. And you know, as he was talking about the definition of, uh, of, uh, equality and equity, those of us, you know, and I'm sure you've seen it too, Mr. Breones, of the little kids watching the baseball game. Are you familiar with that? What they're talking about is when we're trying to make everything common with the common assessment, we're trying to make sure that we're giving everybody the right box so that we're all seeing the same thing. You know what I mean? And, and, but I get his concern that, no, we don't want to step lock uh, because a lot of times we're always concerned about the intervention part of, of bringing the low kids up to that level to be seeing the game. But we're also, we also have some Asian students that are doing really well in math, but that doesn't mean that they have to stay there. They can advance uh, at a much higher level because they're also competing against, you know, kids from other districts when they apply for college. So that, that was a valid, the valid question that he had. And I also agree with him that yes, we do need to empower our parents and, you know, empower them and let them know that they are equal partners with us. I've learned the power of that with Dr. Zuniga in SuperPAC. And you know that our parents have said that to your face, Dr. Zuniga. Before, when we would come to these meetings, we would just talk, 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 and then nothing would get done and then that would really discourage us from coming. They've said that to you. And I've said, yeah, that's what I call mucho weedy, weedy poc action. You know, a lot of talk and no action. The parents have told you and me to our faces, like, we feel like when we come to these meetings, that Dr. Zuniga listens to us and then he goes and he finds the money or he, he does the things that we're asking him to do or the things that we're concerned about. He comes back and he reports to us, you know? And that, that is powerful and that speaks to what you're saying and to what Mr. Breones is saying. Yes, you know, 70% of our population, you know, in, in, in that area of Mountain View is immigrants and they're in the trailer parks and they're all that. But that does not mean that they should not have access to an equitable, uh, you know, education and a chance of going to. And just like he, he has that background, I have that background too. And so when I sit here, I, every single one of us takes our job very seriously as immigrant. He's an immigrant, I'm an immigrant, she's an immigrant. Um, I believe Mr. Breones was born here, but his family is immigrants and he understands that, 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 that lifestyle. And I, and I want to put something on the table that this is a fallacy. Um, when you look at, at the think tanks, I'm an English language learner. I can never say that word, word, think tanks? You know, like the Thomas Rivera Policy Institute? You know, they've done studies on what is the number one thing that Latino families care about. A lot of people think it's immigration, you know, deportation. It is not. A lot of people think it's like a bunch of other stuff. It isn't. It's just like everybody else, their number one worry is job. So a lot of our families worry, am I going to have a roof over my head or do I worry about education? Yeah, I'm going to worry about putting roof over my head and feeding my kids. That's what his dad did, that's what my dad did, that's what all of our families did. But immigration is not the top thing for Latino families. You know, number two is education for Latino families. So when I hear things like, oh, Latino families don't care about education. Only the Chinese families care about education. I've heard teachers make comments like that. I've seen teachers act on that and they believe that their Asian kids are super smart and then their Latino kids are not. Um, it, it's all attitude and perception and how we approach it and the support that we give them and, and how we treat them, you know? We've had kids tell us to our face like, yeah, I don't have a relationship with my teacher. And if I don't have a good relationship with my teacher, I could care less what subject she's teaching, which means, makes common sense. If you feel that you're in an environment that, you know, if you already feel like you're not good at math and then you feel like your teacher doesn't like you, well, then it's like a double whammy. So yes, it's a, it's a call to action to our teachers that let's build those positive relationships with their kids. Because kids don't care how much you know until they know how much you care. And we all know that if you've been in education. But I'm, I'm glad with everything that Mr. Breones shared, I agree with him 110%. And yeah, I'm glad that he asked that question, like, are we going to limit these kids and all be step lock? And if there's kids that need to move on? No, differentiate the instruction. Give everybody what they need and fulfill and meet their needs. Professor Stella Torres de Segres.
I have a question, uh, Dr. Rivas. You said that you will start testing or talking with the students who come from the eighth grade, the eighth graders from our four districts, our four feeder, two districts, before they come to, uh, to our high school? Do you talk to them, to the students and to the parents?
So our counselors do visit the, uh, middle schools and our students did visit, uh, the schools we had an eighth grade showcase day. So our kids did make, um, contact with our staff and our staff then visits them, um, later. So we do also have, uh, parent information meetings for our incoming parents.
Yes, and this is, this is the part that I think that is very important, the participation of the parents. Because when you talk with the parents and let them know what is the, the way that the students are studying math? What is the situation? You need to know the situation of the math that they have. But only when they are in the eighth grade? Or is it possible to know how it was when they were in the seventh grade? That they have to be prepared to go into high school?
That's a, a great conversation. That's something that in our collaboration, um, I know I've had several meetings with our assistant soup's uh, in our partner districts and, um, and so part of our conversation is how do we then trickle down that conversation? So we're starting to meet at the eighth and ninth grade and having a conversation there. But what we're hoping is going to happen is we're going to feed upward and downwards. But we're just starting our collaboration. So there's still a lot of, uh, work and planning to do around those pieces. But yeah, that's, that's a great question and something that I think they'll be, um, willing to work with us on.
Because this is hit the point that we can have the parents who can get, we have to get aware the parents, the situation in math that our students are. Uh, yes, I know that every, every, all the students, everybody has problems with math. But that's not the solution to know. To know is, is the knowledge of that, the problem is there. And if you're not part of the mo- of the problem, you are part of the solution. And part of the solution for the problem for our students are the parents. I know, I understand very well the situation, the economical situation, all these things that, uh, Mr. Breones and Mr. Padilla said is very important. I saw that in many parents. But when you talk with the parents and you plan the, the seat that they can help their students, they can talk to them about how they are doing in math. And do you have a plan of helping them and guiding into way to high school?
So part of the plan that, uh, we were, uh, sharing today has multiple points of articulation with our, uh, feeder districts. And so that there is, uh, plans for us to collaborate with them. But obviously, we, we have to work with them on it, on their time, how they have their own goals as well. So we have to partner with them. So yes, we have plans for that ongoing collaboration and it's, it's something that's just starting and we'll be continuing to, to develop and working with them. Because we agree that the, the work starts earlier than, um, when they get to us. And I think they recognize that as well and they're willing to partner with us. So we still have a lot ahead of us to plan and to work through. But there's a great willingness, um, from everyone to, to come to the table together and, um, develop those points of collaboration that are going to be effective and are going to be fruitful for them and for us.
And I, I think that here the point for helping these, the students in the eighth grade, the feeder schoolers, uh, the school, districts who come to our high school is really talking with the parents, talking with the parents and letting them know that they have, they have a responsibility in helping their students in preparing to go to the high school. And in that way, it's just a little help for them.
Right, and Dr. Rivas has shared that, yes, we're in collaboration with the, with the feeder districts. Our problem is, uh, we're not a unified school district. So El Monte City has their, their, uh, goals, Mountain View has their goals. And so they're, they're, we're trying the best that we can, but we cannot dictate to another school district. Uh, you know, we need you to talk to parents. We can suggest it, we can massage it, we can, uh, but, uh, yes, I, I think she answered that, that, that they're in that.
No, you answered correctly. The, the problem is how to unify was the thing that, uh, Mr. Padilla wants to have, to unify everything in order to come to our high schools. Now that's the problem that we have to do. Okay.
We definitely have some challenges, but like I said, we have willing partners. And that's, uh, that, that doesn't get better than that, people who are willing to come to the table. So we're, I think, in a good place.
Okay.
Thank you, Professor Stella Torres de Segres. Anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay, Mr. Board Member, Mr. Carlos Salcedo.
Couple items. Um, I know that, uh, in the very first part of your presentation, Dr. Rivas, um, when you were talking about the, uh, fall administration, just the dates of the N W E A. Um, am I correct in that the window is from August to like mid-October, the first one?
Yes, that was the, the first window. Uh, it was the first time we were administering the assessment district-wide. We had to, uh, give folks enough, um, time to, first, we give them that overview and then to determine when they were going to do that. So our first window was extremely large to accommodate for the fact that it was the very first time we were doing that. And so we didn't have a pattern or a practice yet, but, uh, you'll notice that the windows have gotten a little bit, uh, shorter thereafter.
Right, and so moving forward, the fall for 2024, what's that going to look like?
So we don't have our schedule put together yet, but that is, uh, something that we're going to be considering because now we know.
No, but how long will the window be?
Oh, it'll be about the two-week window.
Yeah, but not?
Not.
Like that?
Not like that.
The previous one. And, and the only reason I'm saying is that if we're allowing that window to go well into October, then that pushes back training, that pushes back a lot of the, the work that we're trying to get to our teachers, right?
Yes, and then there was a, a lot of, if you'll remember, like coming in in July and kind of trying to articulate that, there was still a lot of catching up and trying to get everybody on the same page. So yes, we don't anticipate that next year, we're going to have that. It should be shorter next year, yes. And, uh, also earlier, um, potentially. So as we're looking at when we get the kids settled in, we'll, we'll be looking at that.
And that was my thought too, because we want to get to them as soon as possible, right? And, you know, um, so, okay, I'm glad that that's going to happen.
So we're, yes, we're reviewing that. Thank you for that question.
Um, the, I know you were talking about the, uh, the green and talking about kids making growth. Um, what kind of, what scale was this on? Was this like zero to 100 cup points? And it's not necessarily a, uh, an answer for today, maybe for the next one. But kind of, um, piggybacking on what another board member had asked about, um, the students that were in the red, like how far were they in the red? Um, so how far away from proficient, I guess? And also, um, what is the proficiency equivalency? Uh, because I know that that's one of the goals, right? Because we, we know, we, we see that our students are just not meeting proficiency, right? That's the goal for our students, more of our students to meet or exceed proficiency. So with these numbers, can we tell how many would need proficiency? Um, yeah, go ahead and then I have a few more.
Yeah, I mean, I can give you some of that information already. Um, and actually, the data that I was going to share with you is that 13% of your students in 2022, 2023 did not take the math test. I think you had asked and I had done the analysis from the last two years. So it's about 13% of the students not taking math. And so for the 11th graders taking the test, they're the ones that, because they're the only ones that take the test. We can project their proficiency and we can softly project the other kids' proficiency. So right now, what I projected based on only 40-some percent, almost like half of your kids, 11th graders taking the test, those were about 16% proficiency. The, each test, like the math six plus gives you like, the math test itself will give you the proficiency because they have Lincoln studies that do that. Um, so I use just the, the, the research that's preliminary right now to project that. So I, I don't think you're going to have 16. I think it'll be a little bit more because I'm not counting the students who are taking pre-calculus, which I also studied, uh, your data. And it shows that those students, the majority are reaching proficiency in the, like, at least in the last, looking at the last two-year patterns. So you have about 200 and some students who are not taking a math test. Uh, so not counting them, obviously, because I don't have data for them. And the kids that were not taking math, anything but any, any other math that was not math one, math two, three, but it was 16% that I projected. And you get to do that in the fall. So now for next year, right? Because this is, and this is the first year you're doing it, your baseline data. In the fall, you get those projections. And the, the idea of using this type of assessment is everyone's like doing something about it, actively figuring out what our students are going to do so that they're not. figuring out what our students are going to do so that they're not that low proficiency. Right now you have ninth graders, so I believe I calculated about 20-some percent of them are proficient. Okay, well, let's make sure that they're 30% or 40% next year. But some, we need to make sure that that action is being tracked and what's working and what's not working. But yes, we can make projections.
And then in the absence of a scale that, that we can see, for the students, I guess roughly 53% met their growth goal. How did they calculate that goal? Was it obviously based on their, their base benchmark, right?
Yes.
Or was it a percentage? Was it a cut point? Like?
It's a cut point. And I also, I think you also mentioned like the scale and I can bring a little bit more information around the scale the next time.
Yeah, that's what I was saying for the next.
Yes, we'll save it for that.
I understand some of these questions probably can't be answered tonight.
Yes. And, and, and they can also share that with you, but there is a scale and there is. So there's a typical student at around 233 is what the 11th grader should be scoring to be proficient. Sorry, should be scoring to be a typical student in the 11th grade. It's actually 253 about points. So the, what the, the N W A does is they don't tell you, they don't set the goal based on a student being proficient. They set a goal on what a typical student needs to grow to be, based on their baseline, to have a one-year typical learning. So sometimes it's two RITs points, sometimes it's three.
The, the goal here is we realize that there's a substantial gap.
Yes.
And so we need more than a typical years growth.
That's right.
Right. So that's kind of what I was asking about, that scale to know, you know, teachers, students should know what they're aiming for.
Yes. It's, they have to overpass their goal if they're going to make the difference.
Okay, let me take you some notes.
If I could just add to that, Mr. Salcedo, we have invited N W A rep to present a little bit more insight with the assessment. So some of those questions might be able to, they might be able to clarify a little bit more how they base their, their scores and how do they provide some of those growth targets.
That is something that I talked to Dr. Zuniga about.
So we do have them coming.
Yeah, Dr. Zuniga told me that our consultant wasn't available and I kind of fired back like, I don't care if our consultant is not available. Again, this goes to the system. Just because that person's not there, so what? Get me another representative from that company. They should know the same stuff too. You know, just because one person's not there doesn't mean that the whole thing stops. So I, I did want them to come today to put both of you together.
Yeah.
To look at these, look at these graphs and look at how do you read them. And, and I say that because when I do English Language Arts and I'm, and I go before DARB, any, any, any of the hearings, we do I-ready, I-ready assessment and I have their I-ready score and their baseline and the first assessment, second assessment for math, for reading. We can see if they grew, if they didn't, and the connection of mathematics. But a lot of times we're like, oh, the child is, you know, got a 424. Well, what the heck does that mean, 424? I like to tell parents, well, your kid scored 424 in math, but the range is from here to here. That's exactly what Mr. Salcedo is saying about, yeah, it's that number, but is there like a, a scale and stuff like that to read English Language Arts or to read math? So I know that in doing my research too, and this is something that I'm going to ask the N W A, or if we can ask N W, N W A to, to bring this, is that there's a parent guide to N W A assessments and there's also like a one for teachers of what, what does the RIT score mean? What does this? How do you use it? What is math? What is, like if you could bring one of those for the parents? So like when we have, you know, moving forward, if we have Ms. Catalina signs empowering our parents of what the heck is the N W A? What does it stand for in Espanol and Chinese and Vietnamese? Like we need to start empowering our parents so that our parents can say, hey, cuando estás tomando este examen, tienes que ponerle atención y tienes que estar serio cuando estás tomando el examen. Porque si no, pues el examen no, no nos va a decir exactamente cómo estás en la educación. You know, so parents could say, hey, when you take this test, again, all of us, our parents as partners, you need to take this test very seriously. This is an assessment. This will give us a true baseline, blah, 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 blah. This document is going to be good. And, and I am going to ask all similar questions to Mr. Salcedo when the N W A people come. And are they coming in, in March, right, Dr. Zuniga?
Yes.
Okay, so great. We'll have N W A, we'll have Catalina sign, we'll put it all together and cross-pollinate and put you both, you know, in, in the hot seat. And again, I, I got to say this, okay? When I'm at, when I say put you in the hot seat, don't ever take it personal. When I come off this dais, it is not personal. It is not personal. It is my urgency to, to make adjustments, to, to, to change things, to not continue to, you know, fostering the same type of stuff that we've been fostering for so many years. The good stuff, yeah. The, the stuff that needs additional tweaking, we need to tweak it. So don't ever take it personal. Like when I, I don't always agree, but when I come off the dais, like it's over, you know, it's, it's done. Like I'm not always going to agree with Qui. I'm not always going to agree with, with people here. So please know that many districts, and we're not one of those districts, they like to have their compelling conversations off where nobody sees it. And you know, they, they don't want to see none of that. I, I don't care. I like to show the good, the bad and the ugly. We are people. We are humans. Again, I could care less what neighboring school districts are doing. This is what we're doing. We have no power over other districts. We can only have power and have compelling conversations about our kids here. You know what I mean? And so I just want to be clear with that, okay?
And now say, let me just add that, you know, I really appreciate it because obviously you know that this is my, this is what I'm about, right? I want the change. I want it to stick and I want you to have that legacy. And often when we, you hear, I, in my experience, when I hear resistance or I hear a little bit of push, I love that. And, and from all lenses, because then I can go and uncover and get curious. I rather have these conversations that are very polite conversations, including from the teachers. If, if we're hearing the honest truth about how the teachers are feeling and, and when they are hearing things, they push back, that's healthy. That means they're being, they're engaging. So if this work is going to work, yes, continue these hard conversations. We're not going to take it personal because we're used to, this is what it takes to make change. And we're going to expect that the teachers should, and hopefully they feel comfortable, push back and ask hard questions because that means they're engaged and that's how change happens.
And I have to tell you, Dr. Zuniga, our superintendent recently went to a conference and they touched on the issue of mathematics. And tell us, Dr. Zuniga, tell us what you found out there. Are we on the right track? Are we off track? What did you hear? What some of the pressing concerns are from other superintendents from throughout the country or what did you hear? Because it's, it's relevant to this compelling conversation.
Everything that our students are saying is what they're dealing with. And really, I, I saw the two themes about the connectivity or disconnection amongst the relationship with the, the, our, our current educators and our students. There is, you know, there is some concern there from some of our students that have been shared. We have amazing teachers and also we have some students who can identify those folks too. But also we'll point out, well, in this class, we, we don't do this. And that's really something that we would want to change and more of a cultural change and understanding about how we can support teachers in that classroom to build that relationship. Requires professional development, requires skills and the willingness to come together and join us in that collaboration. The, the second one also that, that stood out is that our, our students are behind in response to what we recently went through with four years with the pandemic and everything else. So we're trying to hustle and catch up. They're trying to figure out where are we at now? And we're, we're moving away, but we, we, we can't continue to be behind. So that sense of urgency about how we can do to produce them, not only catching up, but also ensure that our students are prepared to, for the next level, either integrated one, integrated two or eighth grade bridge to ninth grade as well. Those are the two major things that we focus on. But they were not surprised about the data. And the data, keep in mind, it was only, it was only not, not only our students sharing the data that we have. U-Tooth is a national organization that provided thousands and thousands of same questions that they asked the students about, you know, how they feel about their math class, what is their confidence level? Are, are they, are they confident asking questions? And, you know, a lot of our kids, that's another, one of our kids pointed out, because our kids were interviewed. We were two of the school, two of the school districts that were piloted for interviews follow-up last year. And we met at El Monte High School about a year ago. And the response was that a lot of us were not confident to raise our hand and ask questions when it comes to math because we're uncomfortable. So what are we doing as educators to ensure that the environment is welcoming and also not intimidating for our kids to ask questions? It takes a lot of work in that classroom to adapt that. So that's just a little bit of feedback. I just shared a little bit about with the board, with the board. I shared the article that U-Tooth compiled and I'm proud that we were two of the school districts that actually, they're not mentioning the research study because that's, you know, that's research. But we are the two schools that identified in that research as being interviewed from our students' input. And I'm looking forward to sharing that information, not only with our colleagues, but also with our partner schools because those are our kids, those are their kids that spoke, that are speaking about that as well. That's about Mr. Padilla.
Thank you. Just what I took was that it was reassuring to know, like hearing him that we're on the right track, you know? And not everybody wants to take math on and I have to respect them for that. Like every, I have no power, we have no power over other districts. We've decided from the point that we had the administrative retreat, you know, from the moment we hired you, Dr. Rivas and Dr. Zuniga, we told you like math, we can't die on every hill. But we have made a, a decision here that we will die on that hill. We are going to die on the math hill. You know, it is a number one target for me. It's our number one priority of where we need to, you know, make adjustments. So I'll go with Board Member Qui Nguyen.
Okay. For Dr. Rivas, you know, on, on your presentation, on the percentage, you know, for low, low achieving, average achieving, high achieving, you put the percentage. But the percentage to me meaningless unless how many of those low achieving? How many of them are high achieving? Because you have a total of tested is 3,815. So can you elaborate on those? You know, like, you know, so we can, that's one question, the follow-up question. Are you going to divide a subgroup? I know most predominantly, and I want to divide subgroup so we can understand the data more effectively.
Yes, and we do have that information. Ms. Sands is pulling it up. Yeah.
Because the percentage without context is meaningless to me.
Correct. No, yeah. But what we wanted to showcase in this particular data is those pockets of focus for us, which is the high achieving students who are not making progress. And then the low achieving students who are making good progress so that we can really zero in on understanding and asking the right questions of students so that we can seek to understand and either replicate or address or reduce some of the barriers that we're seeing. But Ms. Sands just pulled up the data. Are you able to share that here? Yeah.
High achieving students, and maybe for the next meeting, we'll break it down more.
The total number of low, of high achieving students is 1,232. The not, total number of average student is, average performing students is 845. And the total number of low achieving students in the district is 1,738.
How much?
1,738. This is again, the students that tested. And I should say, that is the amount of students that took both tests.
Okay.
So I don't have the specific, like how many students on each of the, but at least that gives you a sense of.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's more meaningful when you put in that context, you know, percent of what?
Yeah. Great, great question.
There are no contacts? I don't understand. You know, in the math guy, when you give me the number and you can put in contacts, I don't understand. Okay, another question for, for Sands. You know, in order to have a good outcome, not in math, in education at all, we have three components. We have student, parents, and the teacher, instructional, I mean, which is us. So you know, right now the data, the distribution data, very skewed to the left. You know, it's not normal, you know, from what I see from my point of view. So you know, so mostly the data concentrated on the left, so it's skewed to the left, low performing. You can see that 1,700 out of whatever, half of it is low achieving. So there's no surprise, okay? And what I see at the classroom is reflect the same thing, 50% or more. Okay. So that's why if we have, my question is, can we, can we develop a priority standard and a benchmark in parallel at the same time?
So I would, can you? Yes, we can.
Is it difficult? You take longer?
It's, it's definitely longer and it's the right thing to do, is the right practice to develop the tool, the priority, and then the tool to measure. And I think that it's, it's part of the plan already. I think the, the thing that I want to caution and the reason that I'm being conservative in answering like, yes, by this date or with, by that date, is I want to make sure that I'm being responsive to everything else that you have as your district. And if we rush into something as important as that and then the teachers are not getting the right professional development to really implement it, then you get to, yes, impose a system that they're not buying into. And this is an opportunity, if we use this data correctly, if we are telling them how great they're doing because they are doing some great stuff. And at the end of the year, you celebrate the heck out of your teachers who are accelerating learning, which you were not able to see last year without this data. But the teachers don't know that. The students don't know that. And so that's why we're taking our time. So I want to be responsible and say like, okay, let me look at everything that's on everyone's plate and then let me make a concrete suggestion. Because you want to get everything done. It's going to get watered down, the quality. And I, again, we want to make it last.
We want quality.
We want quality. And so that's, and that's my hesitancy in saying, yes, of course we want it.
Yeah. But because the next school year is around the corner. And we don't want to keep delaying like, like he say, you know, went to the next school year to implement it and keep delaying and delaying. It's snowballing. It doesn't help. You know, and the next cast will be taken very soon. You know, it's around the corner. It's right now we halfway to, you know, the, the school year, I mean, more than half, you know, almost done already. Three more months.
And I can promise you this, I can, and thankfully, because I've had so many years of experience and seen things that work and don't work, right? Because the reason I've been able to see student achievement is because I've done a lot of things that didn't work and we, we just have the system to adjust and, and, and make better. That I will be honest and say, if we want to get this done in March, these are the consequences, right? If we want to get it done in May, these are the consequences, the pros and cons. We want to get it done in the summer, this is the consequences, pros and cons. That way, when the district chooses what's going to be better, we are clear and we're not surprised when something else becomes, you know, a second priority. And we're not surprised that we're not, that it's going to take longer to get the quality out. So I will be very honest. And again, I apologize for not saying like, I can have it next, next month, but I, we will definitely be making progress. And I will be honest in terms of like, what is it that you're giving up by having all these priorities put together in one place? And that's part of the, the work that I want to be able to do. And talking to your teachers, where is their capacity? What is their worries? We talk about the, the, the teachers need to, I do think that, you know, math teachers, and I'm a math teacher and I have brothers who are math teachers and I love math teachers. And so a lot of the times what you see as resistance or apathy is really our internal way of surviving because we feel we don't really have another option but to live in this system. And we're not, we're doing our very, very best, but we don't always know where to get more. You know, you, you have a teacher teaching 45 minutes of instruction, you're setting them for failure and you're setting the student for failure. So all, I don't, those are the frank conversations that teachers are going to, and we have to be able to answer to the teacher and be like, okay, yeah, we got to do something about that. So how do, how do we set you up for success? Because that's not fair for that teacher. And so part of it is bringing everyone along so that, again, it sticks. The students, I mean, how many of the students took this test and didn't know what it was for? That's, I think that's not okay. So it's, and, and the teachers maybe didn't even know how to explain it. That's okay. That doesn't mean that we're going to throw it out. It just means we're going to learn the behaviors. We're going to focus on the leading behaviors that, that actually get us to those outcomes. Because if we just focus on the outcomes and not on all the healthy culture and all the healthy behaviors that get us there, then it's just not going to last. And I've been, and I have been in organizations where we have tremendous growth for the first five years, the leader leaves and everything goes backwards.
Yeah, that's why we have you as an expert, you know, we just, that's our goal, you know, head of quality instruction equity, you know, to all students, you know, that, you know, can be successful in math because math is needed no matter what and what subject you go to. And you know, it, it should be, you know, with regard to Mr. Brianna say, in the middle school, you know, they had different way of teaching math and so and so, I kind of disagree. We have a principal over here because, you know, from elementary school in El Monte City. Because from what, when I tutor, mentor a lot of kids, including El Monte City Elementary, they use the same book. Is that gold math they're using, Mr. Salcedo? The same thing. Muskettal, you go math and all of them, you go, go math. They go math, you know, all of you the same thing. But how they taught, how they use it is a different story. is a different story. So that's why we need to work with our partner to show that, you know, we have a priority standard, you know, make sure these kid that, you know, we can align and we can work together. And, you know, all, all the curriculum from Math VII, Math VIII are the same, from what I see, from my point of view. You know, but it's how you teach, how you carry it out. Some teacher just do the computation only, not conceptual, you know, how, how it carry out? You know, it's different from, from school to school. Because I had to tutor a lot of kids from different school district. So I, I, you know, from school, from Roseby School District, from El Monte City District and Mountain View School District also. So that's why I can see all of them and, you know, and they, they use the same material. They use same textbook, same, same books, same curriculum, but how they taught is a different story.
Again, the, the behavior and the beliefs. And we should, we should look at our reports to see how Go Math is doing there too.
Yeah.
Right, so we can give that feedback back. But I, I think that's why it's important for us to focus on the instruction and how we use the resources instead of jumping into new resources.
I think that's all for my question.
Okay, well, you have another question, Professor Stelatoris? Okay, well, I, I have tons of questions, so I'm sorry, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask this, okay? One, Dr. Zuniga, we need to invite Ms. Catalina Sands to the March Board Meeting. So I don't want to assume or lose interpretation or communication. Can you please jot down to have her for the March 6th? Got it, perfect. The next thing is, a question I had was, has Catalina been a part?
I just want to make sure you're available though, if you're available, because I think that's important to know.
Yeah, I'm gonna write it down. If it's in the afternoon, is that 5 o'clock?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll be here.
6 o'clock, isn't it?
6 o'clock, regular start.
Okay. I'll be here.
Yeah.
Bring it to board meeting.
Cut the mark it down.
I know I asked the question, has Ms. Catalina Sands been a part of the training with NWEA? I, I would like a little more involvement of Ms. Catalina Sands with NWEA so that we are cross pollinating and we are all on the latest stuff for NWEA. And like, you know, I, I, I just felt like every time I would ask, like, why have I not seen anything in my Friday memo regarding Ms. Catalina Sands? Mr. Queen, I would talk about that and it's like, what are they waiting for? Like, what is my district waiting for? Like, I expect to see a Catalina Sands report or, like, in everything. I want math of Dr. Rivas, Ms. Catalina Sands. Like, I want her in everything that we're doing, you know what I mean? That was something that we need to do.
Yeah, and just to clarify that, we are working with her schedule, doing the best to make sure that, you know, because she is, she has other, other work.
Got it.
On it, but the, but she is, has been in communication with NWEA, contacting, working with our rep on the phone.
Perfect, as long as we increase it, like, like, we, we're paying you to do this work here, like, and I don't want to be mean, but I could care less about the other districts. I care about my kids. It's kind of like when I go to parent conferences when my kids were little. And one time I had a teacher say, well, Mr. Padilla, you know, I have 30 kids. And I said, look, stop. With all due respect, you knew you got into teaching, you knew you were going to have 30 kids. I could care less about the other 29. I want you to talk to me about Luis Padilla, okay? So let's be clear, don't, don't tell me you have, I don't want to hear that, like, and I get it, I respect your schedule, but I could care less about your other contracts. I'm worried about my district, okay, Ms. Sands? And again, don't take it personal, I, I don't mince my words. The other thing is, questions I have, content specialist can create the priority standards, benchmark assessments that is aligned to the standards. I get it. I will take Ms. Catalina Sands' recommendations, but when you come after you've done your needs assessment, you know, please give us a list of priorities, because you're going to learn quite a bit from the work that you're doing. But we, we need to prioritize, if you prioritize those things for us as a district and you're the Harvard expert, that is going to be the priority or the work for our TOSA that we just recently hired. Because if, if you're telling us some priorities and our district is going in a different direction with priorities and then Mr. TOSA has another priority, like, we're not going to be on the same page. So I'm really looking forward to your final needs assessment with priorities of what is the, the biggest, you know, what is the biggest hot potato on there? That has got to be the biggest thing for the TOSA for us to do that work. I mean, that, that's what I'm looking for in this needs assessment.
Yeah, and it shouldn't come as a surprise, but I also will add that I do partner. So I would hear, I will be hearing from TOSA, right? That I'm, I'm not making these decisions in isolation, because I have to feed my information from the qualitative data from your teachers, from your students, from the district leaders, the people that are going to be on the ground.
Got it. And, and another thing that I wrote here for myself is, you know, you call it a scope of sequence. I've heard it that way. In our district, we call it pacing guides. Talk to me a little bit about pacing guides. And, and this goes to the point that Mr. Brionas was, was talking about. We don't want to be lockstep and stuff like that, but where are we? Because, I mean, I know that currently we're all over the place, but what is the work that you're doing there in terms of a timeline and some of this stuff does take a long time? Talk to me about pacing guides.
So once, typically, the best practice is once standards are prioritized, they're put in a sequence that makes sense, because some standards build on each other. And so then they're put kind of like in a calendar. And so they're, they're, you know, and we're all saying that our priority in September is going to be these standards.
Got it. So you've answered my question, so because we have not identified the power standards, we can't even begin to do pacing guides.
And the pacing guides then determine the, what goes into the benchmarks and to the assessments. Because if we are all going to assess in, you know, January, then we all know what we're going to be at in January and that's what we assess. That's how they work together.
Okay, can you talk about those priorities in your needs assessment? Like, where is that going to come in terms of a timeline as best you can?
I will have a preliminary, I can have some, some options, like.
Okay. I, I, I'm just kind of picturing the plan in our, in our head. We got the common assessment, we're trying to identify the power standards. Once we identify the power standards, we'll do a benchmark, then the pacing guides. Like, I get it, like, I'm, I'm seeing it now, there's a plan, you know? Teachers will know the why, like, why are you doing all this?
Yes.
Okay, so little by little, it's coming, I, I can picture it. So again, these were questions that I had coming into this meeting. Do we have a benchmark assessment in the El Monte Union High School District that is, that is aligned to the standards? You know, I, I know that NWEA is a criterion reference test, it's just the norms, the norms. You know, could teachers use this as the, like, the final test or the end of the semester grade? I now know that we do not have the benchmark. We're going to develop it based on your answer right now. I did put on here, okay, I had asked, when will the needs assessment be completed? If it wasn't, you know, because you told me early on that I'm going to report on some of it. One thing that I do have to say, and I don't know if anybody else feels this way, but I do not want to continue to feel like this big hasn't, had, I'm an English language learner, hesitancy about how we used Ms. Catalina Sands. I, I don't know why, but I picked that up. I'm very perceptive, Dr. Rivas. And I, and I feel that when I wasn't getting anything on the Friday memos or hearing anything, you know, Mr. Queen, I like, hey, did you hear anything about Ms. Catalina Sands or her work? And he said, no, and I would say, no, and I just felt that, like, I just want that stopped. I don't want hesitancy. We, we talked about a lot of places where we can use Ms. Sands to empower parents to do the focus groups that you're talking about, to complete the needs assessment. Like, I want her to be a familiar face and that she walks around our schools and people don't have to be afraid. We're not trying to, you know, catch you doing something bad. Like, we're trying to work to collaboratively to, we all want the same thing. Teachers, Catalina Sands, Dr. Rivas, myself, the board, it's, how do we, how do we get better? You know what I mean? And I did put you on the spot and say like, what are you going to do for our district? Or how do we leverage you or, you know? Everybody wants to know, we're paying you, you know, to come here and, and help us. And so I did put you on the hot seat when I said that of like, you know, what are you going to do for us? What are you going to do for El Monte Union High School District?
And I have to say, I will also be able to recommend the best way you can utilize me moving forward after the needs assessment, and let me just be very clear as to why. If, if I then take some work, which I love to do, I love teaching, I'm still going to do that when I grow up. But if I do all of it myself without engaging the district leaders, the leaders, the content specialists, then I'm still staying with that expertise myself. That's not the way I roll my consult, my consultancy. If I'm going to spend time, whatever you're going to spend, your, your tax dollars, your kids', resources, because you're paying me and you're not getting something else, then I need to make sure that I'm leaving you with the, the skills, the capacity to do it even when I'm no longer around. Which is sometimes why it's going to feel that way, because I'm going to be behind the leaders. You know, sometimes being their second pair of eyes, being the critical friend, pushing and, and, you know, pushing. And when the resistance comes in, I'm going to prepare that TOSA to handle the resistance and not die on the hill, but succeed on the hill, right? And so I think part of what I'll commit to is really looking at my calendar, maybe more long term, because that has been an issue, and really putting dates ahead of time. And, and thinking strategically how I come in. And, and a lot of it, I do have to start with the leaders. So I need to figure out how to get now into the classroom. They met me twice now, right? They know how I will, a little bit of the conversation that needed to happen and that took long because I, you know, I had, I didn't, and that's on me, I didn't have the availability. But that's what I'm saying, like, the sooner that I put all of these things on my calendar, the better.
Yeah.
So that's, that'll be our next step.
I'm glad you're touching on that, that you've had, you have had some conversations with some of our teachers, because I did put on here, like, when you told me that you had not visited, you know, any of our schools, that is a question that I have is, when will you be, you know, LBWA-ing in our, in our classrooms? Like, your leadership by walking around? When are you going to be, you know, visiting our classrooms and talking to our teachers away from us, board members, away from principals, like, where they could just be transparent and tell you like it is, you know what I mean? Like, where you're not coming in to evaluate them, you're coming in and say, hey, tell me, tell me what you think, or what do you see, or, you know, that part.
And it has to be well thought out, because if, if I just show up.
Yeah.
And because this woman asking me about my math instruction, they're going to feel.
Yeah.
It's going to feel bad. So I need to treat it like the focus groups. That's why I need to leverage and build their relationship, their trust. And I think that's why it's taking a little longer, but it is going to happen. And, and I, again, I'm proposing that you extend, you know, my work for next year. Put me in there strategically, once the needs assessment is done, that way we don't have this happening.
And yes, you know, we have the urgency, but I heard what you say, like, sometimes you have to move slow to move fast. And I, I, it came out loud and clear about the buy-in from the, from the staff, so got that. I, I'm going to come back and I'm going to put you on the hot seat, Ms. Catalina Sands. When should we assess the eighth graders that will be our freshmen? Do we wait till they come in and then? And what I mean by that is, I don't just mean our own district assessment that we adopted, the Integrated Math I, II, I don't mean our NWEA. I'm talking about the Growth 6+. The reason I'm bringing the NWEA people here is I want to ask more questions about that. Let's say we assess the eighth graders that are coming in, right? What is that NWEA Growth 6+ test going to tell us about those eighth graders when they come in? Do you have experience with districts that have assessed their eighth graders before they come to the high school?
No, I haven't actually, I think that's very innovative and I think, I know I had heard it, I think, from Dr. Rivas. And so I think it's something that is brave and that you should champion, I encourage it. Not when the students are here, it's too late.
Okay, so.
And there's a way that you can do it when they're already, I mean, even, it's okay if it's not perfect. I wouldn't let, like, good get in the way of perfect. So even if you don't, if you get to test a good number of students and not every single student that's going to get, I think that'll give you very powerful data, including the teachers.
Okay, so I'm going to put my colleagues here on the spot. I would like our eighth graders that are coming in to be tested. Is there anybody else who would support me on that? Or do we, do I just let that go? Do we assess our eighth graders so that when we get them, we know exactly where they're at? I know that it's a big task, I know that it's big work, but we're talking about big things, which is their life. So Professor Stellatoris De Segres, how would you feel about us testing our eighth graders? And when I say that, I'll put my money where our mouth is, we buy the license to assess them. I don't want to leave it up to, hey, neighboring district, will you pay for us to test like your kid? Like, I want us to pay for it, because they're our kids and we want the data to then be able to use the data to fix or, or run our master schedule. How would you feel about us testing our eighth graders? Yep, okay. Okay. I'm going to go to you, yeah.
I've been, with all these things that we have been talking, like, for example, Arcadia High School is a unified school district, yes?
Yes.
Because they have all the elementary and the high school, only one high school. This is one of the best high schools, even in the United States. What's happening with that? It's because all the elementary schools, they have the same system in math. And when they, the students come to the, to the high school, they are all equal?
Which school is, which district is?
Arcadia, Arcadia High School, Arcadia Unified School District.
I have not studied Arcadia School District, so I, I mean, if you're okay, I can do a little more digging into their system.
Yeah, because I have heard a lot, especially I have the experience, my grandchildren are there. And as far as I understand, is one of the best high schools in the United States. But it's unified.
Yeah, so she could look into that, but let's come back to the question that I have.
It comes in parentheses.
It's my turn now, you guys had your turn, so.
Yes, I, I agree.
I want to have my turn too.
Let's do it.
So are you okay, are you supportive of us? Okay, perfect. Mr. Brionas, I would like to hear from you and your, your, your thoughts.
I actually would want to hear from Dr. Rivas and Ms. Sands. I mean, obviously, this assessment is not completed. I would defer to them on the recommendation of if, and I would assume at some point the answer is going to be yes. I'm not going to, you know, put words in your mouth, it's my assumption I'm making right now. But more to the point, I would want to hold off until we hear from them on when.
Great question.
Because I don't want to jump the gun quite yet. I'm not, I want to make it clear, I'm not disagreeing with the sentiment. I just want to make sure that we're following the recommendations of the experts, the subject matter experts, before we make a determination and give direction to staff. Because if we say we want to test them, say, in April, we have to coordinate with those feeders to go interrupt their instructional time. And, and we do a lot of that already when it comes to scheduling and meeting with counselors. That's another imposition that we're going to put, place on them. So I'd rather hold off and wait to hear for the, from them for their recommendation before we take, you know, any action.
Thank you for your comment, and I, I will defer to the expert. I, I don't know if I heard wrong or if I heard right, but I heard Ms. Sands say that by the beginning of the school year, it's too late. Did I hear you wrong or?
No, you heard me right. I think the, what I said is make sure that, if it's not perfect this year, that you don't get everybody, that you're okay with it. Because what, what you don't want, again, this is coming back to too many things happening at all at once. So the, a good question is, are we then having a very solid plan? We talked to these districts, we given them a year of advance, letting them know that this is going to happen? And all the little, everything's like, has ever been planned, but we know it's going to happen, right? So it's next summer. And then this summer, you make it optional, do you have people come here? You know, I think those are the little things that then are going to grab the leaders' experience in your districts, it's going to drain your district from then not focusing fully on the priority standards, the, the scope and sequence. Those are the little things that we're saying, when we prioritize those things, is it going to happen? And do I recommend that? Yes, definitely.
And if, and if I could add, I also believe in assessing students before they come in and talk about that in the plan, that was one of the ideas. We do want to screen our eighth graders before coming in. However, I want to collaborate with our partner districts. It's not something I can dictate and say, here, we're going to go and assess. So it is, if, if you will remember, it was part of the plan that we articulate with our feeder districts in terms of how and when we will be collaborating on assessing and gathering that screening data. So I'm not in disagreement with the idea of assessing. I think it's important, it's critical to inform us in our planning and our decision-making. However, we're not a unified school district and I do want to work with our partners. I don't want to demand, I want to be able to come into the, at the table in partnership and, and make those decisions together. So I'd like to be able to have those conversations before saying we're going to go in and test on such dates, formulate a calendar with them ahead of time so they know when and how we're doing this, so that we can get the best out of folks, out of our kids, and be very strategic and thoughtful about that process.
Okay, so. So, so I'm not going to wait till Cal's? You can pick up the phone tomorrow and talk to the superintendents, because they're the ones that are ultimately going to make the decision of yea or nay. Call the superintendents and by March 6th, tell us, Dr. Rivas. I'll let Mr. Queen. Um, I'll let Mr. Qui answer the question that I had. The question was, uh, should we assess these kids? Uh, and I get it. I get it that you, Dr. Zuniga, sometimes you guys are gonna get, not sometimes, you're gonna make recommendations. Uh, I hear you. Uh, sometimes we will agree. Sometimes boards have to make some tough decisions and we might not agree on everything. Uh, so I would like to hear from Mr. Qui and Mr. Salsido.
If I could jump in really quick.
Sure, go ahead, Mr. Breones. I'll go back to you.
And this is, again, to the point about us not having control over these other districts. Um, so here's, here's a question I want to pose to you. Again, I'm not disagreeing. I just want to make sure that it's thought out and that we have the capacity to execute this. We have four feeder districts, Valle Lindo, Almonte City, Mount View and Rosemead. What do we do if two districts say yes, you can come in and test our students and the other two say no? Or three say yes and one says no, or whatever the combination.
That, that's a great question. That speaks to what, uh, Ms. Catalina Sines just said. It's not always gonna be a perfect, uh, system. You, you don't wait until you have the perfect document.
Let me, let me finish my, my comment. Let me finish my comment. So again, I would want to defer because if, you know, say your findings come back and you go and present this through Cal's to the other superintendents or through your articulation meetings with the other content specialists or the other system superintendents. And they agree, yes, we need to do this. Let's find a time that works for us this year. Or what if they say, well, we're working on something as well, but now's not a good time. You know, so I, I, again, you know, I don't want to use data that's incomplete. I'm, and I understand about not making perfect the enemy of good.
Yeah.
You know, I've made that argument before on many other initiatives throughout our district. I just want to make sure that we're not throwing our weight around and strong-arming other districts
Got it.
and, and interrupting
Yeah.
their instructional programs. And, and that we maintain those cooperative relationships with them.
So yes, I hear you, but you know what? I'm gonna up it. I'm gonna go one step higher, Dr. Rivas. I'm gonna ask Dr. Zuniga to have this conversation with his peers equal to equal because at the end of the day, they're the ones that can, you know, give us the feedback, Dr. Zuniga, on assessing our eighth graders. Um, I, I hear what, uh, Mr. Breones said. I hear what Dr. Rivas said. I've heard what Ms. Sines says. Um, Ms., uh, Professor Stella Torres De Seagres would like to have them assessed. I would like to have them assessed. Uh, Mr. Salsido.
Keep it short. Collaboration's best. Um, do we want information sooner rather than later? Of course. It would definitely help us with our master schedule, uh, providing an equitable, uh, resources and support. Knowing, um, right away what the deficiencies are, of course. But, uh, we do need to reach out. You know, we don't know what their calendar says. I mean, it's just, there's so many things in play. I agree, but I think it's best if we collaborate, come together and we come up with, with something that works.
Good. So collaboration, can we still ask that question, Dr. Zuniga? You could still get a feel of what they tell you and say, you know, nay or yea. Let them know that we will pay for it. You know, don't go asking them, will you pay for it? Because I know what the answer is gonna be. You know what the answer is gonna be. So, uh,
Can I also suggest like, uh, in terms of strategically implementing something like this, it doesn't have to be the all or nothing. That if you have a specific feeder district that wants to pilot this with you, then that's a little bit more doable.
Said, like, for example, let's say Mountain View, like, I already have a board member here who went and reached out and has a relationship with Dr. Andrew. I know we have a relationship with, uh, the superintendent, Dr. Um, from Violento.
Elizabeth Evan.
Ms. Evans. So, you know, there's some good things there with the collaboration, but, um, okay.
But I do wanna caution you just because I have to.
Yeah.
That is just, you know, again, when something like this is taken on and I do my needs assessment, we just need to understand like, okay, then what else gets off the plate? Because we're adding this piece.
Got it.
I think that's the only thing that I wanna just caution you. And it's, it, this is all great things and we all wanna get them done. Everybody in this room is in, in agreement. And so I think that's the most important thing that we don't leave it off. Well, we agree, but then because we didn't get it done today, then we just forgot about it. As long as we know that this is part of the priorities and it's being monitored and we're making progress towards, I think that we're still gonna get to what we need to get to.
Got it. But Dr. Zuniga, also telling them the why, I think will be critical. And the why for me is, when we create our master schedule, I, I'm gonna come back to the visits that Mr. Qui has made, you have made, like, how do we solve that issue of you're trying to teach these kids and tutor them to higher level math? And the board member and superintendent are seeing like, this kid can't divide. Like, how do I even get to like the next step when, you know? That is the why for me. Like, like, am I willing to wait one more year with these kids having that deficit and not intervening? That's, that's the hard part for me that I have to swallow, that I, I'm not okay with like waiting anymore. Um, I hear the collaboration. I hear we're not a unified school district. I hear all that, but all of that doesn't help the kids that are coming, this batch of kids that will be with us. Go ahead, Dr. Uh, Rivas.
Yeah, I just wanted to also, uh, manage, uh, our expectations as we're collaborating around this idea of testing eighth graders. We do have to solicit, uh, licenses. We do have to train folks.
I'm fully aware of that. That's why I said we will pay for it.
Data, all sorts of things have to be put in place. So it's not just as quick a turnaround as yes, they agree and then now we're testing. So I just wanna put it out that it is a process. It is, it takes time to train people, to get folks with their, uh, browsers up and running. Like there's, there's time involved in this to, to do it well. And I agree that we want to pilot if possible. But I also do want to caution, like, it, it doesn't move as quickly as we all would like it to. In education, it hardly ever does, but just a word of caution for us to think about as we're moving forward.
Got it. I, I, I understand that. When I came on here, it was quickly said to me that in education, it's a, a marathon. It's not a sprint. I'm fully aware of that. So, Mr. Qui, when? I wanna hear from you.
I think I agree with, uh, Mr. Salsido. Collaboration is the best solution. Because, you know, when I talked to Dr. Andre, he want us to treat each other as a partner. So collaboration, okay, he, he stressed on it. Otherwise, that will be like turned off. Everything be turned off. So we need to be sensitive and, you know, it's, it's much I want to change, but like I say, we have to respect our partner.
Well, I disagree with you, Mr. Qui, but the board has spoken, okay? I, I will back off.
But I also will say that my recommendation will say that we still need to be responsible for how the kids are coming. They're gonna take a fall NWEA. And at that moment, we need to be ready to act on the data.
Yeah.
And I think that's something that is some, is a huge growth of opportunity. And so it's not, it doesn't mean that my data is gonna say, oh, well, we're not gonna be able to do. No, we're gonna, you're gonna have that fall data. You already have the wonderful tool and now you need to optimize that data and, and use it immediately in the fall.
Got it. I still lose. You lose too, Professor Stella Torres De Seagres. Three, two, they win. Got it. Okay. Moving right along. Um, I'm gonna ask all my questions here. Um, NWEA, our district adopted the IM One, IM Two and IM Three assessment. However, we did not adopt or administer NWEA Math Growth Six Plus with the exception of one school, that being Mountain View. We know that some of our kids coming in cannot multiply and divide. So what do we do about that? Remember, we only have four years of high school and we have a block schedule at two schools and a regular schedule at the rest of the high schools. So my question is, um, I know we piloted at, uh, at, um, Mountain View, how has that gone? We're more than halfway into the district. Uh, I, I remember they had said that we would pilot in a block schedule. They would do 60 minutes of core and they would do 40 minutes of intervention. Can you speak a little bit to that or do we not know?
No, I don't have that information to present to you. I don't wanna misspeak, so we can definitely take a look at that.
Got it.
Yeah.
Okay. And, and I just ask because I wanna know, uh, when the NWEA people, I'm gonna grill them on, what will NWEA Growth Six Plus tell us? Okay? I'm very curious about that.
Yeah, I have a general understanding of that, but they can do, uh, obviously a better job, but
Yes.
I can kind of just give you an idea. It's like breadth and depth. So the Growth Six Plus will give you more breadth of standards all the way down to elementary level. The, uh, IM series is a little bit more targeted. It still does give you breadth though. It does, it's able to pick up, um, at the lower level, some of the skills, but it also addresses more content-specific for the standards that the students are enrolled in. So they can talk a little bit more about that, but it does give you more specificity in terms of the actual classes the students are in, but.
Yeah, I did talk to Dr. Zuniga about that, that I do want them to, uh, uh, focus on that and in, in, in educate this board or, or help me understand better, uh, the, the Growth Six Plus.
And one of the things I'll just leave as planting a seed for that conversation is really, uh, talking about, uh, grade level and being on grade level. If we're really, uh, serious about closing the gaps, we can't just teach to.
Absolutely. I'm not saying you're gonna do intervention for the whole time. So then I am looking for you two, the experts and Mr. McGinnis. Then what are we going to do to help them with that intervention? Is it gonna be like a back-to-back math with like an elective of the, of that? Are we gonna do a zero period? Uh, we're gonna have to get creative, but I'm not okay with doing nothing. Or anything. I'm not okay with that.
Right, right.
Okay, all right. As long as we're on the same page about that. Um, it says here, uh, w- w- one of the things that I feel that we're lacking right now is kind of a, a system of internal accountability. There is no accountability right now when it comes to like, um, within our school district. Um, I, I just feel that there's no accountability. I don't think there ever has been in the area of math. Uh, and, and I'm hoping that now that we're looking apples to apples and we're kind of aligning ourselves to, because before when we were the board, we would get the data from all the high schools and everybody, it was like apples, oranges and, and, and whatever. But now I'm really seeing, not because we wanna lockstep anybody, but because we have to make data-driven decisions on where we put the money and where we're gonna expand or not spend. And so I, I am looking for, uh, there is a need here of, of a, a system of internal accountability. I don't know if you could, if you can speak to that, um, either one of you of.
Yeah, so that's something that we will be kind of working through in terms of our systems and structures. What are our systems and structures? And that's part of the feedback. That's part of our deeper dive into it. So we don't have necessarily anything to present to you tonight, but that is part of our upcoming conversations.
All right.
I'll just add that that's the reason to pilot the goal-setting process.
Of the several schools that will have a couple of classrooms throughout the district in every school.
Yeah, and usually it starts with the, some type of documentation where everyone's documenting their goals and, and reflecting on them.
Okay. And then, um, well, this will come with your needs assessment. I put in here, I wanna hear about what is working and what needs improvement. Obviously that will come in your assessment. Um, this is me just writing. I was right preparing for this meeting. I'm like, right now I feel like there's been a lot of talk and not a whole lot of action. What I call, you know, mucho wiri-wiri poca accion. Um, you did tell us that in your needs assessment, you will give us your priorities. And, uh, how, how do you feel that if in your priorities, we make that the TOSA's priorities too? Because I hear you loud and clear that if you make this the priority, then what are you putting to the side? You know what I mean? If you decide to make this the most important thing, then what are we pushing to the side? I expect to hear that because I expect that to be, um, the new TOSA's, uh, priority. And that, how are you assuring that your priorities, that you're on the same page?
My proposal is that when I present the needs assessment, is we present the needs assessment and the priorities.
We as in you two or you three?
As a team, including the TOSA.
Okay.
So the, the thing is, again, they, they, I can recommend, but we should come in ready with the recommendations and everyone understanding the pros and cons and the challenges of the recommendations.
Okay, all right. And then you did touch on, on the goal-setting and you said that you're looking to like have like pilot, like two, two classrooms from every comprehensive high school or one?
One. No, two district-wide. Two district-wide.
Okay.
Or one, but based on what we're, what I'm seeing right now, coming into a teacher that doesn't know me yet, and this is already March, I'm proposing that we move that part of my work, like right, to start right at the beginning of the year. Like I'm starting with the teachers.
Next school year?
Yes.
Got it. Okay. And then, uh, the test eighth graders, that's been resolved. The, the board spoke on that. Um, we have, uh, we, we've met the NWEA Common Assessment. You, you spoke on identifying the power standards. Uh, we finally have one common assessment in the entire district. Um, your question, your answer was no, we have not identified all the power standards. We don't wanna rush into that. We want feedback from everybody. Um, I get it that the framework has, has changed, but the standards have not. That still stands, correct? Therefore, uh, we can identify these standards now. Um, okay. Um, what else did I write here? The content specialist, okay? Tell me again, what do they do? A- a- and I don't mean it in a bad way. Uh, what, what do content specialists do?
Yeah, so, um, my understanding is that they do collaborate across the districts to be able to.
Timeout. I know you said your understanding. I don't want your understanding. I wanna know.
I have the person here who can give you a little bit more explicit.
Yeah, I wanna know what, what are the content specialists doing? And how, how do they get to be content specialists? I kinda see them like they're, the experts in their, in their field being mathematics. And so how many content specialists do we have in this district?
Uh, good evening.
Good evening.
Um, we have content specialists at each of the five, uh, comprehensive high schools in each of the four core areas. So math, English, science and social science. There's 20 altogether.
Okay.
Um, they're selected by, uh, the site process. Um, so each site ha, goes through a process to identify, uh, people who are interested in it and then they, they ultimately select them. Um, they, as you know, they, they have a free period dedicated to providing that support to their, their, uh, content team. So they operate like a con, like a department chair, um, as well as a, as the title describes, a content specialist. So they're, uh, designed to provide consistent support for their team. Um, they're the heavy lifters for, and leaders for looking at, um, uh, content. Like they're doing the heavy lifting around revising our course descriptions, um, looking at identif, the process for identifying those, uh, essential standards or priority standards. Um, so they are the resident experts for their team. Um, we, in addition, we also have what we call course leads. So each of the respective courses at each of the sites has a, uh, an individual who is identified as the course lead. Um, and they receive a, a separate stipend for that work.
Okay, so they are compensated for their additional work and they get the extra prep period. And they're respected by their peers and they're selected by their peers, right?
Correct.
Okay, good. I, I never really understood, uh, so the content specialist is different from the, um, department chair? I'm sorry to say.
In, in, in the four core, they, they, they are operating like the department chair. So, um, the, uh, modern language or the CTE or the PE, those, the, they have identified.
Most of the time, right? The department chair is the content specialist, most of the time?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Uh, did you say something, Mr. Qui? The same, okay. Thank you. Um, and then I did write, have you been visiting classrooms in El Monte Union High School District, Ms. Catalina Sines? And you, the answer to that question was no, correct?
Not, not yet.
Not yet. Okay. Um, I know you've been looking at our data, um, but that should not, this is me writing. This should not take that long. Uh, I can tell you it's low, you know, when you look at the data. Uh, not good, not bad, just low, and that is what it is. So where are we going? Uh, what are we going to do differently? Because if we continue to do what we've always done and, and blame the kids, it, it's not going to like fly with me. Uh, there has to be some accountability here. I mean, and these are direct questions that I wrote. Um, and I asked you this already, like what is the added value of bringing you to the school district? And you've answered that throughout the presentation. Um, w- w- one big thing that, um, that will keep me up at night now is, um, there isn't, there is an inequity in our system. And you know, as a minority, like I get that. It's something, it's how I've run my life. You know, even going to college, you know, when I went to college, there was like me and one other Mexican, two Mexicans, two African-Americans and everybody else did not look like me. You know what I mean? And so I knew like, it, it's kinda like when we've had our student trustees that sit here, whether it's, um, uh, I forget the previous girl that was so amazing, Dr. Zuniga, our previous, uh, Itlali Palacios, who says that when she sits in those AP classes and she's the only girl there, and the only girl, the Latina girl, it's things that would make her go, hmm. And I remember when she grilled Larry Cecil and she made him give us the report of, tell me how many Latinos and, or women in the AP classes. And he had to go do all this work and that's what it was for many of us that, that went to college as, as minorities. So I know there's inequities in the system. It's, 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 it's my way of life. I've learned to be resilient and deal with all this, but uh, we are a district that prepares students for college and career, okay? But we are a district that prepares students for college and career, okay? And so we need to, I really think we need to look at aligning our policy, Dr. District. We need to align our policy, Dr. Zuniga, and our graduation requirements to embrace the A through G. And I get it that all the courses that we offer here are A through G approved. But when I looked at that math, and again, why did you go look at math? Because everything I've been doing with Qui and things he's been, you know, educating me on, math is not my area of expertise, but it doesn't mean that I can't learn all this. And it was my whole issue of the inequity. That is a big bombshell for me to know that we have a bunch of 11th graders that are not taking math their junior year. And it's like, well, maybe we could fix it to senior year or something, but it's kind of late because colleges look at your transcript and they look at what? 11th grade, right, to determine admission or not. So I believe that Ms. Sines said the number of students that are not taking math this year. Did you give that number earlier or did I hear wrong?
I don't have the number for this year.
Okay, so the reason is, whatever that number is, and I know Mr. Kirk McGinnis was writing when I said that, those are the kids that I'm concerned about, that it's already an inequity in our system. And you know, Mr. Breones wants equity, I want equity, but it is already inequitable right there because those kids have already been excluded from going the college track. You know, so that will be something that will keep me up at night. Like they will be excluded from applying to the Cal State and the UC. You know, what can we do? What can we do to help these 11th graders now before they get, you know, tested for the CASP or for not taking math? Like what are we gonna do for those 11th graders? I don't know how many there is, but I'm guessing it's gonna be a big group.
And we don't have those numbers to look at, but in the 11th grade to solve this, it's difficult, right? So this would be part of the work that we're doing with the math plan is to build up to that because you cannot fix that in one year. If you're gonna take a look at 11th graders and say, now we're gonna make you college-eligible.
So then we then look at our sophomores and say, we need to adjust our
We need to look at our ninth graders, but then more importantly is work with our feeder districts to be able to start to put these sequences and things into place so the kids are successful. So that when they get to us, we're already working with them. But yes, I would focus on our ninth grade students to begin to catch when they're falling off the track and get them back on. Because kids will fall off the course and we have to get them back on the wagon. What are our different ways to get them back on? The sooner we do it, the better. If we wait till there are an 11th grader, it's almost impossible if they're severely behind.
So that will be a discussion? I mean, I don't know why I need the feeder district to determine our master's schedule of how to get kids on track to be, you know, A through G so that every 11th grader is taking math?
It's not that we need them to schedule them into the classes, is if the kids come in and they're not successful with us in the ninth grade because we didn't create a seamless transition and curriculum for them, then they're not gonna be successful. Now they're catching up and they're not experiencing success. Now they're retaking courses rather than courses for college. So the buildup that we have with our kids coming in is critical and important. We're not preparing kids for college when they hit ninth grade. We're preparing kids for college before they come into us. And that's part of the partnership and the work. We can scheduling them into the right classes when they hit the ninth grade, but will they be successful? Do they have the skills, the resiliency and the background to be successful in those classes? That's the conversation that I think we're having with that math plan because it's not just about placing them in a class. That we can do, we can place them in a class.
All right, well, tell us what you decided in that conversation because that's a big mess right there, major, major mess.
It's all interrelated.
And it's all, that's all equity and access and that's all like, you know, a lot of times we throw that word around, equity and access, but this is where like the, what's that English language learner, where the rubber, what is that? Hits the road or something like that? And I'm not an English language learner, but I know the content that applies here. The other thing is that, I'm glad you're gonna have that conversation. The other one is the curriculum inequity. When I went into edreports.org and Mr. Qui showed me, did you know, did you guys know that our Hooton-Mifflin Heart Court does not meet expectations as quality instruction? Mr. Qui showed me that because Mr. Qui has every book that the elementary districts have, from Go Math to, you know, the Rosemead School District, El Monte City and these Twittered kids all over. I didn't know that that website existed and he showed me all the books there. But again, in our LCAP, and we just had Edith de Cheveria come and present an LCAP, and in there, we make a promise to our students that we will give you high-quality curriculum and high-quality instruction. And I get it that the work that, in terms of leveraging what Ms. Catalina signs is that with the professional development, with her needs assessment, that we will make the adjustments in math, you know, making adjustments to history, that that will be one of the things that we change to do things differently in terms of the delivery of instruction to, it's just hard, it's like a double whammy there, you know what I mean? Like if we continue to do what we've always done and expect different results, but only to come to find out that not only is what we're doing not working, you know, because we have such a high DNF rate, but then also to find out that that book, you know, is not sufficient or doesn't meet expectations, it's just, those have been aha moments for me. It does say edreports.org, it shows that the textbook we are using does not meet the definition of high quality and does not meet expectations. If we have, and I just put this, if we have the Arroyo High School Power Standards and the Rosemead Power Standards and the South El Monte, et cetera, it is not going to work in our LCAP. So I know that that's something that we're gonna fix on the instruction piece and the delivery. And I've always said that so that an A at Arroyo is an A at El Monte or an A at Rosemead and that, you know, that part. In our LCAP, it does say that. The promise of high-quality curriculum is not being fulfilled and the delivery of our instruction and what is being taught is all over the place, which we've talked about and we're working on that. This is not good, we need some pacing guides. And you talked about pacing guides and how those have to come much further along in the work that we're doing and that we need to collaborate, got it? But, you know, I just believe that we need to prioritize the work of power standards. But again, I'm not the expert. You know, you guys are the experts, so I do want to see what you come back with in March. Based on the findings of the needs assessment, I believe that we must take your priorities and make that the TOSA's priorities. And I'm gonna keep harping on that because, yes, we have the job description, but we need to tailor the job to the needs of our kids. Kind of like differentiated instruction? Well, it's kind of like a differentiated, you know, job description for him on what is important to the needs of our kids. I'm hoping that you will help us determine with the input of our teachers so that we, as to what needs to be done. We must develop our culture of continuous success. I like how Ms. Catalina Sines talked about how celebrating those teachers that have the success, you know? Because, and it doesn't mean, we can look to their best practices and learn from them as well as like, hey, how are you teaching this? Or this is the way I taught it and then celebrate them. And I don't want it to be like, oh, well, they're celebrating her, but not me. We want to celebrate like the work that they're doing and to support our peers, you know, for teachers to support teachers. We have high-achieving students that are stagnant and that went to the data, you know, in growth or have regressed based on NWA. And then some low-achieving students have made growth, but we don't know why. Can we have some focus groups? And you talked about that. And I believe in focus groups because I, Youth Truth was a program that I saw at one of the CSBA conferences and we had a student trustee from Rosemead that brought it to our district and then we supported it. And it's been amazing to hear their voice and hearing from our number-one customer. I put on here, we have to ask our number-one client what they think, what we did better or where we did worse. They will tell us to our face. You know, if you set the right conditions and make them comfortable, I've seen that with our student advisory committee. Enough of the power standards, you added that. I did ask you the question if with the data that we have for NWEA, could you predict CASP? And you answered yes to that. And I'm glad that we're using a consultant. In my neighboring school district, I remember we used to have a consultant. What was your name, Mr. Salcido? Not Nan Woodson, the one before that. Nan Woodson, okay. There was one before Nan Woodson, but she was able to predict exactly how our district was going to do on our state testing. And she was always within that margin of error. And the recommendations that this consultant would give us was kind of the law of the land in my neighboring school district. And it was, it was successful. I learned this from Mr. Qui and I might not get it right, but we have a systemic problem and we have an input problem. And I know you talked about that. Talk a little bit about that. What do you mean that we have a systemic problem and we have an input problem? Because you look at it as an engineer man.
I look at the output, I mean, the outcome of the task, you know, it doesn't look right. So input is from the feeder school, when the kid are not well-prepared when they come in. So we just adapt to what we have. So you know, so the standard keeps watering down and down and down and down. We try to invent the wheel, we don't have a priority standard. So we just keep trying to, you know, how to teach them something than nothing. Because, you know, because they're not ready to receive the standard. So they're kind of watering down the thing. But like I say, IAM1 standard, IAM1 standard. We don't make standard. The state makes standard or we will pick out a standard and teach. So the IAM1 should be the same across the four comprehensive high schools. But when I walk in and to the IAM1, I see different standard, different thing. They teach different thing. So that they're not consistent, that's systemic problem. Okay, so the input problem is a feeder school because 50% of kid is not ready to receive a standard. Gonna unpack the standard. So what can the teacher can do? They do, there's so much they can do. They do what they can to help a kid. But you know, you have to put yourself in the teacher shoe also. Because I teaching also, I mentoring kid also. When the kid that low, take me so much effort and time to bring them up. So what they have, like 30 kid, 35 kid, it's impossible. How can you bring all of them, 50% of kid to a standard? You know, and when you have that many student. So that's why class size has some impact. Is there some impact? But the most impactful is the kids are not to the level. You want to do the thing, that's the most important. That's why IAM4 assessment before they come in. So we can provide help, provide, you know, to fill in the hole that they don't have. But like I say, because we are not unified school district, it's a sensitive subject. We need a partnership, you know? And I've been talking to, you know, to different superintendent and there was a collaboration before, it wasn't successful because, you know, they're not an equal partnership. We try to, you know, we need to have a cooperation. And Dr. Zuniga is a hyphen, you know? You know, he should, you know, you have a good relationship with all the superintendent around here. So he able to, you know, to maneuver and, you know, present a case to them. So you know, I'm just like, you know, trying to present my case with the data. That's all I do. You know, the data doesn't look good. Because in most of the, you know, for Mountview School District, half of them go to South El Monte, half of them go to Mountview High School. So the data there, the superintendent very well aware of the data. But you know, he have a lot of challenges too. So we need to work with one another and he graceful enough to show what he doing to do, to improve it. So we want to keep that kind of partnership, with kind of collaboration. So you know, I empathize for what he doing, you know, what he doing.
Dr. Zuniga, when you talk to other superintendents, you know, if we're seeing that, like, you know, I've heard multiplication, division, all that stuff, is there any test that the neighboring school district or an assessment that they could give us of that type of data or no such thing?
No, no comment. I know they share, obviously, we mentioned the curriculum, but I have not heard of such a common thing that they do across our board. Sometimes even grading becomes an issue with regards to how they assess their students from grade level to grade level too. But what I can confirm and obviously support is that they are willing partners. They understand that we have not had an opportunity to build on collaboration as a result of how we are responding to the needs of our students with regards to the last three, four years and during the pandemic years. We know that that's now moving away and investing time together right now is critical. And prioritizing math, everyone's on board. I think they agreed. We have surveyed all of our administrators the first day we met back in October and said, tell us what is your priority as a leader and within your school district? They provided a list and math is one of them. But also, we have heard the urgency of SEL as well, social-emotional learning too. Well, there's components that go hand-in-hand. If our kids are not coming to school, for example, if our kids are not in touch with their school culture and their school setting, their classroom setting, that results to no success in math, no success in English, et cetera, English Language Arts. So we are aligned in our belief that together we can achieve more. But as you mentioned, we're navigating that and we started last fall and we're continuing to do it even on Friday. You know, we're meeting at Mountview High School, by the way. Of Mountview School District, I'm sorry. And Dr. Andrew had said, you know, I asked him, can you host? Because El Monte Union can do everything, but I want to be collaborative respectful and, you know, be feel comfortable too. So they graciously are going to be doing the next CAL, which is the first time we've had them in years. So that's a step in the right direction that we're open to going over there and also being welcome that their school district as well.
Got it, thank you, Dr. Edward Zuniga Superintendent. In your needs assessment, you know, instructional technology, can you give us some recommendations on, I know that part of this, it's iExcel. We use iExcel here, we also use
Delta Math?
Delta Math.
Before you Alex.
Before we use Alex.
Yeah, but now they dropped.
Like based on your experience, you know, and so forth. And then number three, we've talked about it and it's parents. We must see our parents as allies. We must see them as, you know, what is right, not as a deficit, not what is wrong, regardless of the level of education that they have. Until we change those attitudes and that mindset in our school district, it'll be that self-fulfilling prophecy that the parents are not gonna want to help us because they're made to feel inappropriate, not welcome, not seen as valued partners. And we need to tell them that because having immigrant parents, you know, our parents just send us to school and they tell us to behave and they leave our futures to the staff. And part of it is okay, but it's not fully okay. They must be with us and understand what their rights are. So I do have the, based on what parents have shared with me, they are not seen as partners. And I've heard that, you know, time and time again on campuses. You saw that I grilled PTSA? Yes, I expect them to talk in Spanish. Yes, I expect them to talk in Asian languages. I wanted to be crystal clear to the principals and I wanted the presidents to hear me saying that. Because for years, I've been in education for 31 years, it's always an English-speaking PTSA and traditionally it was all the Caucasian parents and Latino parents would tell me like, they just speak in English and I don't really know what the heck's going on, so I just don't want to go to that anymore. I'd rather come to ELAC where it's, you know, multilingual and I feel comfortable. So I do make that call to action and I want to tell Dr. Zuniga, yes, it's too soon or too late to add Catalina Sines to the City of Industry parent workshops. But planning, again, if you could put it on your calendar, to include her, to do a bunch of sessions in Spanish and English. And if you have any friends that speak, you know, multilingual other languages, bring them along or translate your presentation to deliver. Because the parents need to know that they have the right for their kids to get quality instruction and to have access to college. And this is the part, like when we, when districts create a, and we're a district that hasn't done that, we need to add to our vision that hasn't done that, we need to add to our vision statement and our mission statement. And we need to add the part and embed the part about equity and access. And it's part of the work that Dr. Zuniga and I have been talking about, some districts have. Or, you know, I know that we've had workshops, Mr. Breones was there and Mr. Qui was there. What are our core values in this district? You know, people have asked me, what are our core values? And they stump me because I'm like, we've never really like identified our, like five core values. I mean, I know that we defend English language learners and, you know, foster youth in home, all L cap stuff and, but what are our core values? I mean, if I was to ask, you know, my colleagues, I think we'd all come up with the definite, a different thing of what are our core values? And I know that there's districts that have done that work, that have identified and know their core values. Board members have asked me, I said, I don't know, we've never done that work. We, it's something that we, we need to do. So, yeah, I would love to, Dr. Zuniga, have Ms. Catalina signs be more involved, do workshops. I know you have a lot of weekend workshops here. We always have tons of workshops with disciplina positiva. I'm all for disciplina positiva, but again, around the area of math, we, we need everybody on board of, the super PAC needs to know that math is our focus. School side council needs to know that E LAC cross pollinate left and right. And I know that Dr. Zuniga is working on that, you know, introduce Ms. Catalina signs to the super PAC, introduce Catalina signs to the L cap. So that she becomes a familiar face and we can develop some of that trust and as we move forward to do this work. We do need the workshops for parents on their rights for math for their children. You know, we need some equity workshops for parents coming from, I did see the little glasses in the presentation that you did on the topic of equity. And again, as a minority or non-minority, nobody wants to discriminate. Everybody wants the same piece of the pie, whether you're black, brown, yellow, purple, whatever, everybody wants the same thing for their kids. It's no different for Latino families and Asian families. So I would, I embrace the, a call to action on rights and leveraging and the value of math. And we all agree that math is in everything that we do in this world. So thank you for this amazing presentation. It was awesome to have this compelling conversation.
Yeah, go right ahead, Mr. Qui.
I think Ms. Catalina saying is an excellent candidate to connect with the parents. First of all, she Latina, she Harvard graduate and she a model, you know, she experienced in the field. So we should use her as much as possible, leverage her to connect with the parents. For the people who say that Hispanic parent doesn't care about education, that's not true. For last year, parent involvement academy, I was sitting with a lot of Hispanic parents and they are dying to, to, to have their kids successful in math and everything. So, you know, like we want to have parent involved academy in city of industry in Palm. So if you could, you know, sketch, you know, have her come in and that's a big crowd, you know, it's about like eight hundred, a thousand people, parents, you know, and sometimes they have children in there too. So it's a good opportunity to have that kind of crowd because we provide free lunch, free breakfast, you know, in a good setting, in a hotel, resort. Why not? So take that advantage, have her come in and project herself, you know, on, on the subject.
If she's available, we'll make it work, but it's all depend on her schedule.
Yes, I know.
Yeah, so otherwise, there's other opportunities. And, you know, what my response is that, tell us what you need, tell us how you can help us and we'll provide that support. It's more about you committing your availability and your time, your calendar to, to schedule it. Because I know that you as a professional have other commitments and you're a consultant. So you're going and helping other school districts too. So your limited time is valued, valued with us. So whatever we can do to work it out, we're more than supportive.
Here from the, from the Board of Education and I know, Dr. Zuniga, I sense a little bit of, of, not hesitation, but a bit of frustration with your schedule. So if we could make it work and plan far and far ahead. Dr. Zuniga is a nice gentleman, very politically correct, an amazing leader, but I'm very perceptive. I can feel it, you know, Dr. Zuniga. And it, and it came out loud and clear when Ms. Sign says, oh, well, I have other things. And I fire back, well, I could care less about your other districts and your other contract. I'm worried about my kids. So, you know, just like when I fired back to the superintendent, you know, math is a concern in the entire state of California. And I said, I don't care. I'm only talking to you about your district or your superintendent. Let's work on that, you know? Again, I'm dishing it to you and I'm dishing it to him. You, you, the consultant.
Wonderful. Thank you.
So again, a big round of applause for Dr. Laudarriba Superintendent and Ms. Catalina Signs and Mr. Kirk McGinnis. Thank you for the work that you're doing. It came out loud and clear, we must be collaborative. Some things are going to take, you know, longer than others, but it's clear. In, in the compelling conversation, it is known that we must work together. We must not, you know, bully our neighboring school district. They must be equal partners to us. And it came out loud and clear. And again, if we don't have these discussions in the open, it's never going to be behind the scenes because the board, we're not all there. We've all heard it loud and clear. We are going to go step by step, identifying the power standards, identifying the benchmark, then the pacing guides. We will talk to our feeder districts about when we're going to assess and the best time to assess, et cetera, et cetera. It's, it's, we, we, we have the plan already, you know? And you got, you just need to come and tell us, Ms. Catalina signs next steps and we will give our marching orders to our TOSA, Dr. Rivas will and Kirk McGinnis. And we will continue to, we will continue our initiative of making A plus adjustments to history. And that is to increase the achievement of our Latino kids to the level of our Asian kids. And also not just to leave our Asian kids on the hang, but to also improve them to another level so that we're not doing what Mr. Breones is concerned about of being lock stepped into a system, but meeting everybody's needs by giving them what they need to fulfill their equity. So thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Yeah, and we just have a deadly quote for you to, to ponder upon. Mathematics education is much more complicated than you expected, even though you expected it to be more complicated than you expected.
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, math is hard and so is that saying, but yes, thank you. All right. Moving right along, we are on item D, D as in David Segres, consent agenda. Consider approval of comprehensive school safety plans, better known as a C S S P. Dr. Edward Zuniga.
Yes, Board President Padilla, we have education code that provides guidance in updating our comprehensive students, safety plans, I'm sorry. And with regard to the March first timeline, that requires us to update our, our actual plans by the first of March. There's no timeline for us to submit to the state to provide that to the board approval. It's more formally, we do it in ten and we take it to the board and our goal is to always update it by March first. And that's been our goal. And all of our schools worked alongside our, are not only with our principals, but their committees as well, and also district management team, including our director of district management and safety to update those and to sure that we're updated with our education code requirements as well. And if you looked at the actual plans, though they're school plans, there is a expectation that the district has procedures about what they expect in the plan, but also has to be customized to the school's data, to the school's needs. And also some of the current initiatives that they're working on as well, aligned to our board policies and also the guidance provided by the California Department of Education. So you've seen this before, this is a format, it's our opportunity to revise it, get input from the community. Usually it's your school side council that does the formal approval to the, through the, through the schools and then provide it to the district office.
Okay, so can I get a motion to approve the comprehensive school safety plans?
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by board member, Mr. Florencio Breones. Can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by board member, Mr. Qui Huen. All in favor, say aye.
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 Next, we're on item E for Professor Estela Torres de Segres, regular agenda. Item number one, consider approval to award bid number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-four B A Elmonte High School modernization package, one project to the Nazarian group. Can I get a motion to approve?
Can I have a question before?
Yes, go ahead.
Do Mr. Well, Alatar, every time I hear Nazarian group, I have goosebumps. You know, and, you know, two York, last week communication and you sent ample reason why we choose them. And besides, Dr. Zuniga also told me we are bound by the lowest bidder. But every time I hear that group make me, you know, make raise red flag for me. The reason is, you know, Fernando, the Ledesma project, you know, we had some problem from last year and good going on and on and on. He fix it, but still having problem. So the quality of work, so my, my question to you, Mr. Alatar, you have a strong language in your contract. I just wish that, you know, you try, you know, if there's non-conform, non-conformance or non-performance or whatever breach of contract, we should, we should act right away and use our counsel as a leverage to get it done. Can you give me a comment on that, Mr. Alatar?
Without going into details, since this is a potential litigation issue. The Ledesma project, we do have a legal counsel who is working to identify what the challenges are and, and address that with, with the contractor as well as with the architect as well, because there were some issues with the arc, with the design. With respect to this project and future projects, the district have a very strong agreement that includes liquidated damages if the contractor failed to perform. We also have hired qualified and competent construction manager, Tilico, that the board approved recently, in which they do work with a general contractor on weekly basis, including owner representative who attend those meetings and end up reviewing the progress of the project on a weekly basis. So there are elements of chicken balance to ensure that the contractor selected will meet the timeline. We actually take it further by including in agreement, a schedule of completion that the contractor accept and allow and become part of the agreement.
Do you have any penalty for, for not completed on time in the contract?
There are liquidated damages and they, daily liquidated damages for not, not performing to the, to the schedule. As long as the delay is solely a result of the general contractor.
Okay. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you, Board Member Qui Huen and Chief Business Official, Mr. Well, Alatar. Can I get a motion to approve item E one?
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by board member, Professor Stella Torres de Segres. Can I get a second?
I second.
Seconded by board member, Mr. Qui Huen. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Item number two, consider approval of resolution number twenty-one dash twenty-three dash twenty-four, addressing challenges faced by students with undocumented, non-citizen parents and completing the free application for federal student aid, better known as FAFSA. I know that I'll defer to Dr. Edward Zuniga. We do have preferential voting by our student trustee, Ms. Sophia Hernandez, who has some comments that Dr. Zuniga will read.
Yes, thank you, Board President Padilla. Our student board member, Sophia Hernandez states, the, the actual item two, in regard to the FAFSA complications, I felt very strong about this, given that I am a senior dealing with FAFSA and all of the new things they are throwing our way this year. I am fortunate to have parents who have gone through the FAFSA process for their own college careers, which make it a bit easier, yet there were, there were still significant roadblocks and periods of not knowing what was happening or what to do next. That being said, especially from hearing from my peers, students whose parents are undocumented or do not have a social security number, find an entirely new wave of challenges and find it difficult to navigate. With all the new changes and complications regarding FAFSA, I do urge the district to find ways to support our district families and I hope to see advancements with this resolution.
Thank you, Dr. Edward Zuniga Superintendent. I know that when we, when we last spoke, Mr. Breones was going to try to speak to C S B A and then I was supposed to talk to Senator Rubio and I have to at report that I have not done that. I take responsibility for that. But now that we have this resolution, I can maybe forward this to, to them. I didn't know if you were able to speak to anybody, Mr. Breones?
We had our regional meeting today on Zoom and I did share this, that it was on our agenda.
Okay.
And I will provide a copy to, to our regions that they have it and they can tweak it to their own needs. But I did, I am waiting to hear back from our Pacer to find out if there's a specific ask that we can make when we meet with the legislation, legislators in March or more specifically with the Congress members in April, when we travel to Washington and hopefully meet with representatives in the Department of Eds and sort of the ones who oversee this. So hopefully they'll have something put together so when we have those meetings, we can make those asks of like, what is it that we want them to do? Extend deadlines, offer assistance, you know, not.
Not harass.
Not harass people, yeah, not, you know, fix the problem, you know, things like that.
Okay.
Yeah, and also would like to send out immediately this resolution to all our local legislators.
Yes.
Legislators as well as anyone that represents us through the federal government as well.
Okay.
Including our state, our federal senators or congressmen, I'm sorry, and women. Is that okay?
Yeah, that sounds great. Is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, so can I, can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Okay, move to approve by board member Florencio Breones. I will second it as president. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item E three, consider approval of resolution number twenty-two dash twenty-three dash twenty-four in support of parent, teacher, student associations, better known as P T S As, through a monetary donation for, for enhancement of student and school programs. Can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by board member, Professor Stella Torres de Segres. Can I get a second?
I second.
Seconded by board member, Mr. Qui Huen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item F, as in Frank, round table enclosure of meeting. Item number one, topics, issues to be brought forward for future agenda items. Board member, Mr. Florencio Breones?
No items tonight.
Okay, board member, Mr. Carlos Salcedo?
No items.
Board member, Mr. Qui Huen?
No, I have no item.
Board member, Professor Stella Torres de Segres?
No item.
Board member Ricardo Padilla, I have no items also. Now we are at item F two. Before I adjourn tonight's meeting, I would like to adjourn the meeting today in honor of Mrs. Karen Smith. She was born October twenty-ninth nineteen forty and she passed away this past Saturday on February seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four. Mrs. Karen Smith was born in Los Angeles, California to Mr. Theron Freeze Senior and Mrs. Marion Freeze. They had three children, Karen Smith, Robin and Theron Junior. Mrs. Karen Smith was a proud third generation USC alumni. Education ran in her family. Her late father was assistant superintendent in the Montebello Unified School District. Mrs. Karen Smith was a thirty-year, eight, a thirty-eight-year educator with many of those years taking place in the Almonte City School District. She touched countless lives in the classroom as a middle school teacher at Frank Wright and touched even more lives as she became assistant principal at Petrow School, principal at Clementson School, and then principal at New Lexington School, where she ended her career. I had the opportunity to meet and work with Mrs. Smith for many years at New Lexington Elementary School, where I first started my career. Mrs. Smith did some amazing work while she was there. Under her leadership, she took New Lexington School, who had a population of ninety percent plus free and reduced lunch and a population of forty-three percent English language learners, and converted the school into a and converted the school into a California distinguished school in a very short period of time. Mrs. Smith showed me how to be an effective leader, how to not take excuses and always fight for our children. She would often say that hope was not a strategy. You needed a plan with that. I've always believed that. She also helped New Lexington School earn recognition such as Title I High Achievement School. In addition to receiving multiple recognitions as a shining star school under the Pupil Motivation and Maintenance Program under Senate Bill 65 that focuses on attendance, attitude, and achievement. If you have heard of the Comprehensive Student Support Coordinators in the El Monte Union High School District, it is because I brought it here because Mrs. Smith showed me the power of its elements for our kids. In addition to her work in education, she was also a board member with me and my dear colleague for many years on the El Monte, South El Monte Emergency Resources Association, better known as ERA. She was also my walking partner when I campaigned to be on this board for the very first time. She knocked on so many doors with me and was my biggest asset. We worked the Clementson area quite a bit as she was principal there at one time. She was my, my biggest cheerleader and my biggest supporter. She was also a very proud parishioner of the All Saint Episcopal Church in Pasadena. She loved All Saints Church for their inclusivity and advocacy. Her faith was very important to her. I, I was with her until her last breath. I took care of her for a while. I, I combed her hair, you know, a lot of times. And there was a period in my life where I almost lost my life and I was hospitalized for quite, quite some time. Mrs. Smith came to visit me every single day of the months where I was hospitalized, you know, fifteen years ago. And I told her, "Mrs. Smith, I could never repay you for what you did." You know, coming after a long, long day's work and coming to fill me in on what happened at New Lexington School. And I made a promise to her and I said, "I will be with you until your last day. I promise that." I go, "There isn't enough money that I could pay you for what you did for me." And so, Mrs. Smith, on, on, on Saturday, the seventeenth, I received a text from Judson Smith, who was her son. And Judd texted me and said, "Ricardo, the nurse just came by and she says that my mom only has about two days." And so I, I replied back and the little emoji with the tear, and I said, "Okay." And then a few minutes after that, he texted me again and said, you know, "The, the nurse said that it's not going to be days, that it's going to be hours." And so I replied, "I'm on my way." And so I drove up to Monrovia, where she lives. And I walked in and she had the nasal cannula and she kind of was trying to breathe even more through her mouth. And I could see that her chest was rising and I, I just remember coming in and I, and I just said, I thought I would always do, you know, "Karen Smith, it's Ricardo Padilla." And she would respond to that and she didn't respond on this day, but I know that she knew that I was there. And for some reason, I just went to the, her restroom and I got her brush and I combed her hair and how I would always do it. And I know that she really liked that. And then I was there by myself, you know, Judson Smith was in, in the living room with the caregivers. And once I combed her hair and I told her, "Everything's going to be okay, Karen. Just relax. It's okay." I just saw that, you know, I could visually see that she stopped breathing. I, I then kind of panicked and I was like yelling for Judd. I'm like, "Judd, Judd." And Judd's phone had rang and so he was on the phone. And so I said, "Pasquana, come," the caregiver. And while Pasquana was coming, I was trying to feel the pulse and I couldn't feel the pulse on her wrist. And I have a little bit of medical training and I couldn't feel her, her pulse in the carotid artery. And then I put my hand on her chest and I could no longer see that her chest was rising. So I knew that she'd pass and I said, "Pasquana, I think, I think Mrs. Smith has, has left us." And she said, "Yes, I, I think so too." And and so I, I I just want to pay her my respects and give my condolences to the entire Smith family. Mrs. Smith is survived by, and I didn't want to mess this up, so please forgive me, family, if I, if I screw it up. Like I told you, Mrs. Smith was born to Theron Frees and Marion Frees. They had three children. Mrs. Smith's sister is, is also deceased now. Theron Jr. is still alive. And Mrs. Smith is survived by Judson Smith, her only son. Her two beautiful granddaughters, Sahaja Smith, who's in college up in Washington, and Vivica, who is a sophomore in Northern California. She's also survived by Theron Ronnie Frees, her brother, and his wife, Sherry Frees. And Mr. Theron Frees has two children who are the niece and nephew to Mrs. Smith, Kathy Frees and Greg Frees. Also, Mrs. Smith's sister, who's, who's in heaven also, had two children, Jeremy Fletcher and Lori Bates, who are Mrs. Smith's other nephews and niece. And also survived by Jeremy's wife, Ms. Wanda Fletcher, and the kids, Brenna Fletcher, Ryan Fletcher, and Paige Fletcher. And I just want you to know what, what an amazing person Mrs. Smith was. And, and she was so important in my life. She was my dear friend. She was my mentor. She was my boss. She was a colleague. She was my biggest cheerleader, my biggest supporter, my walking partner, my advocate, just my, my lifelong friend. You name it. She was that special person in my life. And I, along with many people who loved her, will miss her. Karen Smith, you will live in my thoughts and in my prayers forever until the day I die. May Mrs. Karen Smith rest in peace. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.